Good evening, everyone. We welcome those who are here for purposes of addressing the board at the proper time and in the order of their request. If you wish to speak during the meeting, please fill out a form indicating your name and agenda item you wish to address. You may also make a request to give testimony on an item not listed for discussion today. However, full discussion on any items not listed on the agenda will have to be delayed until such a time as the item can be publicly posted in advance as a regular agenda item. If you wish to ask questions, please address them to the chair and not to the individual members of the board or staff. The board has been meeting in closed session regarding matters listed on today's closed session agenda and wishes to report that no reportable actions were taken.
Ms. President, we'd like to do the flag salute.
I did, okay. Ms. Kerr, would you lead us in the...
Yes, you could please stand.
Flag salute.
Place your hand over your heart, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I promise you, I was going to do that next. It should have been done first. Um, let's see, public hearing. We have none. Or did I need to... Where's Letitia? Did I need to read item 14? Or was that this yellow one?
That was the yellow.
Okay, good. I'm just checking to make sure I don't miss something else. Okay. Public hearing, we have none. Call for agenda items for separate action or adoption of the agenda as posted?
Yes, Madam Chair, I ask that we amend the agenda to briefly discuss public testimony and how we will be handling that tonight if there's any changes suggested.
Second. Discussion.
Yes, Madam Chair, I think we have two forms of testimony, one in person, the other written. So we need to have some station about how that's going to be handled.
Okay, so far, I've received nine requests for people who are here in person. So apparently, we have nine people in person.
There are also four in person that were not on the agenda, as well as 58 written on the agenda, and seven written comments related to items not on the agenda.
Those were submitted via email, Dr. Baker?
Yes, they were.
So we have 58 written comments, and we have nine...
In-person comments for items on the agenda.
So there needs to be a discussion about how we're going to handle the written comments.
I would like for them to be read, comments that were submitted via email.
I'd like to place a time limit on the number, amount of time that we devote to written comments.
Okay. What we've done in the past couple of meetings is extend the time by 30 minutes. That would give us a whole hour for items on the agenda?
Yes, if we, once we get the public comments out of the way, whatever time, we can fold that time into the extension, the time extension for the written comments.
I would suggest, because if the outside comments, we had nine?
Yes, nine. Nine for items on the agenda and four for items not listed on the agenda.
So that's technically 27 minutes. Can we just say an hour then for comments on the agenda?
Yeah.
And then maintain the half hour for the non-agendized items to allow for the four members who are here to speak in person and read the seven comments that have been submitted.
I agree with that.
Okay, and I'd also, if we could do this for the next meeting as well, that way, I know there was some confusion around submitting comments by email. We want to make sure that everyone who wants to be heard and submitted to the public record is. So if we could hold these rules as necessary for the next meeting, and if we could agendize a conversation, again, we're all in uncharted times around what this looks like, and as our meetings are different today, and they may be different in the future depending on health orders, if we could have a discussion next time, have that agendized, so we could really talk through what we think would be best to have our community be heard.
Madam Chair, I don't know if I'd be comfortable with extending this same motion to a meeting in the future. It would depend on what we have, what's there, what's in place. I would want to look and see what's there before we make that kind of a decision. And being able to extend that to the subsequent meetings, I'm not comfortable in doing that.
I think, I was just hoping we could extend it for one more meeting, and that way, we can have that larger discussion as an agendized item at the next meeting. Because I just know that there was some confusion, and I want to make sure that as we enter into the next meeting, if we accept public comments via email, that people know that they'll be submitted into the record. So I'm not saying we need to do this indefinitely, but I would urge us to at least do it for the next meeting, so we could have an agendized conversation, and people could comment and tell us what they think would be helpful for them.
Again, I still have reservations about that, because I'd like to know what that looks like. It may not be necessary to do it at that time. I would basically like to see what that looks like before I move into that kind of a discussion.
Let's revisit the motion. Ms. Kerr, what was your motion?
Well, the motion was to have a conversation to amend today's comments. And then I asked, well, I guess I'm adding to it, that we carry over those rules to one more meeting, as well as agendize a conversation around what that looks like, which would give the public the opportunity to submit comments about how they would like to be heard in the future. And I would guess that if we didn't receive an hour's worth of comments at the next meeting, then we would just close time at whatever time was finished, but...
Board Member Kerr, could I suggest that we keep your motion as is for tonight's comments, and then that we consider the second part of your motion, so we can have a discussion on that? Because I actually support that we should take action tonight, because inevitably, what will happen is between now and next meeting, there will be confusion on whether folks can submit their comments via email. But if I can suggest that we take the first motion that you made, make a decision about tonight's public comment, and then either you or I could propose the motion on what
So two separate motions instead of one motion.
Just so that we can have the discussion that Dr. Wilson is trying to have.
So we can keep those separate?
Yes, that's my suggestion, but Board Member Kerr is the one that...
And I'm open to that, as long as we're clear in our communication to the public, so that if public comment is submitted via the public comment email, that it doesn't get a bounce-back message.
Hundred percent agree.
That's my concern.
One suggestion might be to consider keeping the part that you're talking about, around public comment, as the motion. The request for the agenda item is something that Board President Craighead can bring to me for looking at, for putting on the agenda. So your motion is around this meeting and the next meeting. I think that's what you're trying to think about, the combination of two kinds of comments.
Okay, so, and I'm okay with that, as long as we don't have folks submit public comment and get a bounce-back message, as long as we're clear.
And my reservation, again, is, given the position that we're in as a district right now, in terms of the concerns that our public has about issues about returning to school and so forth, I don't want to see people inhibit it in their response to trying to discuss those kinds of things with us. So that's why I want, I don't want to extend this to another meeting. I want to see what that looks like at the next meeting.
And I'm okay with that. I think my stipulation is that people who submit public comment via email don't get a bounce-back message. That's my primary concern, and that that is...
Okay, so what we'll vote on?
So my motion is that we amend to do an hour of public comment tonight, starting with the folks who are here in person, followed by those that are mailed in, and do a half hour of public comment of non-agendized items, including the four people who are here and the seven folks who are submitted via email. So it's an hour and a half total, instead of an hour.
So that's what we're going to be voting on? We are voting on extending the time on the items listed on the agenda to an hour and keeping the items not on the agenda to a half an hour. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes?
Again, clarification, that includes the public comments and the written comments.
Yes.
And just for clarification too, so not only will folks not get a bounce-back email, but what will be communicated to folks, I think we still need to discuss. And we can't wait till the next meeting, because folks are going to be submitting comments before the next meeting.
Correct.
Right?
That was, yes, and that was my intent. That's my concern, is that if we are communicating that we are accepting comments via email, but we don't know to the extent to which they will be read until we have a discussion
So make a second motion for next meeting, and then if there's a second, then you can vote.
So make the motion, and I'll second, Board Member Kerr.
I make the motion that we extend the rules we just adopted to next week's agenda.
Or next meeting's?
Next meeting's agenda, to include the conversation in an agendized item to discuss further moving forward. So for one meeting, to adopt those same rules, for public comment.
I second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
And in this masked world that we're in, may I encourage my colleagues to speak into the microphone?
Yes.
Thank you.
Be as far away from my colleagues and as close to the mic as I can get.
This is our first meeting back in person, and we are wearing masks and spaced out, and this is very awkward, but we're going to go on, and we're going to do this.
So before we move on, Madam President, could, Letitia, could you read us back the second part of this motion, just so that public understands between now and our next meeting what we're doing?
So the motion was for this meeting and the following meeting on August the 16th, we will accept one hour of public testimony on items listed on the agenda.
From both in-person and email?
Correct, yes.
Thank you. And it's the meeting on the...
Sixteenth.
Nineteenth, isn't it?
Oh, I'm so sorry, yes. August the 19th is the next one.
As you're camping.
That's right. I wanted to make sure it wasn't the 16th, Letitia.
Okay. Let's see, so, did we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
That was it.
That was it? All right.
As amended.
As amended with the changes.
That was amended, that, okay.
There's one, there's a correction needed for new business item?
Thank you, I knew there was something else.
That's okay.
Yes, there's, it takes a village. There's a correction on the resolution. It's stated on the agenda as Resolution A, but it should say Resolution 080520-A.
Correct.
I am at the bottom of the agenda, under new business, and that's item number 25. And there's a resolution approving, well, I'm not going to read the whole thing, because I'll read it later, but...
It doesn't have the number on it, as we should, so it's just a change of title.
Yeah, it's just a, right, change of title for the resolution. Okay. Approval of minutes.
So move, Madam Chair.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Passes 5-0. Mr. North?
Just before you say, I suggest another motion. To adopt the agenda as amended, including that number, right? Because that number was inserted after the motion was made. So I ask that you request another motion.
Okay.
I move approval of the agenda as amended pertaining to public comment and the correction under new business.
I second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes 5-0. Communications? We have none. And now we get to public testimony on items listed on the agenda. I think we wanted to start with an announcement for our public outside.
Sure, so the public that's waiting outside will be letting know the line that they're in, to come in for in-person testimony when they come to the door for safe practices, or taking temperatures of people that are coming in from the public. They'll also be required with, to wear face covering, and they take the face covering off when they're at the podium, where they're standing on their own. And then we'll have, we have a single point of entry where the person will come in, they'll exit after their public comment, and the podium will be clean for the next person that's coming in.
And Dr. Baker, the folks outside right now, that's what's been explained?
Yes, staff's out there, and the team will let them know.
Thank you.
Okay, so, we're going to have public testimony on items listed on the agenda. We will start with those who are here in person, and we are dedicating an hour. So let's begin.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And I have the first one. Jerleene Tatum.
She's done a lot in this little time.
I think we're all going to remember this first meeting back for a long time, Madam Chair.
Broke my tent.
A little rusty, a little rusty.
We'll get there.
Your phone. Do you want to go?
Okay. Just a moment. If we can have the next person come in, so we can prep them, so we can have this expedited a little bit. Tonya Reyes-Urdanga? Yeah. So welcome. And go ahead, we're ready.
Good evening, my name is Jerleene Tatum. I am an LBUSD parent. I am here today just representing parents. As you hear outside, there are horns going on. Those are parents and teachers that are out there showing their protest today. Everyone has a little, has different opinions and thoughts about what needs to happen in the school reopening. I just hope you all are listening. The one specific, there's two specific items that I want, or three specific items I wanted to speak on. One, please make sure as you move forward in the budget process, that the community and parents are involved in that process. I know that a committee has been established, but does that committee actually reflect the body of the community? Does it reflect parents and other stakeholders? The equity policy that you'll be talking about today in Agenda Item Number 25, asks the same thing. Is it going to reflect the body of the community? Is it going to be reflective of a parent's voice? Lastly, the renaming of the school's policy that has been in the, or the, something's been floating around in the media. I just want to ask you all to make sure that you follow the policy that was put in place in 2015. Do not scrub the community out of this. This is something that the community needs to have part of if you're going to be naming, renaming a school. Yet, at the same time, it's kind of low on the priority, because right now, as you heard by the horns out there, there are parents and teachers that are more concerned about the safety of themselves and our children. I have children at home, I'm trusting that you all are going to make the best decision. I'm going to do my part to make sure the teachers stay safe, and I'm going to do my part to make sure that my children stay safe. So I hope that you do yours. Thank you.
Thank you. And on deck, we'll have John Kane. Oh, John Kane on deck? And, oh, John Kane.
Good evening. I know it's a difficult time for everyone, but it's especially difficult for parents who are dealing with job loss, a drop in income, childcare issues, just to name a few. And this is on the opening of the schools. I know the district is keeping health and safety utmost in their mind, and given that assumption, I feel it is safer if teachers are given a choice to return to the classroom, whether it's to teach remotely or not. They also need updated technology at home, and since, and schools, since the district reported that only 37%, or that 37% encountered issues with connecting with their students, which is amazing to me. Parents need adequate time to review their options and also need adequate technology support. Given the lack of progress on the pandemic front, it is safe to say we'll be in this situation for a while. Uncertainty and indecision are frustrating in trying to predict the pandemic. The campuses, Cal State Long Beach campus is closed till January 4th, and although it seems like a very long time, at least there's certainty in what the next four months will hold. Constantly changing options is not really a good option for parents. On school naming, I wanted to say that in September 25, 2015, I was fortunate to attend my first meeting as a member of the School Naming Advisory Committee. That was the first time I met Dr. Jill Baker, who led the committee in a thorough and thoughtful process. The committee went for three months and put in countless hours, and resulted in a report to the board the following year. The committee was formed because past practices were unclear, and the naming of schools appeared to have been, have little or no input from the community. There didn't appear to any criteria, and while schools were named after real, well-deserving people, nobody knows how they got their name, or how they got selected. The policy was developed by this committee, should be followed. We have a list of names that were vetted, and the community should be under consideration when considering a name change until the list is exhausted. The policy was developed by community and after careful consideration approved by the board. The naming of the school is an equity issue. The list that was provided by the committee included a Filipino leader, a Tavanga name, a black woman poet, a Latino journalist, and a Cambodian leader. Let us consider racial and gender equity when naming schools, which I'm sure you will. The city completed the racial equity and reconciliation initiative report, and I just want to say quickly, in regards to the equity policy that you have on the agenda, and at the top of the 13 findings that they had, number one issue was educational inequities and opportunities. Long Beach Unified School District did not consider a framework for reconciliation nor community listening and engagement sessions. So referring or referencing the city's plan and the town halls conducted by Dr. Benitez, thank you, when developing your equity plan could prove to be very helpful. As with your parent-teacher-student survey, the city's west and central area, Area 2, as we would see it, and central Long Beach area were the lowest responders during the listening sessions at the forum from the city. I think the same is the case for the LBUSD surveys. An issue that needs to, and that's an issue that needs to be addressed. This is a big job, and the school district cannot do it alone, but they must start somewhere. Thank you for your time. I was hoping I'd get it in within three minutes, and I did.
Thank you.
Dr. Baker, I've just been made aware that we're having some technical issues with YouTube, just wanted to make OMS aware of that with the Spanish currently.
Okay, on deck, we'll have Tony Brown.
Do you want to pause? Pause for a moment and see it.
Oh, we're going to pause for a moment?
Let Mr. Edson see it.
Sorry, I said the YouTube with the live stream on YouTube, yeah.
According to our technicians out there, it's working fine.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, then we're ready for our next speaker.
Hello, everybody. I'm John Kane, I live in Bellflower. Both my sons attend Long Beach Unified School District schools. One is at Hughes and one is at Los Cerritos. A couple of things before I start. Thank you to all you guys, I know it's not an easy job, so I really appreciate it. When I walked in, it said America's Best Urban Schools. That's obviously true. I came all the way here from New York to teach here, and I've been a proud teacher here ever since. I thought maybe I'd see Steve Rockenbach here, but I don't, so hopefully he's watching. I want to apologize to him. I told him all the baseball players sit in the dugout, apparently they don't, so, or they sit in the stands, apparently they don't, so I stand corrected. The games I watched was there on the, in the stands. A lot of people in this room have done a lot of nice things for me personally and for the school district, and I think very highly of all of you. It's nothing personal, what's going on right now, it's all about what's right for every single person that goes to the school district. As a parent, my wife and my children, their safety is the number one priority. Right now, I'm not sure that the safety of those people that are important to me is going to be insured, and that makes me nervous. I don't think that I have a problem going back to school. That's not my personality. If they, you guys ask for us to be on campus, I'll be there. I'll be there and I'll do my job. But I don't speak just for myself. There's a lot of people, a lot of colleagues, that have approached me, that have sent me emails, text messages, phone calls, and they're nervous. And when I was a little kid, I was in ninth grade, was the first time I remember sticking up for somebody who couldn't stick up for themselves. I've been doing it ever since. And these people are scared. Excuse me. They don't want to lose each other. They don't want to lose their family members. Now, maybe that won't happen, but I don't want to see it happen. I don't want to watch the news and find out that a teacher that I knew, a teacher that I am friends with, their wife, their husband, their child, got sick and passed away, or got sick and had lifelong problems because of COVID. I don't think it's going to happen to me. As a matter of fact, I think I had it in February. I missed five consecutive days of school with 103 fever before we knew what COVID was. My son got it, we took him to get tested, and he ended up getting, coming back with flu type B. But these people have legitimate concerns, and all we're asking for, everybody, the parents, the students, the teachers, is just for a chance to be flexible. A lot of teachers are going to go to school. A lot of teachers are going to teach from their classrooms. A lot of teachers are going to do an excellent, excellent job. That's all we're asking for. You guys are a great group of people. Jill, I've defended you publicly, because people have said things, and I don't think it's right, and I've defended you. Juan, same thing. Tiffany, you know that we go back a long way, and some things aren't fair, and they're wrong, and I'll defend you for that. But in this particular case, I just wish that we just had a chance. That's all we're asking for. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Tony Brown, but on deck, we'll have Mariela. Mariela.
Good afternoon, my name's Tony Brown. I have three students who are in Long Beach Unified School District, one at Longfellow, one at Hughes, and then my son Luke Brown, who's a rising junior at Poly. My wife teaches, my sister-in-law teaches, my brother-in-law teaches, and my, you know, I've got three kids who are in the school district. You know, this is a, I can't say it better than what Mr. Kane said. People are scared, people are worried about getting COVID. And the justification for requiring teachers to come back and teach online from the classroom that the school district has offered, frankly, is not very persuasive. That some teachers prefer to be back in the classroom shouldn't make all teachers required to come back in the classroom. And that some teachers want to have their materials available to them doesn't mean that all teachers can't make a choice for themselves. That's what the school district should be doing, is giving the teachers the choice to assess the risk for themselves. I know that my students had, you know, ups and downs during the spring, but all the teachers that my kids had did their best, and they tried very hard to make the teaching experience as enlightening and as, you know, to enlighten as much as possible online. I don't know why you're wasting your time picking an unnecessary fight with teachers right now. What you should be doing is giving your teachers all the tools that they can have that will make them better online teachers. That's where the school district could be spending its resources the best right now. And the other thing is, I don't want to take up too much time, you've got a long line of people out there. To me, in the midst of probably the biggest health crisis that we've faced in our lifetime, you're making a really important decision. It's unconscionable, unconscionable, that you would give only 30 minutes of time for all the parents who have something to say. This is a public agency. Let the public speak. I encourage you to extend as much time as there are parents out there who have something to say. My son wants to say something too.
Hello, my name is Luke Brown, I'm a junior at Long Beach Poly, and I'm going to put this simply. My mom is a teacher, my aunt is a teacher, my uncle's a teacher. Collectively, as a family, we all have to take care of our grandparents who are stuck at home right now, and I'd rather they have the choice of teaching at home or at school, wherever they feel comfortable, because in the end, that's what keeps them all safe.
Thank you.
Thank you. And on deck, Stephanie. Stephanie? And in the meantime, Letitia, do we know if we have forms for everybody who's in line? Okay. Thank you.
This will be hard. My name is Mariela Salgado, a small business owner, Parks and Recs Commissioner, but more importantly, mother of an incoming kindergartner and second grader. Today, I'd like to speak to you on item number 20 and 25. I was listening to Ms. Jill Baker, comments on the Long Beach Post, in which she states, "In the initial weeks of the closure, we had 90% of our students logged on. According to the district data, by May, we had 79% of those students logged on. I'd like to speak to the other 20% of our students we haven't connected with. A child in home isolation has no access to the adult network that tends to report incidents of neglect and abuse. In fact, LA County, LA County has saw half the number of reports in April than it did the same month last year. It is now more important than ever to identify children of greater risk and prioritize resources to protect those in imminent and escalating danger. At a school site I serve and volunteer for in West Long Beach, as a community member, 20% of our students have not been connected with by staff. So we don't know the state of their well-being, we don't know if they have internet access or a computer to start this fall." We don't know if they have internet access or a computer to start this fall. For the parents that are listening, I understand we have a million questions and we have a decision to make by Friday. If you have the ability, access, or privilege, I ask you to stay at home and distant learn so we can reduce the class sizes. District, I ask you that you give us the option to change our minds if we need to in the second semester because my livelihood as a small business owner may depend on it. There is a real risk of increasing the achievement and opportunity gaps amongst our underserved populations. The loss of learning is real. The safety of those 20% is real. There are, there are no easy answers, but I can ask, I ask our board members and district staff to prioritize and on the 20%. Second, as a de facto co-educators during this crisis learning, we should have a say in responding and building and budget priorities. District must specifically address the needs of English learners, low-income students, foster youth, special education students, and homeless students. You must solicit stakeholder feedback and learning plans and present the parent, to parent advisory committees and D-LAC for reviewing comment. Let us participate in LCAP and budget, and budget, including the CARES Act, $90 million to spend to keep our teachers, staff, and children safe. I have made every effort to participate in the superintendent advisory committee to no avail. So my ask is that the budget engagement timeline discussed in July 20th board meeting be expedited to allow all stakeholders to provide meaningful input on the learning continuity plan through virtual district and community stakeholder sessions. Wow. Thank you.
Thank you. Lilia. That was Mariela Salgado. I passed along her information to you.
Yeah, no, the one that's coming up.
Oh, Stephanie, sorry.
Can you say your name quick? My name is Stephanie Ryzik. I have three students in Long Beach Unified, two at Emerson and one at Intellectual Virtues Academy. And I'm also a very active volunteer in the VIPS program, Teaching Art. I'm here today on behalf of my three children and for the over 500 Long Beach Unified School District families who have signed a petition to Superintendent Baker demanding answers they need in order to make thoughtful, informed choices for their children. I would like to submit this comment and petition for part of the record. I've given you a copy. It's unfathomable that you're requiring physical attendance to have our voice heard during a pandemic, but here I am. Because of your failure to provide detailed information, parents are making decisions based on assumptions. This should concern you. Some of these posts on social media read, "I'll just choose the hybrid option and if we don't feel comfortable when school opens, we'll refuse to send our kids to school." Parents aren't making enrollment choices with any intention of sticking to them. And why? Because you have not provided us with the details that outline the risks we will be accepting as part of your back-to-school plan. You tweet photos of your staff and you fail to notice that over 50% of the staff shown are not using PPE correctly and are breaking social distancing guidelines we expect our students will be required to follow. You show us your cleaning supplies, which include the largest supply of baby wipes known to man, but you fail to acknowledge those do nothing to prevent the spread of COVID-19. You do not address the district's well-known past failures to provide adequate hygiene supplies to schools or to enforce sick child policies that already exist. You do not address the primary mode of the virus spread, which is the ventilation. You give us choices, but you do not explain how those choices will prioritize the students. Our students' social emotional health has already been destabilized by this pandemic and we need to know how you are prioritizing their emotional health. Will the students be placed with a familiar teacher and peer group from their school site if we choose to risk sending our children to school? They deserve the protection of the one consistency you can provide. How will you provide an equitable education for families that cannot provide the structure your virtual learning plan requires? Working parents are doing their best just to make sure their children have basic care while they're away. How will you provide an equitable education to students who are not successful screen-based learners? Two hours of daily virtual meetings as early as first grade is an ineffective way to educate young learners, but all of your options fail these children. Families deserve a flexible option that can be facilitated at any time, place, and in a learning style that will ensure every child has an opportunity to be successful. Riverside, Bellflower, Anaheim, all have alternatives that allow for parent-led self-paced models with guidance from district teachers. The fact that your families right now, there are families hiring private teachers to facilitate your models is evidence that this is not a solution for all children. The options you are proposing will absolutely widen the achievement gap and further disadvantage our most high-need learners. Ensure parents who have children in special education that their children will not be an afterthought. Give them the plan to provide educational support and predictability they desperately rely on and allow our teachers to protect their health and their family's health by providing them with working options that allow them to do so. And give ourselves, give us a longer-than-a-year commitment. Give us more flexibility than a year commitment. Things are going to change and every child expects the best options that they can get. Thank you.
Thank you. On deck, Amy.
I am a mother of two kids on the district and I am here in support of Dr. Juan Benitez. Dr. Juan Benitez's experience spans over 20 years in Long Beach and he has been an excellent leader in the Long Beach Education Community. As Executive Director of Ace CSLUV Center for Community Engagement, Dr. Juan Benitez has worked with community groups in Long Beach, with Long Beach parents, students, community members, teachers, and educators, addressing the issues that are critical for students' success. He has demonstrated his ability to include parents and student voices and the decision-making process through his work at the CSLUV Board. As he is a teacher and knows what it means to reach out to students from different communities and support inclusion on multiple perspectives. Not nominating Dr. Benitez for LBUSD School Board President due to lack of experience does not make sense. I sent an email to every person in the Board to Dr. Jill Baker and to Superintendent Jill Baker and signatures from parents. And I also want to ask the Board that the budget engagement timeline discussed at the July 24th board meeting be expedited to allow all stakeholders to provide meaningful input in the learning continuity plan through virtual district and community stakeholder sessions as required by law. I also ask that LBUSD post a draft of its learning continuity plan in English, Spanish, and Kamai. One more priority to the public hearing and they have another public meeting to discuss the feedback you receive. How the feedback influenced the plan and the data that was evaluated to draft the Also, to change the process by which this critical re-enrollment decision will be made, boil in time and flexibility into this process. First, do not lock parents into a singular decision for the entire school year in case our children needs change over the course of the school year. Second, provide parents with adequate time and information to be able to make an informed decision. School should do one-on-one outreach to all parents, especially hard-to-reach and high-need parents, to know their options and their resources available.
Excuse me, the time's up. Sorry. Thanks, thank you. Kelly.
I'm a marriage and family therapist and I have two of my own children in Long Beach Unified School District. Because of my background specializing in anxiety and trauma, I am looking at this from a mental health perspective. I have always, I was always trained to do, first, do no harm. I believe the choices being presented to the high school students right now are doing harm. I have many clients who are parents or students at LBUSD and many of those families are coming into therapy in, to get support with the decision of whether to choose their physical health or educational future. Ultimately, I am here as a parent and so I will talk through that lens. My daughter's in high school. She has always gotten good grades and she was excited to go to McBride High School because she wants to become an engineer. We have always highly valued education, but we also value her health and safety. We are being forced to choose between her getting, to go to the school she worked hard to get into or choose from independent study or something called Apex, which I have no idea what that is. We've not been told how she will get her engineering classes or if she will be able to take AP classes or how this will affect her transcript. Yet we are forced to make a decision in two days' time. We haven't left the house, other than today, for 145 days. This is really important. So we are a family that takes this pandemic very seriously. To choose between my daughter's physical health and educational future is horrible, especially with so little information to go on. As a therapist, I understand that when children go through a traumatic event, that the more normalcy that they have in their lives, the better. The more they are told what to expect, the better. We cannot simply rely on their resiliency. We must create the best situation for them to be resilient. I believe this includes more information on choices and online options that are with Long Beach Unified School District teachers. Part of the problem people have is, we love our teachers. We want to be with those teachers. I would like to have more information into committing to a decision for an entire year. I would also like to know why neighboring districts have found a way for students participate in online learning from teachers in their school districts and we have not. How are our kids going to compete with their peers in neighboring districts when they're going off to college? The focus today has been on my high school student rather than my middle school student because I believe my eighth grader has time to catch up on whatever he misses in independent study or online, whatever we're choosing. It's not an official, it's not on his official record that really matters. It's sad that I have to think in these terms, but unlike a lot of students, I can afford a tutor for him. I can afford for him to catch up. It's where the Long Beach Unified School District 2020 choices leaves me as a parent and I really do appreciate your time today, listening to all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Sartia. That's all I have for...
Okay. Hi, my name is Kelly DaSilva. I am both an LBUSD parent of an incoming fifth grader at Dixby and a third grade teacher at Bryant. This is in regard to item number 20 on the agenda, opening a school update. I believe teachers should be given a choice of returning to our classrooms to teach or teaching from the safety of our homes. I want to keep my mask on, but it's really hard to breathe and talk loud like this right now. We teachers are able to provide quality instruction from the safety of our homes. I was one of the summer school SEAL teachers. We taught synchronously from our homes for two hours each day. We were also able to pull small groups during that time. My administrator was a regular visitor to our class meetings. The same procedure could be followed this fall. Administrators could log into our classroom meets the whole day if so desired to make sure we're not, you know, sitting there watching TV and eating bonbons. Some teachers may feel comfortable with being on campus and I believe that teachers should have the choice to be there. However, the less staff members that are on campus, the safer it will be for all those who are on the campus daily. It will reduce the exposure for those individuals. The district says that the campuses will be cleaned thoroughly. However, even before COVID, our custodians were not always supplied with enough resources to ensure that student and adult bathrooms were stocked with soap, paper towels, and toilet paper on a regular basis. The district says that having, the teaching while having our kids at home is a distraction. I would like to point out that teaching while distracted by kids is what we do all day, every day. We are professionals. We can differentiate. We can multitask. I appreciate that the district is offering to provide childcare to school leaders, children of teachers. However, even in a small group setting, the risk of exposure is still greater than the risk of exposure of those who stay safe at home. If my son is exposed to at least 11 additional people in his small childcare setting, that still elevates his risk and therefore mine. I do not want to increase the risk of getting COVID. I'm a single mother with no family members nearby. There is no one to watch my son if I can't do it. I need to stay healthy. If we teachers do become sick, will our sub be required to teach from our classroom? Will they be allowed to teach from home? We want to avoid needing a sub by staying healthy. As a parent, I'm extremely concerned about the plan to have my ADHD fifth grader with a 504 plan online for six hours of synchronous instruction a day? He went nuts last spring with only three hours. We need to have a balance of synchronous and asynchronous learning.
I'm sorry, but the time is up. Thank you. Okay, now we'll go to public comment that we received online. And we have until approximately 6:15.
We've done 25 minutes so far, so we will do the countdown.
Oh, okay.
So the first one is from Nina Jackson. The district is to be commended for making the right decision to start with online instruction, especially as it is now being shown that children can get COVID and some schools that have opened in person had to close almost immediately. All persons who can telework or work from home should continue to do so as much as possible during this pandemic. This sentence is straight from the Los Angeles County Stay-at-Home Guidelines. Teachers are very capable of conducting online sessions from the safety of their homes. In many cases, their equipment at home is better. In my case, the technology I have at school will not allow me to get online or create videos. We have five PE teachers on our campus and none of them have a classroom. Other teachers have two or more sites, which increases their danger exponentially. I have talked to many teachers who live with family members in the at-risk category. Though many teachers have been following the guidelines, not everyone has been wearing masks or social distancing. It has been proven that someone can be a COVID carrier and be completely symptomatic. Having everyone on campus means sharing the air circulating through our AC system. As hard as many of our custodians work, it is hard to trust that the entire campus will be fully sanitized every day, especially since there are many times that they are short-staffed. As professionals, teachers know what will, teachers know what will enable them to teach their best. We should have the flexibility to work either at home or onsite, whichever will allow us to do our job more successfully.
Here's a comment from Monica Alasquez. Dear LBUSD, I am a mother and I have, as been sending my child to school, but also in the danger of not just myself, too, as I'm a vulnerable COVID-19 patient. Would like this district to consider everyone around the students and have a way to help students success. Thanks for letting us choose an online option, but I'm worried about my health here. Okay, there's. Okay, there's..."
Next, we have Christina Urias. "I have elementary school-aged children that I need to take care of and help with their virtual class from home when the new school year starts. As a teacher, I cannot leave my children home alone to go teach virtually from my classroom. I don't have anyone who can watch my kids and help them with their online work. However, I can teach virtually from home and watch my children, just like we did the last semester. Please help us, teachers who are parents of young children. We need your flexibility during these difficult times. I ask you that, I ask you to be fair and give teachers the option of working from home or classroom if they choose to. Thank you."
Next comment is from Ellen Agonson. "I am writing to the parent to TBUSD students and am applauding the district's decision in requiring all LBUSD teachers to teach daily live lessons from their classrooms beginning in September. I strongly believe that our LBUSD teachers would be the most effective in their classrooms. During the course of the shutdown last year, it had come to my attention that many LBUSD teachers expressed various concerns with working from home. Issues concerning use of own internet, connectivity, not to mention not having all of their school materials readily available to them. It is clear to me that the only resolution is to have LBUSD teachers teach from their empty classrooms come fall. In this matter, all of their typical teaching resources would be readily at their fingertips. As a parent, I saw firsthand how online teaching impacted my children last school year. While it was not ideal, we managed. It is my understanding that neither LBUSD nor TAO require teachers to teach daily lessons during this past spring shutdown. This is the single most important change that needs to take place before we enter the 2020-21 school year. Teachers must be required to not only give our students daily live lessons, but they also need to be as similar as possible to the education our students would receive while attending a normal day at school. In addition to the above frustrations, it has been brought to my attention that TAO walked out of negotiations with LBUSD last week. TAO has also hosted Zoom meetings with teachers and parents in attendance. In addition to posting said meetings on their public social media pages, encouraging teachers not be too great so that we can make the district look bad, along with telling teachers to post on their social media asking the district, "Why are you trying to kill teachers?", among other things. This is absolutely absurd, and I am disgusted by these task tactics from not only LB, not only TAO, but any teacher participating in this nonsense. Work location is not something that is bargained, even during a pandemic. Thousands of professionals have and will continue to work onsite, all while safely complying with local and state health recommendations. Teachers need to be required to be in their classrooms all while delivering proper, meaningful, strong, daily live lessons to our young students. The classroom environment will help in serving its purpose of being a workplace for the teachers instead of them being at home. When the coronavirus numbers go down in our county, my hope is that LBUSD is able to open for those of us that want our students to go back to school and participate in a traditional learning platform. I appreciate your willingness to hear all sides of this option."
Thank you.
Next, we have Gina Bonitari Calaby. "Dear Board of Education, as a veteran teacher of LBUSD, I am disheartened with the lack of U6 by the district through the whole pandemic. Starting March 13th, teachers' lives were turned upside down. Instead of singing our praises, the district appeared to throw the teachers under the bus with comments like 'Our teaching was no longer rigorous.' Remember, all teachers were trying their best during the challenges for day-to-day unknowns. Now, teachers are requesting for the flexibility to work from our classroom and our home. I remember way back in the day, Teaching 101 telling us new bright-eyed teachers to remain flexible. It appears to me that the executive staff has forgotten the concept of flexibility. One size does not fit all. This is why we have differentiated instruction, GATE and IEPs. Daily, the state and LA County have stated that it is far safer at home. It was embarrassing on July 20th when the district had their board workshop and meeting. Unlike LAUSD, our school board could only be heard and not seen. Isn't this a board of education workshop and meeting? On top of the disappointment, there was glitch after glitch during the meeting. Even as recently as this past weekend, I received an email that re-enrollment was having technical difficulties in parent view. All of these technical issues leads me to believe that the equipment the district provides will not be up to par to handle every teacher to be on campus and livestream all day. On top of the issues with technology, I have heard from executive staff that equipment is equitable amongst teachers in the district. My 13-inch MacBook is over five years old, and somehow I am to livestream, which means teach a lesson and watch up to 30 students on a 13-inch laptop. The executive staff continues to share information with the parents and community before making sure there is an agreement, MOU, with my union, TAO. This makes me feel like the district is not wanting to bargain in good faith. Slides have been presented to parents and the community with the examples of what a day would look like for teachers and students at all levels. It is presented in the slides that teachers to livestream all day, four to five hours. Our recess break at elementary is to be with the students doing an activity or on mindfulness and movement. Where is the real break for teachers? Pre-March 13th, I had two 15-minute recess breaks, one in the morning and one in the afternoon. Furthermore, I feel like the executive staff is out of touch with what a child can handle as far as screen time. One last question. Will there be any planning time? According to the example model, there is no time allotted for any grading or planning or creating work to be posted."
Next comment is from Michelle Carlyle. "Hello, LBUSD executive staff and LBUSD Board of Education members. This message is urgent. I am begging each and every one of you to listen. Attached is an article from a superintendent with 20 years' experience. His staff is dying because of COVID-19. Long Beach still has time to avoid this mess. He stated, 11% of my staff that's gotten COVID, and we haven't had a single student in our building since March. Not a single student, not one on campus, and still a teacher is dead from being there. This is exactly what you are demanding of your staff to unneedingly expose them to this virus. It is not safe on campus. It is my understanding that the district is even allowing those working at Hughes Way to work from home 50% of the time, limiting their exposure. You need to offer the same considerations to teachers. He noted in his article that if you think anything else, I'm sorry, but it's a fantasy. Kids will get sick or worse. Family members will die. Teachers will die. Right now, it feels like LBUSD executive staff is living in a fantasy world to think we won't catch this virus on campus. I have included what he had to say about Mrs. Beard so that we learn from that experienced, what they experienced. Mrs. Beard's life mattered. Teachers and staff at LBUSD school, their lives matter. The lives of the teachers I work with and love dearly, their lives matter. The life of my sick elderly parents who I care for, their lives matter. My husband with diabetes, his life matters. My child with reactive airway, his life matters. My life matters. By being forced out of the protections of our homes, you are sending a clear message that lives don't matter. Mrs. Beard did everything right. She followed all the protocols. If there's such a thing as a safe, controlled environment inside a classroom during a pandemic, that was it. We had three teachers sharing a room so they could teach a virtual summer school. They were so careful. This was back in June, when cases here were starting to spike. The kids were at home, but the teachers wanted to be together in the classroom so they could team up on the new technology. I thought that was a good idea. It's a big room. They could watch and learn from each other. Mrs. Beard was a master teacher. She had been here since 1982, and she was always coming up with creative ideas. They delivered care packages to the elementary students so they could sprout beans for something hands-on at home. And then the teachers all took turns in front of the camera. All three of them wore masks. They checked their temperatures. They taught on their own devices and didn't share anything, not even a pencil. At first, she thought it was a sinus infection. That's what the doctor told her, but it kept getting worse. I got a call that she had been rushed to the hospital. Her oxygen was low, and they put her on a ventilator pretty much right away. The other two teachers started feeling sick the same weekend, so they went to get tested. They both had it bad for the next month."
Next, we have Elizabeth Guzman. "I'm writing, Dear Board of Education, I'm writing to respectfully request that teachers be allowed the option to teach online from home. There is a strong indication that COVID-19 may be an airborne virus, and as a result, I am convinced that teachers would be safer and more effective teaching from home. In addition, the TAO survey showed that teachers have newer computers as well as more reliable Wi-Fi at home. Thank you for your consideration."
Next comment is from Donna McCoy. "My name is Donna McCoy, and I am the parent of twin boys at Milliken High School. Please explain in detail the options for enrollment this fall. Thank you."
Next, we have Maya Smith. "As a veteran teacher of 28 years, I have always proudly served the students of Long Beach with a great deal of warmth, compassion, and understanding. In the past few years, teachers have been hammered with the U6 unnecessarily being reminded to show warmth, compassion, and understanding to all of our students. Interestingly enough, it's the U6 and the warmth, compassion, and understanding that has been completely disregarded by all of you as you're making decisions on reopening our new school year. Prior to September 1, I will need a legal document indicating that if I am required to work at my site and if I have traceable proof of contracting COVID-19 at my work site, I do have grounds for my family to sue my employer for negligence. They will have directions to list every member of the executive staff and Board of Education listed on my lawsuit. It is the Board of Education and the executive staff who makes these life and death decisions and will be held responsible. I want to do my job in the place I can do it best, and whether that is at home or in my classroom, it should be my decision, and you trust, and you should trust my professional judgment. I welcome my site manager to do her job and hold me accountable through active and visible monitoring. Please work with us and not against us. Teachers demand flexibility."
Next comment is from Jaclyn Martenson. "I'd like my kids to not miss out on all the activities and pivotal learning moments and experiences middle school and high school have to offer. However, I'm concerned about the mental and emotional effect this closing of schools will have on their development, both socially and academically. I'm not sure how we can just close down schools when our youth are not the prime targets of this virus. Recovery rate on this is super high anyway, so why the mass hysteria? I believe it's like 99.8% recovery. Kids need social interaction for mental and emotional health, period. I'm not understanding this whole pandemic school shutdown, and I don't have children that work well by themselves in front of a screen. I guess, yet safety is a concern, but we will allow big protest gatherings and fundraisers. What about the homeless communities? I don't understand how they are still intact if this virus is indeed that deadly. I don't trust the numbers anyway, and I'm very skeptical at this point about anything the CDC, media, or politicians say at this point. So many mistakes were made and so much false information out there, it's hard to trust anyone who claims to be experts nowadays. I'm not even sure what or who I'm writing this to, but I'm sure my thoughts and opinions are a minority at this point, and I just feel compelled to write something regardless. Please, someone help me understand better if possible."
Next, we have Artie Harper. "Dear Board and LBUSD Leadership, I am the parent of two at Lowell Elementary School. Like many parents, I am seeking some additional details on the upcoming school year plans before I can make an instructional choice for my children by the August 7 deadline. Number one, in-person instruction safety. Given the need for many students to elect for in-person school this fall, pending state approval, what has been done to improve safety for staff and students in campus regarding ventilation? Have any modifications been made to filter air through HVAC units? Will classroom windows that are currently inoperable after last year's construction be made to open? Along these, those lines with recent data concerning aerolized spread of COVID-19. Has any consideration been given to taking advantage of our temperate climate and providing outdoor learning environments, as is the case with numerous other districts? Number two, COVID. Can you please define what would necessitate a closure of a classroom or an entire school due to a positive COVID test? Is it a staff member/student who tests positive? Someone who lives with them? What measures are in place for contract tracing to determine who else at the school would need to isolate? For how long? Is LBUSD providing those COVID tests at no cost? What is the absence policy for those asked to isolate due to contact with a COVID-positive individual? What policies are in place for someone who develops symptoms while at school? Number three, online instruction. How were the teachers who will be instructing remotely, how were the teachers who will be instructing remotely chosen? Were they identified as having exceptional skills in this mode of instruction? What training has been provided to all LBUSD teachers to prepare for remote learning? Has an online learning platform, Canvas, Schoolology, et cetera, been selected and rolled out to staff? If not, when will this happen? What information can you provide to substantiate claims that the online platforms will be more robust than in the spring? Will students who select the online instruction be paired with students from their school or a mix of district students in their grade? Will the online teacher be from their school? Another LBUSD proficient in online instruction, a consultant? Online instruction suggestion. Students don't need teachers live for content delivery. They need them to answer questions and to collaborate with others. Asynchronous activities, content delivery, lower-level practice, independent work, formative assessment, et cetera. Synchronous activities, connecting with students, clarifying..."
Next comment is from Jill Nickel. "Good evening, Board members, executive staff, teachers, parents, and students. My name is Jill Nickel, and I am a parent and teacher for Long Beach Unified School District. My main concern as a parent is the safety and well-being of my children. I have a child who will be entering special ed TK at Cuyberly Elementary next year, and nothing has been mentioned about his program. In every video and slide deck, it focuses on regular education and the program options. How can I, as a parent, fill out the survey and parent view without knowing what his day will look like? How can any parent who has a child in special ed make a decision on their child's learning this next year if we have no idea what it may consist of? I hope you will provide us with a sample model of what special ed will look like next year, since you did for regular ed before the August 7 deadline. Thank you very much."
We have Amelia Garib. "My name is Amelia Garib and ZIP Code 90815. I am writing to give comment on item 20, Opening a Schools Update. I am a veteran teacher in Long Beach and voter in District 4. It is the wrong decision to require teachers and staff to work from their sites in the fall. We are greatly increasing the risk of COVID-19 infections, inviting disruptions in learning while actually adding barriers to learning. My primary reason is simple. I will not be able to deliver the best learning experience if mandated to teach from my school site. Technology constraints will keep me from utilizing the full power of our new LMS. If administration is serious about all safety precautions, quote, "The clear risk of sharing an enclosed air supply means everyone must wear a face covering at all times, including while using online video platforms with students. The plan for synchronous learning will be unquestionably hampered. If I must quarantine or become ill, I am not prepared to transition seamlessly to at-home instruction. Teaching from home eliminates all of these barriers to learning. As a resident and voter in Long Beach, I know the long-term goal is to get control over viral spread so we can return to in-person learning. Having 3,500 people from various counties leave their shelter in place to gather on our campuses is creating a completely unnecessary risk, one that will prolong the need to keep our campuses closed to students while endangering myself, my family, and my community. Practically every other school district has come to the same conclusion. Flexibility to teach home is the right choice. Please encourage LBUSD executive staff to work with our teachers and find a solution that supports our best teaching. Thank you."
Next comment is from Tina Montamir. Letter to the LBUSD Board of Education and Executive Staff. Like my colleagues in the district, I am very concerned with the safety issues surrounding our return to work at our school sites. My most immediate concern, however, is about my situation as an itinerant teacher. I am currently a K-5 general music teacher. I work at six different schools. As of now, I have heard nothing in the district's plan to address the fact that I teach at a different site every day of the week. Even if we are directed to teach from one homeschool, I do not have a dedicated classroom in any of my schools. Mostly, I teach in the auditorium, which is not conducive to teaching online. The district assumes teachers can use their classroom workstation to deliver lessons online. However, I have not been issued any appropriately district-owned technology. I do not have a workstation or even a desk in any of my current teaching spaces. Also, the Wi-Fi access in most of my auditoriums is not reliable. Many times during my classes, I had to use my personal phone as a hotspot to be able to use the technology I carry with me to, carry with me to every school. This past spring, when our buildings were closed, the teachers transitioned to online learning. I used my own equipment to deliver my music lessons in the most effective and engaging ways possible in a virtual learning environment. I purchased new technology in the form of a second monitor, a USB microphone, speakers, a tripod, and video recording equipment to supplement my home technology. This allowed me to prepare and deliver my lessons as well as record them to make them available to students who could not attend my Google meets, thereby giving them asynchronous learning opportunities. There is no one-size-fits-all in our current situation. Teachers have different needs to be able to teach effectively in an online environment. Some teachers are in a high-risk group, some are not. Some have family members in a high-risk group and some do not. Some have children at home and some do not. Some need to work from home, some need to work from their classrooms. Some will do a combination of both. We need to have options so we can do what works best, not only for each of us individually, but for our students and families. We want a choice. As professionals, we are dedicated, passionate teachers. Please acknowledge us. Please consider our request and know that we miss our students and cannot wait to be back with them, but only when it is safe to do so.
Next, we have Frederick Padilla. Dear LBUSD Board of Education, I'm writing this email to ask you to please allow LBUSD teachers to work from home during the redirected learning phase of the 2020-2021 school year. On March 13, 2020, there were 40 confirmed cases of COVID-19 in LA County. Source: LA County Public Health. Today, August 1, 2020, there are 192,167 confirmed cases. Source: LA County Public Health. This is a 4,804-fold increase. COVID-19 is almost 5,000 times more widespread today than it was on the date we started on our first school shutdown. In March 2020, you decided that COVID-19 was too dangerous to keep schools open, and you allowed teachers to work from home. I applaud your decision. Today, you are requiring that all teachers return to their physical school buildings where they will share hallways, bathrooms, entry and exit gates, doorknobs, and other common areas and items. The truth is that there is nothing our custodial staff can do to make our school buildings 100% COVID-safe. The only 100% COVID-safe places are our homes. Many other school districts are allowing their teachers to work from home for the beginning of the 2020-2021 school year. In fact, some local school districts are even requiring that their teachers work from home, citing safety concerns. I do not feel safe teaching from my classroom for redirected learning. Sending thousands of teachers to their school buildings while COVID-19 numbers are exploding all around us is not a safe decision and defeats the governor's purpose of keeping, keeping schools closed. I therefore humbly request that you allow LBUSD teachers to work from home for the redirected learning phase of the 2020-2021 school year.
Next comment is from Lawanda Johnson. Greetings. My name is Lawanda Johnson, and I am a TAOB representative at Hamilton Middle School. I speak on behalf of many teachers whose primary concerns are sanitation and work environments. For many teachers, there is not adequate air circulation in classrooms. Air conditions don't function properly, and when the windows are open, an increased risk of WASP and bees exist. And it dare not rain, which creates floods around primary exits. Secondly, teachers who have a dual role as a parent of young children are perplexed as to how is it their responsibility to pay for childcare or force their child into another environment because the child's school is not available during school hours? Finally, there is an increased risk of COVID-19 on teachers that need to use common environments outside their classroom. Each teacher negatively impacts more than 150 students on their roster if they become COVID-19 positive. So does the benefit outweigh the cost? Safe and civil environments will always promote quality work. Teachers directly impact the learning of students.
Next, we have Kelly DaSilva. To the LBUSD Board of Education, my name is Kelly DaSilva, and I am both an LBUSD parent and teacher. This is in regard to Item Number 20 on the Agenda, Opening of School Update. I believe teachers should be given a choice of returning to our classrooms to teach or teaching from the safety of our homes. We are concerned for our own health and that of the people we care for. Several of us have medical conditions that put us in higher-risk categories for COVID-19 or are the caretakers for elderly parents who are also at risk. Additionally, many of us have children at home. We teachers are able to provide quality instruction from the safety of our homes. I was one of the summer school SEAL teachers. We taught synchronously from our homes for two hours each day. We were also able to pull small groups during that time. My administrator was a regular visitor to our class meetings. The same procedure could be followed this fall. We are inherently safer teaching from our homes due to the lowered risk of exposure. While I understand that the district has implemented cleaning procedures, it still, it still elevates our risk to be on campus. While providing meal service, as an example, can only be done at a school site, there is no logistical reason that teaching cannot be provided from the safety of a teacher's home. Some teachers may feel comfortable with being on campus, and I believe that teachers should have the choice to be there. However, the less staff members on the campus, the safer it will be for all those who are on campus daily. It will reduce the exposure for those individuals. I appreciate that the district is offering to provide childcare to school-aged children of teachers. However, even in a small group setting, the risk of exposure is still greater than the risk of exposure of those who stay safe at home. If my son is exposed to at least 11 additional people in his small childcare setting, that still elevates his risk and therefore mine. If we become sick, will our sub be required to teach from our classroom? Or will subs be allowed to teach from home? We want to avoid meeting a sub by staying healthy. We teachers love our jobs. We miss our students. We look forward to being back in the classroom, providing them the high-quality instruction we are used to when it is safe to do so. In the meantime, we want to be safe so that we can consistently be able to teach them from afar. Respectfully, Kelly DaSilva.
Next is from Erica Sands. My name is Erica Sands. I teach at Poly High School. I was born in Long Beach and went to all LBUSD schools. I also happily decided to student-teach and continue my full-time teaching career here for the last 15 years. I say this because I'm a dedicated teacher along with many LBUSD teachers. We have the best interests for our students and schools at heart. I am desperately emailing you to give teachers options to go into classrooms or teach from home when we return August 30. I understand many teachers were not comfortable teaching from home due to computer issues, household distractions, et cetera. Although this was true for some, there were many teachers who were comfortable, comfortable working from home and had great success. I'm, I am a digital arts teacher. I love what I teach, and although teaching in the classroom is the best situation, I was able to teach successfully from home. I brought in an industry leader for my students to interview. I used computer programs that worked similar to Illustrator and Photoshop. I also continued utilizing the Google Classroom my students set up at the beginning of the school year, and I created YouTube videos on our already-created channel. Next year, we will be offering students access to the Adobe Suite from their own devices, thanks to the new licensing. I have two major concerns about not giving teachers the options to teach from home, our kids. My daughter is going into the 5th grade next year at a brand-new LBUSD school. She has an IEP and needs support while reading. I want to utilize support from family and myself to make sure she is successful. I do not want to send her to a daycare with a supervised staff member. I was able to support her effectively from home while working full-time in the spring. We had a system, and it worked for us. Also, if it is safe for kids to go to daycare, why not schools? My second major concern is my own health. Numbers are not going down in Long Beach or in the surrounding counties. We have not been given the all-clear. My dad passed away in May from lung cancer. He was in the hospital for two weeks, and we couldn't see him until he was brought home under hospice care. He died the next day. My father-in-law passed away from cancer two years ago. My husband and I have two moms to take care of with no surrounding siblings to help them if something happens to us. I understand there are safety and health procedures put into place, but why take the risk? We need to come back strong and not fear we are all going to get called home. There are too many unknowns, and I do not want anyone's life to be at risk so we just, so we can just see what happens. I appreciate you taking the time to read my email. I know how hard everyone has worked, and this is not an easy time for anyone. I hope and pray for a normal school year daily. We learn new findings every day about COVID. Why take the risk that can affect the life of anyone working for our district?
This will be the last email. This is from Julie Santana. Hello, my name is Julie Santana, and I am a math teacher at Hughes Middle School. I am currently preparing for the upcoming school year and need to become proficient in our new learning management system as soon as possible so that I can plan how best to serve my students. I cannot attend the one and only district planned training time as I will be traveling, taking my son to college for three days during the week of training. I am certain I am not the only teacher in my situation, unavailable for sole week of planned training, and also wanting an earlier training to be ready to serve my students. Please schedule an earlier week or days of training for the new system so that all teachers can be proficient on our new system and best serve our students. Thank you.
Okay, so we probably didn't get to approximately 20 of the online public... Can you just read the names of the people who submitted comments, just so we know who submitted comments?
All of them?
Yes, thank you.
We have Dana Lawrence. She's a teacher. Bill Weeks. Chong Law. Christopher Thiden. Varam Osarian. Rachel Thiel. Sean Seal Horowitz. Siobhan Watson Harding. Tonya Reyes Ranga, which I believe she was here. Doug Howard. Raymond Meissen. Dalis La. Bobby Di Benedetto. Mary Ann Vienas. Camila Jackson. Keisha Woods. Jane Roder. Peter Bostic. Linda Mosil Nikar. Pamela Montooth. Frederick Padilla. Tracy Weathers. Jeff Johnson. Dina Iwai. Christine Suarez. Cheyenne Bryant. John Matthews. Maria Venegas. Doris Robinson. Steve Adams. Charlie Trugillo. Pamela Montooth. Andrew Leasing. Michael O'Neil. William Todd Martin. Martha Kotta. Leanna Iswell.
Okay, thank you. And so will those be directed to the board after tonight? And then that becomes a matter of public record. If I could move things from the agenda, if we could just move public testimony on items not listed on the agenda and move that up, can, can I do that?
Ask for consensus.
Yes, I make one suggestion, too. You call an angel...
For the gentleman who had a step away, he notified school safety. Yes, so he was there, so I would suggest that you bring him back.
Okay.
And then move on to the items not on the agenda.
I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing it correctly, but it's like, Sorthia?
Yes.
Ruin vision and adorable.
Okay.
So he's, once again, no longer, okay, thank you.
So the request is to move public testimony not listed on the agenda so that those who are here don't have to...
Right, because we have people who've been waiting outside.
And then the ones that are emailed?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, that sounds great.
Okay, so that's a consensus. We'll, we'll just go right to that item on the agenda. And, and then how about, so we do the public comment, not listed on the agenda, and take a little 10-minute break after that before we get into the business. I'm, I'm seeing heads nodding, so I'm gonna move ahead. Okay, so we will ask for Kim Tibari.
The next one.
The next name.
Oh, sorry, oh, yeah, and Rogelio on deck.
It's not Kim.
Did we not have Kim Tibari?
Should have.
Okay. Okay, so Rogelio, Nicole.
Just go ahead. Hello, my name is Rogelio Robbins. I am a teacher here in Long Beach, and I just kind of came today because I wanted to speak on behalf of the teachers and kind of as an advocate. I know we're coming back to the school year, and I was kind of under the impression that we were going to be able to choose to be in the classroom or not. Now, for me, I was already planning on being in the classroom. I got no problem with that. But I know there are other teachers that it's going to create a hardship. It's going to create fear, anxiety. Some teachers, I'm just honestly worried for their health. My, my teacher next door to me, my history teacher next door, is immunocompromised, and her husband works, so she was really kind of counting on working at home to stay safe and be there for her kids, who she's got to teach as well. So that is one issue that I had, that I just kind of wanted to address my concern, I guess. I don't really need an answer. I'm just here to kind of speak, right? The other one was, I haven't been told whether or not we are going to have proper technology in our classroom. I know myself, I'm dealing with a computer from 2016 that doesn't even have a webcam. So, I mean, I was going to bring my own computer into the classroom, but now that I'm being told that it's mandatory, what about the people and teachers that do not have that technology at home? Are they going to be forced to buy it, or is the district providing it? That's a concern. And then my final concern, and this is really what, what made me come down today, is that in the event that somebody gets sick, and it almost seems like that is a real possibility, if not almost guaranteed, but if somebody does get sick or bring the sickness into their house, how is a family going to deal with that, knowing that that family member was forced to go to work and not given the choice to go back into the classroom? So those were the issues that I just wanted to come and, just on behalf of my fellow teachers, just get out there and express. So I really do appreciate you letting me have this time and letting us come in and voice our concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, after Nicole, we have Parisa. Um, Parisa?
Good evening. My name is Nicole Gonochi, and I'm an education equity lawyer with Public Advocates, a nonprofit civil rights organization. For the past several years, we have worked with the district and other organizations like Children's Defense Fund California, Latinos in Action, and Long Beach Forward to increase services for high-need students in Long Beach and to put on LCAP Community Forum. forums. Most recently, as you have heard in past board meetings, we collaborated with the district, Californians for Justice, and CDF on the family needs assessment. Today, you have heard from many parents and teachers demanding to be heard, so I would like to focus my comments on two issues that are crucial to community engagement. First, I am extremely disappointed with Long Beach for changing its public participation policy in a way that severely limits public comment, especially for Black and Brown parents and caregivers. After schools closed in March, Long Beach adopted a public participation policy that permitted members of the public to email their public comment to be read by a staff member at the board meeting. After numerous parents and other community stakeholders complained about the lack of a live participation option, which also violates the Baron Act, by the way, the district changed the policy last week to allow in-person comment only. Now, I understand that you have just read a bunch of email comments, but that wasn't the policy, and the people I was standing with in line out there said that they emailed a comment and were told the comment wouldn't be read, so that's why they came out here. In any case, although community members want the option to provide live comment in their own voice, limiting public comment to a single in-person-only option or in-person and email during a pandemic is cruel and illegal. Not only will this change in policy severely limit public participation overall, but it will completely eliminate the right, excuse me, the right to make public comment for parents and other community members who are medically vulnerable and/or lack access to transportation. As we all know, it is Black and Brown families who disproportionately suffer from these challenges. In sort of closing here, please change your public participation policy immediately to allow public comment via email, telephone, and Zoom, or another live virtual platform as Oakland, Los Angeles, Santa Monica, Malibu, Moreno Valley, and many others have done. It's really not that hard, so I hope that you can just do this to allow more people to be heard. Lastly, I'm very concerned about the community engagement timeline as it relates to the Learning Continuity Plan requirements. Districts must adopt a Learning Continuity Plan by September 30th, and the plan must be developed in consultation with all stakeholders, including an opportunity for DCAC and DLEC to separately review and comment on the plan. These comments must be responded to in writing by the superintendent. However, our understanding is that neither DLEC nor DCAC have met since schools have closed in March, and there are no plans to engage until October. So in closing here, I really hope that you will expedite the budget engagement timeline that you discussed at your last board meeting. Thank you.
And Jeff, we'll have one more.
Hello, my name is Parisa Forutan and I'm a math teacher at Renaissance High School. I'm here to represent my colleagues at Renaissance and anywhere else in LBUSD who like to have the flexibility to work from home and order a classroom. Exactly 24 hours before we get the announcement, I emailed my principal and asked whether I could teach from my classroom next year. And the reason is because there are three other people in my tiny house who have to work or take online classes, and on some days, it gets very hectic. So I do understand that the rationale why some people working for a classroom for some people and on some days is crucial, and that's what they want to do. However, in these strange times, we need the flexibility to use our good judgment to protect our family members, ourselves, and others who have come to contact with. So one solution fits all, doesn't service. Especially when I listened to the last board meeting, I heard many of the questions asked when unanswered because the people in charge said they have to get back to us. So basically, there is a lot of unknowns, and how the LBUSD has come with this decision that all teachers at all times must teach online from their classroom is bewildering why that decision was made. In math, we have an activity that is this, we notice and we wonder, so I'm going to ask my questions through this activity. So I noticed that some teachers have school-aged children, and these children need to be taking online instructions at the same time that their parents have to be teaching. Is childcare available in the classroom? Is childcare available or provided for these children? If so, aren't you creating another classroom of sort? And how do you guarantee the safety of these children who have to be taking online classes and their parents are not home? Isn't it the same as going to school? I wonder what happened to all the effort that we put personally during the spring? I have purchased a desktop for my home. I've purchased Gizmos to use my iPhone as a document camera, and we have been, actually with my department, we have been talking about how we can realign our curriculum so we can teach online. And all of that effort is going to go to waste in terms of having to teach from the classroom and don't have the flexibility that when something happens at home, not having the flexibility to teach from our own home.
I'm sorry, but the time is up.
Okay, so just wanted to make sure that.
Well, you know, the time is up.
Okay.
Thank you for coming.
But I really would like people to think about what they are asking the teachers to do and how this all.
I assure you, we are thinking about that.
Good evening. Simply, I'm sure I'm going to repeat some things have been said, but I'm going to say them anyway. Simply, we have to remember that we are right now in a pandemic. Teachers are being challenged in ways the world of education has never, ever imagined. The choices we now are being asked to make literally are dealing with life and death, not just for us as teachers, but for the welfare of our beloved students and our families. We deserve to have the choices to follow the stay-at-home guidelines when possible, and it is possible. Teachers deserve to have a choice that provides flexibility in deciding which environment will be the safest for them to provide daily instruction. Because we do, we want to teach, we love what we do, we just want a choice to have some flexibility. Sorry. Each teacher's circumstances are very unique. And tonight, I'm just going to end on this, I'm going to leave out some of my comments because I'm sure they've been repeated. Tonight, I'm asking the board, letting them know that you have the opportunity tonight to show your support by voting to give our teachers the choice. And that's all we want, is a choice to teach at home or in their classroom. Tonight, you have the voice, and again, you have the choice, you have a choice, to say, "Teachers, we really hear you. We really hear you." Teachers, your lives and the lives of your families, they truly matter. Tonight, I have a plate. We need to have a place at the table. Teachers need a place at the table. We've been negotiating for quite a while, and teachers and our parents and our students deserve more. This plate says, "I want to live to teach," and that's truly how I feel. Some people do want to go back to class, and I applaud them for that. Some people want to stay home, and I applaud them for that. But teachers, each in a unique way, have different reasons for wanting to stay at home and for wanting to go to school. And I appreciate the emails from Ms. Kerr, I appreciate Dr. Benitez and Mr. Zaid and Ms. Dr. Brown for responding. And I know you say you're listening, but again, actions speak louder than words. And right now, a lot of teachers are feeling the disconnect. We need to figure out how to bring us together again so that we can learn to work together because parents are texting me, they're doing the Respond Act, I'm getting so many messages, and they don't understand why there is not a specific way or way for them to communicate with us, especially for special education. That's a huge area right now for us. Our special ed parents feel like they have not been addressed, that they have not, there's not a plan for what's going to happen to their children. They have voiced concerns about using Chromebooks because a lot of our kids don't have the dexterity to use their fingers using a Chromebook. Now, there are Chromebooks on the market that have fine motor. Anyway, thank you very much for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, so Letitia, do we have comments that were, okay, we'll go to those, the online.
Dear Board members, Craig Head, Meyer, and Williams, we are deeply disappointed in your action not to support Juan Benitez for president of the LBUSD Board of Education, and even more alarmed at your public responses to the concerns of the Latinx community. Systemic change and institutional change require a change in thinking and a change in organizational structures. You had an opportunity to demonstrate an honest commitment to promote diversity, equity, and inclusion at the top, but lacked the courage to do so. Perhaps maintaining the current power dynamic and privileges that exist in our community are what you really wanted to accomplish. Your vote to sustain the status quo and then to support that decision by using code language such as lack of experience and unfamiliarity with the culture of an organization is even more appalling. These excuses are the discriminatory code language with which people of color are all too familiar. Juan Benitez has a doctorate degree, is a university professor, and a community leader in his own right. Your comments and your justification for not supporting him as president of the board couldn't have insulted him and the Latinx community more. Assuming that our assessment of your actions is incorrect, we call on you to right this wrong by overturning your decision and supporting Juan Benitez for president of the LBUSD Board of Education.
From Robert Collins. My name is Robert Collins and I live in 90803 Bluff Park. Before COVID, we were famous for our fabulous old houses and drinking wine on Friday nights. Thanks to parents and community members who spoke at the last board meeting, reminding board members that Black Lives Matter, it was inspiring to hear letter after letter asking the board to invest in our children and to hire more Black staff members and people of color in LBUSD. Through the chair, thank you Board Member Kerr for nominating Dr. Juan Benitez to be school board president. Dr. Benitez was recently vice chair of the board, has a PhD, and has constantly, consistently, and vocally advocated for our most vulnerable, at-risk students. Board Member Benitez has encouraged LBUSD to acknowledge the existence and impacts of systemic racism in Long Beach Unified School District. He has demanded listening sessions to hear community members' experiences of racial injustice. He has spoken of presenting short-term, medium-term, and long-term goals for the Board of Education to consider to dismantle systemic racism in our schools. Board Member Benitez recently eloquently wrote, "These times require us to speak up even louder and more often, even when it is more difficult, even when we think we are not being heard, even when it is deemed as controversial, oppositional, disruptive, unorthodox, etc. We must make sure to continue to be heard, and we can only achieve this collectively." These are the words of a true leader, someone who should be president of the school board during a difficult time. Some school and district leaders would prefer that students, parents, teachers, and community members keep their mouths shut. These leaders passively aggressively defend the status quo and give lip service to listening to all stakeholders, but their actions say something very different. In the spirit of speaking out when we see problems in our district, I continue to remind the board and through the chair, the public, that LBUSD has great board policy stating every student must receive age-appropriate information and instruction about sexual harassment. This board policy protects every single LBUSD student. Again, no child should be asked, "How big is your belief?" No LBUSD student should be targeted online with taunts about their sexual orientation and bleep. No LBUSD student should have to hear gay used in a negative way every single day. I remind the board that at the start of the year, tentor leadership had no idea about presenting sexual harassment information and instruction for all students, and Rogers Middle School is currently under corrective action stating that Rogers must present lessons to students of all grade levels on the topics of sexual harassment and the safety.
Hi, my name is Allison Krip. I received my first evaluation as a recreational aide this year. This was my first evaluation in three years of working there. The evaluation was all positive, and I appreciate our principal and her hard work navigating how to manage her recreational aides through a tough year, even prior to COVID. I also was awarded acknowledgement by the CAC from the All Means All Committee for my work as a recreational aide at our school site. But why did I get a good evaluation and this acknowledgement? In the three years working at my school site, I have never gone through a training outside of a handbook that I received when I was first hired and a handbook given to me the last two years after that before school started. Our school is one of the only sites left that has a rec aide supervisor. She, the supervisor, has been at our school for almost 20 years and used to teach PE, had full-time hours and benefits. She has had full control of what is ordered for equipment, what games are played on the playground, and also has had no formal training, except time. Her hours also have been cut to what is allowed by the district due to budget cuts for recreational aides, year after year. For the past few years, our PTA has fundraised and paid for the extra hours to keep our IOA in a full-time position at our school, and just last year gifted $10,000 to our school to pay for an extra rec aide for the 2019-20 school year. Currently, rec aides are not allowed to work more than 3.75 hours in a day. As of this year, one of those hours counts as classified and the other 2.75 as hourly. Those hours are not in a row. They are set up where supervision is needed and could be 15 to 1.5 hours each shift. Why am I bringing all of this up? Since I have been there, these jobs have been given mostly to parents that don't work and want to be around their kids more, me, for example. Since I have been there, I have seen favoritism, bullying, old-school discipline by those that are hired to be the front lines to our kids while on the playground. This year, our supervisor had to go on personal leave for a bit. When she left, we realized that there was nothing in place for the principal or rec aides regarding the duties of the job. I was reprimanded for bringing a kickball and red rubber ball out for the 30 minutes before school started so the kids could have something else to do outside of hitting each other with their zip-up sweatshirts. The supervisor's tenure and doing the way she had been doing it was never questioned. Her dedication to the job was all that was required. I was not even allowed to blow up red rubber balls and was told not to touch them by another
Next comment is from Julie Kohling. To whom it may concern, I am writing to you to ask for your thoughtful consideration when making plans for the upcoming school year and beyond. Please know these words come from a teacher who values students as whole people more than anything. I am also a mother with high school twins that will be seniors in the fall, and they have been privileged to spend their whole school lives in LBUSD. I care deeply about my own children and all of those who call LBUSD home. They deserve the best we can give, and all our voices matter in this important decision. I value the work you all do for LBUSD and know these are painful times and decisions. You are in my thoughts and prayers. First, we need to prioritize taking care of our most vulnerable students and families while addressing the systemic racial injustices within our school system. Our SPED students are students who are living with toxic trauma, including high poverty, racial inequities, COVID-19, etc., and our EL students need to be at the heart of any planning for 2020, 21, and beyond. Significant money needs to be put into resources that will specifically support our students and families who are encountering daily situations that prohibit them from being healthy and thriving as whole people, socially, emotionally, physically, mentally, and spiritually. If we cannot take care of our most vulnerable, our district will never truly practice All Means All. Is it just a slogan, or do we put our money where our slogan? Is it just a slogan, or do we put our money where our slogan is? Our city cannot thrive as it deserves without LBUSD changing policies, practices, attitudes, and injustices at every level. We can and must do better for our most vulnerable because in serving them, we serve our district, city, and our world. Second, I ask that you please reconsider your decision to mandate that teachers teach from empty classrooms on campus. This poses an unnecessary risk to all staff members during this already difficult moment in time. This pandemic has destroyed lives and families across the world, and has caused so much stress, fear, anxiety, and sadness. When teachers and students were sent home in March, no one had any idea that school would not reopen before the close of the school year, or that we would be facing the start of the 2020-21 year in this way. However, we were all told we were safer at home and asked to shelter in place as much as possible. Cases in our immediate area are astronomically high right now, higher now than they were in March. If it wasn't safe for teachers and staff to be on campus then, why now? There's no way you can guarantee our safety on campus. Teachers and staff would be required to use shared spaces and classrooms, would find themselves at the mercy of all those around them who may choose not to practice strict social distancing guidelines. You are asking your teachers to unnecessarily put their lives...
This is Kristy Larison. Dear LBUSD School Board, listening to the public comments, rather, demands as they were called at the last board meeting was horrifying to say the least. The suggestion that LBUSD should implement the BLM curriculum into their schools came as a shock to me. As a concerned citizen, parent, and volunteer, I researched exactly what was included in the BLM curriculum. Although some of their 13 principles were generally universal and already taught in LBUSD, for example kindness, inclusion, diversity, some of the principles they want taught were unnerving to say the least. The BLM curriculum specifically states that children need to get taught that gender is a choice and that you can choose to be a boy, a girl, both, neither, or something else. Gender and gender identity are not the same thing, and gender is not a choice, and to teach that is irresponsible and inaccurate. Additionally, the BLM curriculum specifically states that they seek to disrupt the dynamics of nuclear families. I am not against teaching about different types of family structures, but we should in no way teach or promote that the nuclear family should be destroyed. The nuclear family should not be discouraged when teaching about family structures, and the notion that BML, BLM, sorry, wants to teach the disruption of the nuclear family is frightening. BLM also calls for the removal of suspensions and expulsions along with the removal of zero tolerance. Schools are the first places many students learn to follow rules beyond those in their home. When teaching rules, teaching consequences is just as important. Allowing students the freedom to act as they please without concern or fear of a suspension or expulsion is irresponsible and is a disservice to all students. In terms of defending police on school campuses, I would like to see more police on campuses, including elementary and middle school campuses. This would allow students to have positive, respectful interactions with police long before their teenage years when they are notoriously defiant towards authority. I cannot and will not support curriculum that teaches my children inaccurate things about gender, promotes the dismantlement of the nuclear family, removes the consequences of suspensions and expulsions for poor behavior, and puts my children in danger by removing police from schools. I plead with you to do what is best for all LBUSD students by not adopting the BLM curriculum. Concerned parent.
Next is Luvia Yergulia. Dear LBUSD School Board, listening to the public comments, rather, demands as they were called at the last board meeting was horrifying to say the least. The suggestion that LBUSD should implement the BLM curriculum into their schools came as a shock to me. As a concerned citizen, parent, and volunteer, I researched exactly what was included in the BLM curriculum. This sounds exactly like the previous one.
Keep reading.
Keep reading. Okay. The BLM curriculum specifically states that children need to be taught that gender is a choice and that you can choose to be a boy, a girl, both, neither, or something else. Gender and gender identity are not the same thing, and gender is not a choice, and to teach that is irresponsible and inaccurate. Additionally, the BLM curriculum specifically states that they seek to disrupt the dynamics of nuclear families. I'm not against teaching about different types of family structures, but we should in no way teach or promote that the nuclear family should be destroyed. The nuclear family should not be discouraged when teaching about family structures, and the notion that BLM wants to teach the disruption of the nuclear family is frightening. BLM also calls for the removal of suspensions and expulsions along with the removal of zero tolerance. Schools are the first places many students learn to follow rules beyond those in their home. When teaching rules, teaching consequences is just as important. Allowing students the freedom to act as they please without concern or fear of a suspension or expulsion is irresponsible and is a disservice to all students. In terms of defending police on school campuses, I would like to see more police on campuses, including elementary and middle school campuses. This would allow students to have positive, respectful interactions with police long before their teenage years when they are notoriously defiant towards authority. I cannot and will not support curriculum that teaches my children inaccurate things about gender, promotes the dismantlement of the nuclear family, removes the consequences of suspensions and expulsions for poor behavior, and puts my children in danger by removing police from schools. I plead with you to do what is best for all LBUSD students by not adopting the BLM curriculum.
This is from Hugo Orguia. Dear LBUSD School Board, listening to the public comments, rather, demands as they were called at the last board meeting was horrifying to say the least. The suggestion that LBUSD should implement the BLM curriculum into their schools came as a shock to me. As a concerned citizen, parent, and volunteer, I researched exactly what was included in the BLM curriculum. Although some of their 13 principles were generally universal and already taught in LBUSD, for example kindness, inclusion, diversity, some of the principles they want taught were unnerving to say the least. The BLM curriculum specifically states that children need to be taught that gender is a choice and that you can choose to be a boy, a girl, both, neither, or something else. Gender and gender identity are not the same thing, and gender is not a choice, and to teach that is irresponsible and inaccurate. Additionally, the BLM curriculum specifically states that they seek to disrupt the dynamics of nuclear families. I am not against teaching about different types of family structures, but we should in no way teach or promote that the nuclear family should be destroyed. The nuclear family should not be discouraged when teaching about family structures, and the notion that BLM wants to teach the disruption of the nuclear family is frightening. BLM also calls for the removal of suspensions and expulsions along with the removal of zero tolerance. Schools are the first places many students learn to follow rules beyond those in their home. When teaching rules, teaching consequences is just as important. Allowing students the freedom to act as they please without concern or fear of a suspension or expulsion is irresponsible and is a disservice to all students. In terms of defending police on school campuses, I would like to see more police on campuses, including elementary and middle school campuses. This would allow students to have positive, respectful interactions with police long before their teenage years when they are notoriously defiant towards authority. I cannot and will not support curriculum that teaches my children inaccurate things about gender, promotes the dismantlement of the nuclear family, removes the consequences of suspensions and expulsions for poor behavior, and puts my children in danger by removing police from schools. I plead with you to do what is best for all LBUSD students by not adopting the BLM curriculum. Concerned parent.
And that is the end of our public testimony.
Okay. Did we receive more public comment that we didn't have time for?
No.
That was it?
That was all.
Okay, thank you. Then we will take a 10-minute break. We'll reconvene at 7:10.
I know that was a very quick 10 minutes, but we are getting back to business. So I'm gonna have to ask everybody to take their seats.
It's very nice to see you sitting right there, Dr. Baker.
Oh, thank you, Megan.
And Dr. Simon, and Dr. Brown.
It's good for us to be in the room with all of you.
We are now at staff reports. For the opening of school update.
Thank you, President Craighead. I'm going to kick off this presentation by our team, just by sharing a few things, and then you're going to hear from several staff members who have been hard at work. Our interest in having teachers work from their classroom is not a statement against our teachers. We love our teachers, and we care about our teachers. Our teachers and our principals represent the number one and number two factors influencing student achievement. We've also experienced thousands of staff working during the pandemic. These staff have been provided with protective materials, guidelines for staying safe, and have implemented many of our health and safety protocols. Our decision to ask teachers to teach from their work location takes health and safety in mind, while thinking about the needs of every student that you heard so many people talk about today, and proceeding with our focus on excellence and equity, while also attempting not to magnify the inequities that existed before the pandemic, and considering how we set and support high expectations across our entire school system, not individual classrooms, not individual schools, so that every student has the greatest opportunity to learn, to grow, and to be cared for. In today's presentation, our team is going to provide an update around school opening, including information about program models, services for vulnerable students, and special education students, and in a way that attempts to address many of the questions that you heard our community ask and our staff ask. And so Mr. Moskowitz will kick off the presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Baker. Good evening, board members. Nice to be with you. And I'm excited to be able to share some more information. It was great to hear so many members from our community, our teachers, our staff, our stakeholders here. It's always great in a democracy like ours to be able to hear some of the thinking out there. And I hope this evening I'm able to share, along with my colleagues, share some information that we think will clarify some of the misconceptions and add a little bit more detail to some of the questions that we've received over the last several days. Tonight will not completely answer everything. For every question we answer, a couple more are generated, and these are all great questions that we do need to answer. There will be follow-up communication coming. Communication went out just earlier today to all of our parents, clarifying the process for letting us know their choices. Dr. Cale will talk more about that in a bit. And we'll continue to have some clear communication coming out to our parents, our students, our teachers and staff in the coming days. So tonight we'll just share a little bit of information that we think will, again, clarify some things. I'm gonna start out by giving a little update on our Child Development Center and Head Start programs. It's my honor to be able to support these two programs out of the elementary office, now the early learning and elementary office this year. The directors of the CDC and Head Start programs, Cindy Young for CDC and LaShel Diggs for Head Start, would have loved to have been here, and I know they're here in spirit, because of their work and their leadership of some amazing teams throughout both of their programs have always been great hallmarks of some of the work here in Long Beach. But this summer, they've really gone above and beyond. And I want to take just a moment and highlight some of the work that our teachers and staff and our CDC and Head Start programs are engaged in in support of our students. So here's a little bit of information related to the summer program for our CDC and Head Start programs. Our Child Development Center currently has 270 students that are being supported, taught, and supervised by teachers in the program. About 95% of those students are the children of essential workers. So one of the requirements of our CDC programs for the summer program was that they be enrolled first and foremost with the children of essential workers. And I think that's important, that those parents in our community who need to go in, whether it's to the hospital, police department, wherever they're going to support the rest of us, that their children have a safe place to learn, to be supervised, and be safe. I think that's really important, and I'm glad that we're able to do that. The CDC program is at 10 sites currently, and that's for both our preschool and school age programs. So there are students in some that are the three, four, and five-year-olds. And then we also have programs for our school age. My students in the regular year would have been in school, but they're now being supervised in the School Age Child Development Center program in the summertime. For our Head Start program, you can see 283 students. Those are in both our early Head Start and Head Start programs. As you likely know, our early Head Start program is from birth up to age three, just before three. When they turn three and up till age five, they can be in our regular Head Start programs. So both of these programs, the numbers are lower than they would normally be during the school year, and likely lower than they would be even during a regular summer program. But twofold, one, I think our parents want to make sure that our programs are safe. And our staff also, we want to make sure that our staff and students are safe. And so we've taken a very measured approach to the building of these summer programs. And we've learned a lot about how we can safely support both teachers, staff, and students in a program at one of our campuses. So let me give some examples of what's been going on. First and foremost, our number one priority in these programs is the health and safety of our teachers, our staff, and our students. It's great that we can provide this childcare teaching support for students, but in an environment that's not safe, we would not want to do so. So just a few photos that you can take a look at that I'll share some context with. All of our students are socially distanced. So here's an example, when they're at lunch, they taped off the lunch benches and put Xs where kids should not be. And even during mealtime, kids are separated in a socially-distanced environment. The same is true inside of the classroom as well. We have a lot of technologies and resources to make sure that our classrooms and our playground areas are clean, whether it's the Hudson sprayer, the electrostatic sprayer, you can see there. It's a way that our custodial teams and our staff can quickly, efficiently, and safely make sure that all of our spaces are sanitized. So these items are being used in both of our programs. We have a lot of health and safety protocols in place, layers and layers of safety protocols in place within our Head Start and CDC programs. Everything from the expectations for PPE, whether it's face coverings, hand sanitizer. When students come into a CDC program, the bottoms of their shoes are sprayed and sanitized in case they may be bringing anything in in the bottom of their shoes. There are layers that are really above and beyond what are expected by our even local health department to be safe. But we're putting these layers in to make sure that all of our students and staff are in the safest environment possible. We also have signage to indicate to parents, in both English, Spanish, what are the expectations and what parents need to know when they're bringing their children. It asks questions about their health and making sure that all students that are in the programs each day are healthy. We have signage for our students to make sure they're washing their hands correctly, making sure they're socially distancing. So a lot of communication, a lot of signage to make sure that we're being safe. And then I think before kids even get there, before any staff even gets there, we do have very thorough health screenings to make sure that students don't have any temperatures, they don't have any symptoms that might preclude them from being on the campus. So probably, while we don't have students at any of our other schools right now, we're learning a lot about how we can bring students back safely. We've had them back in our CDC program since July 1st. So now over a month of having these programs running with staff, teachers, students in place safely. And it's taught us a lot about what it could look like when we're able to bring all of our students back, or those portions of students back that parents want to be there. So this may not directly answer some of the questions that parents have, but a lot of the systems we have in place in our CDC and Head Start programs are easily replicated. It could be easily replicated in other settings as well. I do just want to pause there a moment. I know you've likely received questions or comments about CDC and Head Start. I don't know if you have a naked answer for you.
Yeah, Brian, you know, it's a natural inclination for kids to engage in social interaction, to just wanna get together. It's just a natural affinity for kids. And you've got kids in an environment like this, so how do you tell them not to do that?
Yeah, part of it is just really clear communication. I think all students, even the youngest kids, when they're coming into these programs, they have also been living in the same COVID-19 environment we all have. So surprisingly, they're pretty easily, they pretty easily understand that they need to socially distance. They understand that there are places, there are maybe stickers on the carpet where they sit. So part of it is communication, and part of it is creating the spaces that allow those students to sit in safe socially-distanced ways. Face coverings when they're in the classroom, washing their hands regularly, using hand sanitizer. So when they may come together, we have a lot of ways to make sure that we get them clean and sanitized so that they can continue to work in a healthy place. Not easy when you're working with maybe a one- or two-year-old, right? Not the same as maybe an 11- or 12-year-old. But that's why we have the multiple layers of safety, just in case kids do come together.
Thank you, Brian. So you referred to that we've learned a lot, that this has taught us a lot. Can you talk about some specific examples that we've learned that we could apply if and when we do open up schools?
Sure, I'd be happy to. And Dr. Brown, if you'd like to jump in as well. We've had several staff committees in place and working really hard over the last couple of months to consider what are all of the health and safety measures that we would put in place in any setting, whether it's a work setting, like the board building, that we've had in place since May and before, or school settings. So examples, I think, that they've learned from, the electrostatic sprayers are a much more efficient way to quickly disinfect or sanitize areas where students may either have played or would be playing. So that's one example. The health screenings, I think we're learning about how much time is required to properly screen students, and what might that look like if we were bringing students in other programs. So those would be a couple that would come to mind. I don't know, Dr. Brown, if there's any more you'd like to add to that.
The others, CDC and Head Start have really paved the way for us. They're our first programs who have had students present in this new era that we're living in. The signage that they're using, the environment that they've set up that really structures what we want students to do, the hygiene practices, those are all things that they have, if you will, test run for us. And there are practices that have been both written and implemented that we will use upon the return of students to our campuses.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. One of the, actually, several parents and CDC Head Start teachers have asked me, if you could talk a little bit about if a student and our staff was to get sick, what are the criteria and considerations that we have on our end? Just kind of run us through, like, what's the protocol if we did find out that staff and our student was infected with COVID-19?
We have a process in place that we've developed through guidance with the Long Beach Health Department that should an employee or a student test positive, we walk through a process of contact tracing where we determine what the exposure may have been, and we use a timeframe to determine how far back we need to consider based on the positive diagnoses and the last time that the person, be that an adulterate child, was in our facility. From that, we determine a notification that we need to make, and that notification is to inform anyone who would have been exposed to that person that they may have been exposed, and to monitor their symptoms and seek medical attention should they need to. From there, we would make a determination about the amount of exposure and work with our local health department to determine if we needed to make a closure. We've not had that happen yet in terms of the need to make a closure. We have, because we've had employees working in our system from March 13th to the present. We have had incidents where we've had a positive COVID-19 circumstance. Every one of those has allowed us to learn about our notification process, and we feel like we have a very solid process in place in the go-forward circumstance that we will have more need to notify.
And Dr. Brown, who conducts the contact tracing?
So in this time between March and June, David Zaid and I have been directly working with employees who have tested positive. We work with them to identify the people that they may have been in contact with. And then we work with the site administrator or the department administrator to determine how the notification will be managed.
So we're taking care of that in-house?
We are, yeah. In the event that we needed consultation, we have our colleagues at the Health Department. David and I have developed a new type of expertise, and we feel confident that the decisions we've made are solid, but should we need to consult, we have opportunity to do that.
And do we have access to testing for employees?
People have access to testing through the medical benefits that the district very graciously provides. There are testing centers that are here in Long Beach that people can choose to. We don't ask people to get tested. It's always an employee's option to seek testing, so that's a personal choice.
Okay, thank you.
And how are we assessing, I guess a related question, Madam Chair, how are we assessing our capacity to have enough PPE, hand sanitizer, disinfectant wipes? What's our process for that?
I'm glad you asked that, because we're really proud of the way that our district staff has supported the ordering process. And so what we've done is we have a large spreadsheet where we've taken every school site, office site, the number of people that work there, and the number of gallons of hand sanitizer, mask availability, gloves that would be needed. We've created a formula for how those materials will be dispensed to the sites or to the departments. And we have a team over at the warehouse that's working to package those items. So a school site administrator will have a list of exactly the items that have come to them in terms of protective equipment, what area of the campus it's for, how it should be dispensed. It's a very organized process, and we have teams right now working. I don't know if you saw the video that was released earlier this week, but that was really to show the process that we're using to not just have the items in the warehouse, but have them available at the sites where the needs really are. So thank you for asking that.
Yeah, Mr. Moskowitz, so we know with little ones that, you know, so they've been back a month, and we're getting into some routines. These are all great health and safety mechanisms. I just have heard some concerns raised around fidelity to those, and I'm wondering if a month into it, what mechanisms are in place to ensure that all of the centers are adhering to those, making sure that there is consistency across the district in the implementation of those?
Yeah, that's a great question. So initially, when we were bringing staff back, both the directors of both our CDC and Head Start programs met with every teacher virtually to talk through the expectations, go through all the protocols. Then the managers and other lead teachers were trained and have been doing that more individualized training for every teacher. So every teacher and staff member in the program have been trained on the use of all the proper PPE and the proper use of sanitizing equipment. Beyond that, our managers and site teacher leaders are regularly doing both announced and unannounced visits to check on the fidelity of those programs. They have been informed that if there's anything, and this is true, in our preschool programs, fidelity to rules and expectations are at the utmost at all times. And so our teachers, our teachers, our youngest kids, know that they need to report anything that's different than normal because it could affect the licensing in general. So the licensing requirements require that our teachers be very high on the fidelity to all of these rules and expectations. Along with that, we have asked any teacher, our directors have asked any teacher directly report to them if need be. I know that's a conversation we've had with our Teachers Association, what could those reporting structures look like? So it's something that we know is critical. It's one thing to have rules in place, but if people aren't following, then that's a problem. So we think we have layers of accountability to make sure that all of these rules, procedures, and expectations are in place.
Okay, and then one other question I had is, on the J-plus campus, there is a state testing site as well as a Head Start program. And I know there can be a perception that that, in close proximity, could be exposing our Head Start staff and our kids in Head Start in a higher way, basically. So I haven't been out lately since Head Start has been back, but just the awareness that that might feel more unsafe than some of our other states if we have the assurances that there is proper distancing, that our staff and that our kids aren't having to walk into a place that would potentially be of concern to them. So I just raise that as an awareness piece, and as we look at the layout of how that works, that maybe we need to work with our state partners to give extra assurance that it's a safe situation.
I've been visited several sites, CDC and Head Start sites this summer. I have not been out there yet, so I'll make sure to get out there. It's my understanding that the two areas are quite distant from one another, that there's really no possible way for any kind of cross-contamination. But I understand that maybe the perception is there. So I'll make sure to get out there this week, take a look at that, and give some feedback back to our team.
Thank you.
Brian, right now, this board member Curro was asking about that. This may not be related, so I'm happy to pause until we get to the next part of the presentation, but I got a notice from Kids Club. presentation, but I got a notice from Kids Club today with its kind of announcement, new rates, and sort of the hours that are going to be happening. Who's overseeing our Kids Club activities for this coming academic year?
Yes, our Kids Club is actually supervised by our Child Development Center. So Cindy Young also supports the, the Kids Club program through, Shannon Mccone is the leader, I don't know her title, the director, basically, of that program. And so she, she will be following, the Kids Club program will be following the same rules and expectations that are being implemented in our CDC programs.
Okay, great.
All right, so we could talk a lot more about CDC and Head Start. I know it's a, it's a, I think it's an important conversation for, for two reasons. One, number one, we're getting kids back where they need to be and where our families need them to be, which is supervised by our staff. And number two, we're doing it in a safe way with multiple layers of safety, and we're learning from that, because we know at some point we're bringing students back to our K-12 schools, and this is giving us an opportunity to not experiment, because it's not an experiment. We're putting in these multiple layers to make sure that it's safe, but it's giving us an opportunity in smaller settings to see exactly how safe these things can be. And we're just really appreciative of our CDC and Head Start teachers and staff for being there for our families, being there for our students, and, and really helping us to pave the way forward. So the next component I want to go into, I'll spend a few minutes, and then I'll hand it off to my middle school and high school colleagues. We want to talk a little bit more about the instructional models. At our board workshop, or it was that day, the morning of the board workshop in July, we shared with all of you our instructional models. We've been working with, our Teachers Association shared these instructional models with them. These are the instructional models and programs that came out of our advisory committees that were made up of multiple stakeholders, parents, teachers, TALB, CSCEA. So there's been a lot of work behind the scenes. We pushed these out to our families last week in a, in a email communication through School Messenger and asked them to make some choices in, in parent view. And so we've heard a lot of feedback about that, heard some more feedback about that today. So I think what we'd like to do today is twofold. One, add a little bit more clarity about what are the program choices? And then two, to maybe answer some of the questions, the most asked questions, I guess I'd say. And then I'll just, I guess overlay this to say that if there's any questions that any parent has, parent, teacher, staff member, there's a couple of great ways to get those questions answered. Always welcome to call our district office. We have staff in the building now answering, not right at this moment, but on normal work hours, they're in the building answering phone calls. So you can call any of our level offices and speak with staff to get questions answered. Our principals are amazing resources. The vast majority of them are back on their campuses now, and if not on their campus physically, because they're out still vacationing potentially, they are answering emails. So I would encourage any teacher, parent, staff member who has questions beyond today to reach out to our offices, reach out to their principal, and we'll make sure we get all those, those questions answered for you. So if you look here, we, we talked about in July, and these still hold true at the elementary level, there are three models. There's an in-person model, a hybrid model, and an all-online model. I'm going to briefly speak to the first two, because I know that we still have parents, and since they're having to make a choice at this time, they have questions about that. The in-person model basically has students in groups of about 15 to 18 students socially distanced in a classroom. They will stay at the elementary level in that classroom for pretty much the entire day. They will be in there maybe in the morning time with the classroom teacher. They'll eat lunch in that classroom space, of course, going outside to get some fresh air. And then they'll remain in that same classroom space with another school staff member who will supervise them while they complete some other supplemental activities. It might be independent writing, it might be a research and inquiry project, there may be some art projects that they're working on. So over the course of an entire six-hour day, eight to two o'clock as an example, our students will get both direct instruction from a classroom teacher in the core content areas, and they'll also have time to complete those other supplemental activities that they would complete in a typical elementary school day. We are keeping kids socially distanced, we are keeping them separated, they're not, there's not a lot of movement around the school. And frankly, the, the health, safety protocols that you saw being implemented in our CDC and Head Start classrooms, you heard Dr. Brown reference, and the other procedures that are in place, would be fully in place before we would ever bring any student back to our, our schools. So I, I think for, for parents to understand, they may, we may not be able to answer all of their questions in a, in an email about health and safety, but we can answer the individual questions that come about, just knowing that in this setting, this all-day setting of teaching and learning for students, there are going to be multiple layers of safety that we would have in place. The hybrid model is essentially the first part of what I explained in the all-in-person model. Students would come to school, they would receive direct instruction for about half of their day from their classroom teacher, and at that time, at the end of that instructional period, they would go home and complete those same supplemental independent activities that they would have completed with a staff member in the all-in-person model. They'll complete that at home, maybe under parent supervision with a family member that might be supporting them. So it's half-day in-person with the teacher and half-day at home completing those supplemental independent activities. And then the third option is the all-online option, and that is the option that really went out in detail, the options that went out to parents last week. The elementary online option was in much more detail, and I shared some of that detail at our board workshop in July as well. I think what's important to understand about this model, there, I think there's a misconception that students would be online looking at a screen for five or six hours in a day. And if you can see, I know it's a little bit small, hopefully at home can sit a little bit closer, but on the, the right-hand side, that's that column on the right, we're looking at an opportunity for about two and a half to three hours as a sample schedule for students in grades one through five. About two and a half to three hours where the, the teacher is providing live synchronous instruction. And that live synchronous instruction does not mean that the student is staring at the screen and listening to the teacher lecture for two or three hours. What that might look like is starting the day with the teacher engaging students in a social-emotional connection, where kids are talking about their feelings, talking about their relationships with other kids, learning about how to be good friends, learning about good online expectations, and connecting with one another on a really personal level. And that might be 15 or 20 minutes of that live synchronous time, where kids are talking with one another online. It's a model we use in our SEAL summer program that teachers and parents both raved about, students as well. It might look like a, a reading lesson, where the teacher might provide 15 or 20 minutes with the whole group, and then ask students to, in their textbook that they would have at home with them, to spend 15 or 20 minutes independently reading their text, annotating it, highlighting it, and then being ready to come back, whole group, for a discussion with their, with their peers. It may look like in a math lesson, the teacher demonstrating for 10 or 15 minutes how to do the problem, and then allowing the students to work in their home, not looking at the screen, but in their workbook, to complete some of the problems, but with the teacher there to be able to answer questions if the student runs into any challenges. So the, the idea of the live synchronous instruction is that it's, there's a, a flow between direct teacher involvement, students collaborating with one another, students working independently in their, in their home setting, and then being ready to go back to their teacher in their whole class. So we, we experimented with that in some ways and found some amazing results in our summer program, and really that summer program was built off of some of the awesome teachers that practiced some of these skills in the spring. So from great teacher practice in the spring to replicating on a larger scale in our summer program, getting amazing feedback from our teachers, parents, and students, now being able to replicate that on a larger scale, we're very confident that both teachers can do this with the right support and training, and that our students can participate in this in a way that isn't requiring five or six hours of screen time in a day. What I'll just quickly say on the, the bottom half of that right-hand column, there are a couple of hours in a day where students can be working offline. There may be activities that, or, or tasks that this teacher assigns them. The students may access those through a, a learning management system, through an online platform, but it doesn't mean they have to complete all those activities online. It can be shutting off the computer and working independently on a project that they have at their house. Some of these activities can very easily be completed with a parent later in the day, but the expectation is the teacher is available throughout that time to either work in small groups, to provide support to the students as needed. We were talking early about our youngest learners, kindergarten, first, second grade, they may not be successful in a 30, a 30-student group for a reading program. So there's opportunities for guided reading, where a teacher may pull four or five kids two or three days a week during that time and provide that really individualized instruction. So it's a, it's a very seamless flow, we think, between whole-group opportunities, opportunities for students to collaborate with their peers, opportunities for students to work offline, for the teacher to be there, available to the students at all times if they run into any challenges. Very different than the, the overall expectations and plan in the spring, but we think very possible based on what we saw in the summer and the, the training and supports that we have planned for our teachers coming up later this month. I don't know if there's any questions specifically I can answer about that, otherwise I'll move into some of the most asked questions that we've received over the last several days.
I have a quick question about the online teaching. Will teachers from a specific school be teaching online, those students online? I didn't say that very well.
I don't know, I, I heard you, though.
Okay.
I think what you're asking is, we're hearing this from parents, is if I, if I choose to be a, a student who's going to be online, will I be with the teacher from the school that I normally attend?
That's the question.
So because we're starting all online, because we're starting all online, teachers, students will be assigned to a teacher from the school which they attend, either the school that they normally attend, their school of choice, wherever they normally attend, that will be where the, the teacher will be assigned to them from. So if I'm a, if I'm a student at Roosevelt, I will be assigned to, and I'm in third grade, I will be assigned to a third-grade teacher from Roosevelt to start the year. And that will be true for all of our students at the elementary level. The teacher that they are assigned will be the teacher from the school at which they attend.
Okay, and it'll be a cohort of students at that school, it won't be random students thrown together?
Correct, to start the, so I'm going to talk, and I'm going to go through some of the most asked questions that I think will answer some, some worries that parents have that I think are legitimate, but they also go to the reason, some of the reasons why we are asking parents to make a choice at this time.
Brian, before you go, too late, I have a big, sort of a big-picture question, and then if you want to go into the frequently asked questions, that's fine. So all of us have been receiving literally hundreds of questions from either parents, emails, you know, in my case, I'm getting texts right now during this meeting. And they, and, and from, from the vast majority of what I've received and what parents and teachers that have checked in with me, they fall sort of into three pockets. First pocket is around health and safety, which we've touched on, right, and, and what that looks like if there's face-to-face interaction. Hopefully, one of, some of your questions address how, how will we know and what will we tell parents if and when that moment comes where we then, you know, look at that face-to-face interaction, whether it's a hybrid model or the full-in-person model? That's not my question. The second pocket is around instruction, right, and you've sort of kind of covered that, and I know some things still need to be covered through our negotiations with our labor partners, but there is a third po, a pocket, which is around teachers being in the classroom. Again, I won't go into that because that'll be addressed through our negotiations with our labor partners. That second big pocket around instruction, the vast majority of the inquiries that I've gotten is the, the very specific pockets of instruction. What would this look like for dual immersion students? What would this look like for English learners? What would this look like for special education students? What would this look like, you know, those kinds of things? And as a part of that, what additional supports we can, should, and will provide to, in the full online model, parents for those supplemental activities, right? Because depending on, again, what that live synchronous time looks like, there still will be additional supplemental activities, whether they, again, they're occurring in person with staff, but ultimately, since we're all starting off online, I'm hoping that through, you know, elementary schools, MKA schools, and in our high schools, we can sort of highlight that and communicate out to parents. And my suggestion is to keep it to that sort of instruction, and then what additional supports for those kind of specific pockets, because inevitably, we're going to get those detailed questions around, what about DI, what about EL, what about special education? And I think that's part of what I'm sensing, and me as a parent, right, I have a third grader as well going into a third grade. I think it's with heightening concern, fear, frustration around, how do I make a choice? I'm being asked to make a choice right now if I don't have clarity around, you know, my particular student's needs, learning ability, et cetera. So I, I want to sort of keep it big picture, because I think that's the, the uncertainty that many of the folks that are contacted there are feeling, that they just don't feel like they have enough information to be able to make a choice.
So a couple of things, I mean, and I welcome any of my colleagues to jump in as well. A couple of things I hear. One, we are putting the finishing touches on a handbook that we will be sending home, a communication to parents that will be coming out in the coming days, if not this week, the next, that will have a lot more detail. One thing to keep in mind, and I know we always want more information, but one thing to keep in mind, many districts who may be ahead of the communication curve from where we are, are starting school next week, but we're not starting school until September 1st. So while it feels like other districts have, have solidified some of their plans, we are wanting to make sure that we get it right before we put out all of those details. So some of that will be coming out. We, we do have plans to do outreach to our families and, and to do some training for our families so that they are prepared to get there, especially their youngest learners online. You know, five and six-year-olds are probably not knowing exactly where to log in on the first day of school, so we know we need to provide outreach and training to our parents in that way. As you heard me reference a bit ago, we have some extensive training being offered to our teachers throughout this, the latter half of August, that will well prepare them to be able to lead this work in a different way than they might have been the spring. And so I know that didn't probably answer all of your questions, but some of what we're looking at, and you'll hear some of it here in the Q, the frequently asked questions, if you will, we know that we need to provide clarity around certain groups. Gate students, students in dual immersion programs, our English learners. In the model, the more, the more detailed model that we sent home this last week that I shared with the board in July, it did show the, for example, it showed integrated ELD throughout the content areas, so throughout these content areas, integrated ELD, and specific designated ELD time that would be provided to those students who need that designated ELD time. So yes, it's in there, and it's in our plans, and so sometimes it may not come out explicitly for each specific group, but that's where I think sometimes the individual questions are important, we need to hear those. And sometimes it's the, the principal that can be, that can be the best resource to answer that, because they know that child and they know their programs.
Well, are we at some point going to put up contact information for principals and for the level offices? Because I, I'm sure we're already in sort of a flood of, of questions for that.
Sure. I mean, all, all that is available on our website, so if you go, for example, to the long beach, LBSchools.net, E for elementary schools, our phone number is there, all of our office staff are there. You can go to any school and find the email address for principals along with the phone number for the school. Many of those school campuses are starting to open up for parents, for parent communication even this week. And so, yes, we could, we could probably get that up, and it also, that's all available through our district website.
And just to chime in on that communication piece, that was a lot of information for families on Friday. I know that, I acknowledge that. I acknowledge that it was hard, and we needed to be more clear, and we weren't, and we're going to be more clear, is what I'm hearing. So when we're talking about our emerging bilingual students, our special education students, as we're putting the finishing touches on that handbook, I assume there are very specific sections that will refer to that piece alone, and that parents won't necessarily have to wade through everything, but they can say, hey, I'm looking for special education, and they'll be able to find that there. And I think having a go-to place, if there's a PDF version on that online, I would hope that they can search that and find that information more quickly, but I'm glad to hear that something really comprehensive is going to be in our parents' hands, because we know it's a really scary time. And when you don't feel like you have enough information, I think this, some of this was really theoretical for a long time, and now that it's real and we're talking about sending kids back, it takes on new meaning, so I appreciate the effort to make sure our parents have more information.
Absolutely.
And just one question for Dr. Baker, and we talked about this, Dr. Baker. Also, the communication is, we're relying on heavy email communication to parents, so just again, being cognizant that many of our parents either don't have email accounts or don't check their emails, so I know that I, because I get them, we get them via text and phone call, that many parents right now haven't even received that initial information, right? So the questions are also coming from a place of their hearing from either other parents or other folks, but they don't actually have the, the information themselves. So I just kind of want to highlight that as well.
Right, I thought I heard you say that all schools will start online.
That is correct.
When it comes time for parents, kids to make choices, how do we handle that?
So that's a great question. I'm glad you brought that up. So one of the reasons why, and I know there was some frustration on Friday about why are we asking parents now to make a choice for what their child will do when they come back? So that's part of, I think, what you're, you're getting at as well. So let me just kind of succinctly explain why it's important at the elementary level, and you'll hear at the other levels where there's some importance as well. So if a stu, a group of 30, third-grade students come to school on September 1st, and we don't know whether some will, some of them will stay online all year, or some of them will come back as soon as we can come back, what will happen is we'll put those 30 kids together in a class, and come time for us to return, 15 of those students might have said they wanted to be online only, and 15 of those students might say they want to come to school in person. come to school in person. And what's going to happen is, they can't all be with that one teacher.
Right.
Because that one teacher has to either be online or in person. Whereas if we knew now, over the coming weeks, if we knew which families were committed to the full year of online, that we could put thirty students together in the third-grade class at Longfellow, in an all-online class, and they would stay with that teacher the entire year. If we knew these thirty third-grade students at Longfellow wanted an in-person option when it comes time to do so, we would put them together with one teacher, they would start online with that teacher, but then when it comes time to return to school in a safe manner, those entire thirty could come and be, you know, split into the two rooms and have the social distance that I shared in that first model.
Well done, thank you.
So outside of that, so if we don't find out from parents, and we know, by the way, we know that parents are going to need, some parents are going to need to wait to make their commitment. They think something now, and then the conditions in their home will change, the conditions in our society will change, and come, you know, November, December, they feel like they need to change their mind. And we recognize, we need to have a process in place to allow families to change their mind, knowing though, that if they change their mind, they may not be able to stay with the teacher they've had through the first part of the year, knowing that they may need to, we may need to shuffle classes when that time comes. So the more information we know now about parent choices, the more committed parents are to those choices, the more likely that we can keep a class intact with the teacher, students with the teacher, and we know that's important, especially at the elementary setting, where those relationships with the adults are so critical.
Brian, given that ParentView was down because of technical issues the last few days, have we sent out a communication yet about extending the, possibly extending the deadline for responses?
Yes. Yeah, so that went out this morning, or this afternoon, I'm sorry, to extend, at this point, it's extended through August 14th, and if, for whatever reason, there's other technical difficulties, we would extend it as well. But I also want to go back, Dr. Vannetta, as you talked about, our students that maybe parents don't have access to ParentView or to the online communication. One of the reasons we're bringing our staff back a little bit early is so that they can do that more personalized outreach. So we know who the families are that don't have a ParentView account, so we can do phone calls, and if we can't get through on the phone, we can send staff to their home and actually do home visits to make sure that they receive the information.
That's awesome.
So our principals right now are developing plans for the next two to three weeks, what will it look like to find every student in our system so that we can get them ready to go and ready to learn on that first day of school?
That is awesome, thank you, Brian.
Yeah, thank you so much for that clarification, I think that, I heard a big collective sigh of relief across the city as you said that.
In the email-
Say it again, Brian, say it again, so that people that are watching right now-
In the email that went out this afternoon, we do have a Q and A in there, and that, one of the questions is, why do I need to make the decision now? So what I just said is said in about two sentences instead of the fifteen that I said, but same information.
We like hearing you say it out loud, though.
So, Mr. Moskowitz?
Yes, sir.
I'm a parent, I don't have an email with the latest information.
You did not get it?
Nope.
Through your regular, whatever means you normally get your school messenger emails?
Yep, and I just checked my junk box, too.
Okay, we'll look into that.
Hopefully, I'm the only one.
You are the only one. The second bullet is referencing that, again, and I already spoke to this, I won't elaborate too much more, this idea that synchronous instruction does not mean students are online looking at the screen. None of our models at the elementary level have more than three hours of synchronous live instruction. There may be some smaller groups, individualized help that students would get, that's different than kind of a whole group, thirty kids synchronous, but even so, there are a good two hours a day where kids will be working offline, off-screen, not with the teacher, live, opportunities for parents to support that at other times in the day. We know that's important, and we've built that into our models. We also know, if you look at every, at every schedule that's gone home from the elementary level, at the top it says sample. We have forty-five elementary schools, fifty-four if you count arcade sites, they're not all the same, student needs are not all the same, teacher experience and abilities are not all the same. We recognize that there has to be some flexibility. But we have to have some common expectations across all of our sites that are rigorous, high standards for all students. Once we create that rigorous, high expectations for all teachers, all students, then our teachers and our principals can work together within a grade level of a school to make sure that we're meeting the needs of those students at that school. We might have more students who are English learners, so we need to do some more smaller group time, because we want to make sure we're providing that designated ELD. We might have more higher achieving students, so we want to make sure our gate programs are robust in meeting their needs. So while we have very high expectations for all students and teachers, we also absolutely recognize the flexibility, and our teachers will be working with, our principals will be working with our teachers in the coming weeks to talk about what that flexibility could look like. Two other questions, and we referenced them briefly, and then I'll hand it off to my middle school colleague. The idea of gate, all of our students who are gate identified and in a gate and Excel program will receive services to support them throughout the year, whether they're online, in person, starting online, shifting to in person, whatever happens with them, we are committed to making sure that they are receiving those supports that would be typical in any gate program. And so that's a commitment we made in conjunction with our curriculum team to make sure we provide that. And then the last one that we've heard a lot about is about our dual immersion students. Somehow, the idea got out there, the dual, or that online instruction will only be in English even if you're in a dual immersion program. That is not true. Students in a dual immersion program will continue to receive instruction in both Spanish and English in the way that's aligned with the models of their school. So if I'm at Henry Elementary, I'm going to start my kindergarten class with the ninety-ten model, ninety percent of the online instruction will be in Spanish. If I'm at Webster with a fifty-fifty model, I'll start out with fifty percent of my instruction in Spanish. So, just some of the ones that we heard from a lot of parents on, we know this list is not going to answer every parent's question, but again, I invite parents to call our office, email me, email principals, more so, because the principals really will be able to nuance the differences in their site, and will know the students better and the parents better to be able to answer some of those specific questions.
Brian, on the last DI clarification, I have a selfish interest here, because I've been checking in with you about Chavez.
Yes.
Given that that's a new DI program, is there any nuance there on either communication or how that model is going to be implemented, since it hasn't been implemented yet?
Yeah, so, really exciting about Chavez, we had really high interest, we have two full classes of students that are already enrolled for the dual immersion program at Chavez, we have staff have been hired, including a really stellar teacher who transferred over from another site, and has been a dual immersion teacher for many years, and will be coming with that knowledge and expertise, in conjunction with our curriculum office, Angelica Gonzalez, who is now in curriculum and support, partially in support of our dual immersion program. We have some trainings planned for all teachers of dual immersion programs this summer to make sure that that online program for all students is successful, but in particular for our DI programs, including Chavez. All right, I was up here longer than I think I was supposed to be, so thank you for your time. I'm going to wipe down this area, and then I'm going to hand it off to Dr. L. You have your own, perfect.
Thank you, Brian.
All right, good evening. So I'm going to build on what Mr. Moskowitz shared. From a middle school standpoint, I'll just start off by saying that the communication that was initiated last week was obviously reinforced this morning, or this afternoon, with some additional communication. And part of our efforts is really to bring back principals as well to reinforce that communication. So a lot of our principals were back this week, putting together videos, so I know that Jefferson sent out a video yesterday, Marshall sent out a video yesterday, Stanford sent out a video yesterday. So we've asked our principals to put together video messages that help explain our models to our parents. Many of those messages are going out in both English and Spanish in their videos. There's some added communication that our schools are doing in terms of outreach, so Mr. Moskowitz referenced our secretarial staffs, office staffs coming back to do some direct communication to parents to either verify the choices that they've made, to make sure there are no unanswered questions in relation to those choices, as well as reach out to those parents that who we have not heard from. So a good example is at the middle school level right now, we've heard from four thousand three hundred parents that have already made that selection, which is about twenty-five percent of our middle and K8 parents, that, like I said, have already made that selection around their preferred options for the upcoming school year. And we'll be using that data to then do that other outreach, to, one, reach out to those that we have not heard from. We are sending out some additional communication directly from our office tomorrow in the form of a text and voice message to parents in English and Spanish that will go out. So once again, we're just going to flood parents really over the next two weeks to really get as many parents as we can to really make that option choice. As Brian referenced, at the middle school level, it's particularly important that we know that choice, because forming a schedule, unlike at the elementary level where you're talking about one teacher, one classroom for the entire year, at the middle school level, you're talking about six or seven classrooms. So the complexity there of knowing the exact choice that parents want from the get-go allows us to really keep some consistency in our schedules throughout the year, knowing that there are going to be parents that request some other option at some point. And we will make our best efforts to address those when we can, and with the restraints that we have in place in doing so. So is there space in the other options that they have chosen? Do they recognize that when you make a change, you're probably going to have a different set of teachers? You're probably going to have a different order of the classes that you've normally had? All those things that come to play at the middle school level when you switch models. So if we've created your class schedule with a particular model in mind, it's really with that intent of really that consistency throughout the year, and recognizing that if you do make a change, it is going to cause some disruption, and that your child's going to have probably a different set of teachers, a different set of courses, in a different order because of that change in selection. So we have three models at the middle school level that we've been communicating. The first is the hybrid AB option with a virtual Monday, the second is an all-virtual at-home model, and then the third is an independent study model. All three of these options are taught by Long Beach teachers. The hybrid model is built upon an AB schedule, essentially taking half the students and putting them into that AB option, and I'll elaborate on that. The virtual option is one that's really a commitment from the beginning of the year to be in an all-virtual environment, that really replicates the traditional school setting with a full course schedule of six classes. And then the third option is an independent study option. And as I made reference to a couple weeks ago, the independent study option is really designed with students that have pretty strong self-management, self-directed learning skills. It's really designed as almost an alternative to a homeschool option, if you will, understanding that it works best if someone else is there to support that option. There is some interaction with teachers, and this is something that we have built out with our independent study option at the middle school level that I will elaborate upon. So, just some key points, the hybrid AB option, as I mentioned, is based on an AB grouping. So this is assuming that you have half the students that are interested in coming back in school at a particular time. Let's take, for example, a school like Franklin, about thirteen hundred students. So you would automatically take off any student that, whose parent has chosen an all-virtual or an independent study. As year-long options, roughly speaking, about two-thirds of our parents that have made their choice to date are choosing the hybrid option. About a quarter of them are choosing the all-virtual option, and about six percent are choosing the independent study option. So with that said, you could take that half that would be coming back in the AB model and really siphon off about a third of those students that would not be coming back because they've chosen an alternative model. So instead of six hundred and fifty students coming back at Franklin, you would have roughly five hundred students coming back at Franklin. Half of those students would be on A, half of those students would be on B. Of the, of the five hundred each day, I should say. So, on Mondays, it's a virtual day, all students are at home learning on that virtual Monday. On Tuesday, when the A students come, you have about five hundred students that are showing up on campus, a campus that normally has thirteen hundred students. Those five hundred students would rotate most likely throughout the day with some kind of staggered dismissal from their class periods. Sixth grade dismissing, seventh period, seventh grade dismissing, eighth grade dismissing. So essentially, you'll have a third of the five hundred students rotating throughout the campus at a time, about a hundred and eighty students or so. Those A students then, on their alternate day, on that Wednesday when they are not in school, they will have asynchronous lessons that they're receiving to supplement their education. So they will have a similar schedule that they're following on their at-home day with lessons supplemented in support of our curriculum and instruction department, who's helping to put together those lessons when that time comes. So obviously, we're looking at a later date when that would come to play. So essentially, the students would rotate through their regular school days, taking the six classes that would be put in place. Obviously, in the hybrid model, health and safety becomes a primary concern, because you're talking about bringing students back. So we'd be looking at that staggered dismissal from classrooms, we are looking at an extended period of passing periods, if you will. Normally, in an in-person schedule, you have about a four, five, six-minute passing period. Most of our schedules that have been built out have a ten-minute passing period to give students additional time to stagger that dismissal from classrooms, to give students time to come in, wipe down their desks, and address that, that health and hygiene concern that's in place. A virtual Monday also provides an additional day for deep cleaning without any students on campus, so you guarantee that there's an additional day throughout every week for some deep cleaning to occur. We've also asked all of our larger schools to have multiple lunch schedules. So in that Franklin example, Franklin has three lunches set up for this coming school year. So essentially, a hundred and eighty students eating lunch at a time on their school yard, socially distanced in that large space, grab-and-go setting, you take your lunch out to the, out to the yard. So not needing, not eating in the cafeteria, taking that lunch out to the yard to eat. So that's basically the broad understanding of the hybrid model, the in-person model. In the all-virtual model, you basically replicate your standard schedule with your six courses, seven in our select schools that have a seven-period day. We're looking at about a fifty-minute virtual period. That varies site-to-site, roughly forty to fifty minutes, depending on the schedules that have been created. This, similar to what Mr. Moskowitz shared at the elementary level, this does not mean that students are being lectured at for the entire fifty minutes. We know that even in an in-person setting, that can be challenging for students. So likewise, in a virtual setting, we are hoping and rolling out really some models of instruction that really promote engagement and interaction within that fifty-minute time. So imagine during this time, there will probably be some opportunities for some direct instruction or inquiry based on the work, some opportunities for engagement and interaction and collaboration and discussion and small group work, some opportunities for guided practice with feedback during that time. So imagine that that fifty minutes is spent online, but there are breaks for students to do work and collaborate and work in small group settings and work in small group discussion. So it's not necessarily fifty minutes of just listening, staring at the teacher online and doing so. So, the independent study option, by contrast, is a four-period schedule, essentially, it has four courses that are taught within the independent study, English, history, math, and science. At the seventh grade level, it does include a semester of science and a semester of health. Within all of these models, there is an accelerated option for students that would have been an accelerated course. So I know we've received a number of questions from parents around that. In each of these options, in the hybrid, the all-virtual, and the independent study, there is an accelerated coursework. So our math accelerated program is still built out within the independent study option, giving students a Math Six Accelerated, Math Seven Accelerated, and an Algebra Placement. Our current geometry course at the middle school level is actually an Apex course as well, so that is an additional option that will be provided for students that were scheduled to go into that geometry course. We are supplementing the instruction with some teacher interface. So instead of it just being an independent program that you work through as an asynchronous opportunity, we are scheduling course periods where teachers are touching bases with students, checking in on their work, reviewing the assignments that have been done, and ideally doing some mini lessons based on the formative assessment that they've done on the work that's been submitted. So you will still have some interactions with teachers within these models. Like I said, the independent study option is really designed to be a more independent model. So, students that really are used to working independently, that are pretty self-driven and self-motivated, will do well within that model of study. Some key questions that we've been getting from parents to address is, once again, why do we need to have the schedule from the very beginning? Why do I need to make that commitment? And that commitment, once again, is so we can build out a schedule that does maintain some level of consistency throughout the school year. When parents do opt to choose a different model, it's going to be predicated upon space being available within that model, it's going to be predicated upon a different set of teachers and a different set of, potentially different set of courses. So we will make a best effort to make that as smooth as possible for any parent that does change their mind later on, but it's also really that complexity of a master's schedule at the middle school level, and understanding that you're scheduling thirteen hundred students at Franklin across six different courses, and all that that entails with unique elective options, with different course requirements in terms of numbers of students across the different courses. with different course requirements in terms of numbers of students across the different courses. Our PE courses have up to 54 students. Our elective options have up to 39. Our English classes have up to 35. All that creates a layer of complexity across the middle school schedule in terms of balancing schedules and balancing courses across students. With that said, there are certain opportunities that this might actually provide. So within the all-virtual option, for example, you see the fourth bullet point there, that PE is included in that option, and so is an elective. Depending on how many students choose the all-virtual option will really dictate what electives we can offer. In a particular grade level, you might have four or five or six different electives. If you have 35 students that choose an all-virtual option in a grade level, that's essentially enough students for one elective. Those students might have been in six different electives in the regular model. So we have to decide what elective can we offer to those 35 students? What elective was the predominant one that they had chosen within the regular model as part of the regular coursework? And will that come to play? There is also the possibility that we can offer electives across school sites. So we may not be able to offer this elective with a teacher within your school, but we can offer an elective at a different school at that same period to provide you that additional option, if you will, within that school setting. We are also exploring elective options through Apex that we could provide. We are also exploring elective options that we could provide through Long Beach City College. Through our partnership with Long Beach City College, we've had middle school students take courses, and that might be something that we've explored as well. So we've been in communication with them on how we could, obviously, go through the approval process for students to take an elective option within that setting. So all that being said is that there's a lot of alternatives that we can explore when it comes to elective options within a school site.
Just a quick question on electives. That always brings to mind art and music, as some of the primary ones that I know are chosen. I'm assuming we'll have processes in place for students who need an instrument to be able to check out an instrument to take home. In terms of an art class, supplies are usually provided by the district so that they can do that. And I would hope that also there is a mechanism for students to come and potentially pick up a package for whatever that particular art project is.
Yes, we are exploring all those options. We're looking at all of our courses that has some implication for materials that might come to play. You mentioned two in particular. Robotics might be another one that has materials that students might need. So we're looking at what would be feasible within the course to basically send home individual materials that students could use and still align to the curriculum and the goals within that curriculum pacing. So what you've mentioned in terms of art is actually what we're exploring of individual packets that students would take home that are assigned to those art courses to be able to access the materials that they would need. We're exploring different options as it relates to music and those other courses as well.
Chris, what outstanding planning you folks have done. I'm thinking of a master's schedule. And if kids and parents sign up for a certain program and they want to change, it could be a real nightmare. So it seems there ought to be a lot of good advice upfront to select your program, but rest assured, you're probably going to have to live with that for a semester.
Yeah, so that's the other emails that we've been getting from parents or phone calls is, can I make this selection for a semester? And the answer is, of course, you can. Obviously, a year-long selection obviously guarantees a little bit more consistency. If we had to switch at the semester, we would likely have to disrupt your schedule again. Most of our courses at the middle school level are year-long courses. They're not semester-based courses. So that just creates, once again, an added layer of complexity with the scheduling of students across, within and across schools. So let me just take a step back briefly. The schedules that you see here are sample schedules. Our schools have actually outlined the specific schedules that they are following and are sending out those exact schedules to parents. So these were samples that were provided. The actual schedules are going out from their school sites with the exact times of each course and what that's going to look like. We've also asked our school sites to norm their schedules within the middle school K-8 level. So essentially, we have now five different schedules that are fairly consistent across schools. We have an eight o'clock start schedule for K-8 schools that are on that eight o'clock start. We have a nine o'clock start schedule. We have a six-period, two-lunch schedule for our smaller middle schools. We have a three-lunch, six-period schedule for our larger middle schools. And then we have a seven-period schedule for our three schools that have a waiver to offer seven periods. The advantage there is that we can then offer courses across schools if necessary. As you see in the bullet point here at the bottom, that all effort will be made to obviously place students, as Mr. Moskowitz said, within their school of attendance. But there may be opportunities that we can actually offer classes across schools as well to be able to offer a program of study. It's all going to be dependent upon how many students make a selection within a particular program. In an ideal world, they'd make those selections in groups of 35. So we can literally just create schedules that are nice and clean across our English, Math, History, Science sections. That's probably not going to happen. So all that's going to be predicated upon where our parents choose which options to be able to create those schedules and where we can create some consistency, if you will. So, please.
Dr. Lund, you know, part of me is trying to process all of this. This is a lot to unpack. And I'm just, again, thinking through our parents and students right now. I mean, this is, quite honestly, this is overwhelming, right? But much appreciated, much appreciated, because it's there. We can go back and review in the PowerPoints. But notwithstanding the huge impact that learning loss has had, will continue to have, right? Particularly for our most vulnerable students. You know, two-thirds of our district are poor families and students. I think the emphasis here that I'm hearing and that we're getting snippets of, but I want to say it, is a reassurance of the equitable approach that we're using here so that we don't have one thing, one variation going on at one school and at another, or even within the same school, two different classes, right? And, but let's take Franklin and Washington, right? That we don't have disparate sort of expectations, disparate approaches through the instruction. And I want to emphasize that because I know that our teachers are 100% committed, right? This isn't like the spring where we finished off. But I think, again, like my comments with our elementary school presentation, the details of this is, I think, the hardest part for parents and students to wrap their heads around. Notwithstanding the emphasis on high-quality instruction with these models, I think two elements that are important to highlight, that have impact on instruction but are as important by themselves, are the social-emotional support that is important to provide students, given the trauma, really, that many students are experiencing, have experienced. And that whether that's showing up with a virtual model, 100% online, or at some point face-to-face, I think it would be important for students and parents to sort of hear that instruction is super important, right? But it's connected to that, right? To the social-emotional well-being. And I want to connect that to the second layer of this, which is our parent engagement piece, right? We're going to need some kind of training for parents in Kamai, in Spanish, and English as well. But I think just processing this, again, was going to be a big challenge, not just in making a decision about virtual, in-person, and/or 100% online. But if it is 100% online, if that's going to be a choice, whether it's for a semester with an option or for the whole year, that what I'm hearing from a lot of parents, a lot of Kamai speakers, a lot of Spanish speakers, is how is a parent supposed to figure all that stuff out, right? And whether that's the supplemental activities or navigating the, I know we're going to hear about our learning management system. So I really want to emphasize and highlight that because I think that accompanies the concern, yes, obviously, around learning loss, but that social-emotional support and the parent engagement piece.
Yeah, all those pieces you talked about are part of our planning process to making sure that we're addressing when we roll out our programs in the fall. Our efforts is really to make sure that we are offering a robust, rigorous program, regardless of the one you choose, and that there is a personal connection with a teacher in every one of those settings. So even in the independent study option, making sure that we are still staying connected with our children to be able to offer that social-emotional support. Social-emotional learning is being built into all the curriculum models, all the curriculum guides that are being rolled out across departments and across subjects. So picture specific lessons that are designed to support social-emotional learning within each of the grades, each of the departments at the middle school level. Likewise, at the elementary and high school level. So really making sure that that is first and foremost in our minds, knowing the learning loss that our students have faced, but also just the challenges outside of school that they've also faced and that we're trying to build that relationship and that connection with our kids to be able to provide that support. The core model is the first way to address that learning loss. So creating a robust learning model is really first and foremost in our mind. And then looking at some additional intervention options that can be explored. So we're looking at a newcomer course that we can offer as part of a student's schedule across school sites. Often within a school, that's really difficult to do. The advantage here is we can actually create courses across school sites and offer a zero-period newcomer course for all of our newcomers across a particular level, which is an exciting opportunity that we hadn't explored previously. A second will be to what is the intervention that can occur within that 50-minute block? You have a toe set of school site who can actually join a particular class and take a breakout room of students within that particular class setting. Likewise, what are those, what is those after-school learning opportunities, those tutorial opportunities that can be provided later on once we get our school system up and running? So we're exploring all those options as supplemental intervention options, if you will, but making sure that the core program, first and foremost, is a robust learning program for all of our students. So some other key points that I haven't addressed. There's a key point there around the synchronous learning. I talked about that earlier. The accelerated options being available within all of our courses and all of our options. I know that was a consistent question that we had from parents. And then really just that question around our all-virtual, will they have PE? Yes, they will. And will they have an elective? Yes, they will. An option that parents may have within that all-virtual is, if the elective option is not the one that you want, perhaps you don't need to take an elective. That is some flexibility that we would have as well to offer a five-course schedule, which I know occurs at the high school level as well for parents that opt into that. So we're going at this with some flexibility to know that there's different ways that we can address the problem. Could be that you don't opt out of an elective if that's what you choose. It could be that we offer the music or art program and it's, you know, cross-school so that you're still having access to that music program that you had started or that you were interested in. So know that there's a lot of flexible ways of addressing those concerns. Any other questions about middle and K-8s? If not, I'll pass it over to Dr. Camarino.
Good evening, everyone. I've been known to be kind of a neat freak, so a lot of friends have been texting me, social media-wise and on everything else, to look at my critiquing and wiping down stuff here. So thank you all. Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for the time tonight. I know Dr. Lund and Mr. Moskowitz did a really great job of explaining the complexities of trying to really do right by our students and doing right by our staff. It's a really challenging thing to put things together that is going to make everyone and fit everyone's needs. And that's a real challenge. And I really appreciate the complexity of all the thought and all the time that it took with our advisory groups from our students, our parents, our teachers, our administrators that have been actively a part of this since March 13th. When we closed down, we started planning that same day, how are we going to bring our students back? I want to tell you, this is probably rendition 258, right? Probably just today. Of all the things that we've been doing since the day that we closed, from our parents giving us input, our students, and everyone else. So I want to thank everybody for all their hard work with this. Can't say it enough that we're coming up here representing just all the hard work that from, you know, district staff to office staff, to parents, teachers, school staffs, and more importantly, our teachers who always give us feedback. As we all know, in Long Beach, we're kind of a small town in the sense that somehow or another, we're all related, we're all connected. We all know somebody or someone we went to school with, someone that we know or interact with every single day. We're connected. So all of this is really part of how we are going to work towards bringing our community back once this is all said and done and over. We're going to hopefully all appreciate one another for the passion and conviction that we've shown on the many things that we've wanted for the sake of our kids, for the sake of our staff, for the sake of our teachers and administrators. So again, I want to just really say that as we roll out these different plans for our community. Last thing is, with all the complexities that Dr. Lund and Mr. Moskowitz brought into the fold, you can just imagine for our high school students, the challenge of being able to, for our teachers, to be able to deliver a robust high school experience when these courses count. These courses count to the future what's going to happen for our students to compete with the rest of our students across the nation. And our parents and our students really feel that and they know that. So with all that said and done, it's really complicated when you think about AP classes and that promised classes, intervention courses, and everything else that our students kind of build up their resume with transcripts where these grades and all this work that they're going to do is really going to count. So with that in mind, you know that the equity piece is really big, too. We've worked so hard to make sure that our schools are always equitable. And with that is the foundation of our link learning and our pathway work that we've done and making our pathways a real big piece of the school within a school model of that our pathways are driven by being equitable, having quarterly meetings where we share data, what are some of the critical points that we have to address. In high school, we have to go through a WASP process, an accreditation process, where we have to prove that we've been moving our school forward in a way that we're meeting the needs of all of our students. So with that is a general statement to really share that the high school models are really contingent upon and really fixed on our pathways. Many of our teachers, many of our parents, many of our students have been asking in this choice process, how does this work? How does that work? Well, it's all going to work within the school within a school model. It's going to be about your pathways. So just keep that in mind as we go through this, that everything's going to stay integral to making sure that our students stay within their pathways at all times. So as we look into our, looking at the different ways, sorry, we're too far forward. As we look into our models that we have here, we have our two models to consider for high school. We have Model 1, which is virtual learning model, an online option that may or may not include independent study options. And then Model 2 is our hybrid learning model, which will be a sublet of virtual and face-to-face learning. So before we start, let me go into the virtual learning model that we have. This virtual learning model, again, is pathway-specific and designed to align with the pathway course of study. The course of study, as you all know in our pathways, really tell you the recommended courses and courses that students take from ninth through 12th grade. Apex courses, which we know in the high school world, are online classes that are designated for independent study and have a limited selection of options. And so I've been getting, we've been getting a lot of feedback from our teachers, from our staff, from our parents, that Apex classes are limited, and they are. The Apex course will be offered as original credit. In this Apex course, again, we did not want to have these models, obviously, if we didn't have a pandemic. To offer an online, independent, virtual learning model for high school, it's got to be Apex for the sake of being able to stay in your pathway. So the challenge is definitely here in the sense that for our parents to understand and our students to understand and our teachers understand this piece and our administrators, the virtual learning model with Apex is not going to be able to offer all of our classes that we have for our pathways, especially when you think of Project Lead the Way and our electives. Everything else that, you know, Apex is contingent upon mainly our core classes and PE and some small elective courses like art, but not really the robust electives that we offer at many of our schools that are amazing and dynamic and, you know. So those, unfortunately, with going with this model, will not be offered. So you'll get the core classes that you will need for sure through Apex, but you will stay within your pathway to ensure that, hopefully, sometime sooner at the semester, we're able to bring our students all back safely and you continue on to your path, your work and your pathway work. So just wanted to make sure people kind of were clear with the fact that when we go online, the Apex courses that are available are the courses our students will sign up for by pathway.
Dr. Camarino, just want to clarify that, just to make sure I heard you correctly. So if a student goes 100% online, they may not, and stay 100% online, they may not be able to complete their pathway, is what I'm hearing.
Correct. We're actually still working with our teachers in the negotiation pieces that, you know, if all goes the way planned or we are able to work with that. Some teachers have shown, have already demonstrated and have contacted us to say that they would like to be able to still be able to have that virtual component to their electives. So we have that in the works already. But yet, if we had to do this tomorrow, as we always said with our work with Dr. Brown, if we had to do this tomorrow, then unfortunately, right now, we wouldn't have those elective courses without the groundwork that has to happen with cooperation and collaboration with our teachers to be able to offer those virtual learnings with electives because they'd be different. But again, I think the part that really is hitting home, and I can't repeat it enough, the pathway work, the pathway teachers, the pathway cohort of administrators, counselors, and teachers and families together are really going to make that unique experience by pathway at each of our schools unique. And teachers will take that ownership of making sure that our students stay within that pathway. And they've expressed that very clearly to us in the few days, the last few days.
So in the Apex model in middle school, there is an option for a touch point with a teacher at some point. And I don't see that here. So you're, I'm just trying to understand. So you talked about the pathway team that will be supporting a student, doing a virtual model through Apex. Is there built-in time for touch points on a regular basis that a family Is there built-in time for touch points on a regular basis that a family could count on or could say there were?
Definitely.
Office hours, for lack of a better term?
Yes.
That if they needed their student to check in once or twice a week to check in with these classes? Is that something that's available and is it someone in their pathway who would know what they're going?
Definitely. In the absence of being too detailed in my presentation today, yes, in those Apex courses, there is a contact with, between student and teacher, definitely. Opportunities for synchronous teaching, connections with students, and obviously the office hours connections is there. We have Apex all over our campuses, all throughout, you know, our high schools. So those Apex courses will work in the same, same way. But again, leaving total latitude and independence for flexibility and differentiation amongst our pathways. Because some of our pathways that have a GPA requirement would have different approaches to our pathways that don't have GPA requirements and a lot more supports that our students will need. So that would be really getting into the, into the different pathways and the work that we have to establish with our, with our programs. So really leaving it up to our teachers and the pathways themselves with their administrators and counselors to differentiate the support they'll need by pathway.
Okay. That's great. And I don't want to get too much into the weeds.
Yes.
But I know that we do have an Apex program that is more of a remediation-based program.
Correct.
And I just wanted, a credit recovery-based program, and this is not that.
It is not. It's for credit, it's original credit that we're going to get there. And so, and it's, it's rigorous. And then the other part that I want to make sure people understand is that Apex is not just something that they do online, do it on your own. It's, it's, you know, it's a rigorous, standards-based course that is very challenging for our students and there is a lot of support that needs to be done. Again, differentiating by different pathways that our teachers have to ensure happens. And we've had Apex classes from our, you know, comprehensive high schools to our alternative ed high schools too. So there's a lot of differentiation that can happen from our, you know, like I said, regular traditional high schools to our alternative education high schools also.
So if a Quest or CIC or JMAC student chose an Apex model, their touch points would be with the staff within those pathways at their school?
And keeping our students with their same teachers as much as possible, yes.
Thank you.
So we want to make sure that if I'm a JMAC teacher, as the example you gave, I want to make sure that my students that are going to choose the virtual model or the face-to-face model and the, and the online model are still my, my JMAC kids. I never lose my JMAC students to anybody else.
Thank you for the clarification.
Okay. Thank you. In the hybrid model, as Dr. Lund spoke about, we're going to mix groups into As and Bs. And let me be really clear on the, how we divided the As and Bs. Our administrators and our counselors did a really great job. I want to say, starting in June, the first week of June, maybe the last week of May, in dividing our students into groups A and B, and let me make sure I'm clear, A and B students meant that we broke our students up evenly by different student groups. So they present, represent all of our student demographic in these A and B models. So the A and B just basically meant we cut the students in half and made sure that we have an equal number of represented students in both the A and B models. So it wasn't alphabetical, it wasn't, you know, any other criteria except for we just divided the school evenly, As and Bs. So just to share that piece that we did for, and the middle school, middle school team did the same thing. So the students are split into two groups by pathway. Again, group A students will attend face-to-face for odd and even days or even blocks, and while group B students will attend virtually for two consecutive days in a row, then they would switch. So basically, what would happen is we would have students who would go odd day on Monday, even day on Tuesday, that's the A student, and then the B student would be learning virtually. Then come Wednesday and Thursday, the B students would be in person and the A students would be learning virtually in this model. So that's basically the crux of how we're going to break those down. And our schools like McBride, Milliken, Pauli, and Wilson, they're the model that have alternating A and B, odd-even days when they go. So they're going to be basically two days on, two days off, two days on, two days off campus in that model. Our other schools like Cabrillo, Jordan, Lakewood, and Renaissance, they would alternate their As and Bs being in person because they have Monday, all-period, all-classes on Mondays, whereas Browning, CAMHS, and Sato meet all-classes on Fridays. So they would alternate when As and Bs would be in-person and who would be there virtually. And just a couple of clarifying points at the end here that I wanted to address that already have been said by elementary and middle school teams is that our high school schedules are making, our high schools are making schedules that maintain the pathway course of study for the entire year. So at any time in any of these two models, our students can come back tomorrow, they can come back, you know, there's no need to change anything. Everything's done by pathway and they stay together. So if we had to open up our schools and say, hey, we found a vaccine where students can come back on December 7th, I don't know if that's a weekday or not, they can actually come back the very next day and wouldn't miss a stride, wouldn't miss any classwork. Nothing would be lost as far as assignments, no, no need for teachers to have to change anything. Everything would just stay in sync in the way it is. So it's good to be, just hopefully, again, best-case scenario is obviously is that everything comes back into regular pre-COVID mode for our students.
You hit it right where you need it to. It's a Monday, Dr. Camarino, so December 7th is a Monday.
Yeah, have that in mind. There we go. Again, the synchronous instruction does not mean students are staring at a screen for hours. We've had some models done. I want to thank some of our high school teachers who have reached out to me who have done the same thing, as we mentioned already. We have 88-minute blocks and some of our high school teachers have shared with me their model of how they just stayed online for our students to be able to have access to our suit, to our teachers and, and students with themselves. As you know, we need our students to be socially engaged with one another. They missed the in-person and virtual socialization for the, for the SEL sake, for their SEL sake. So a couple of our teachers share their model with me, appreciate that. They posted some of that even online of how they were just on for the whole 88-minute block or the whole block time. So students were able to say at the 81st minute, hey, you know, Dr. Benitez, I have a question on and you were there to access the teacher. So it wasn't a disconnect piece, it was a connection with students. And we also have a model that we've shared about what they can do during that learning, learning time of 88 minutes. We've shared that model also with our, with our principals. Synchronous instruction includes those options, all those pieces that Dr. Lund had shared. And again, at the end, both options will allow for students to participate in extracurricular activities. That's another question that we're getting. We don't want to penalize our students for having to choose a model and they can't participate in their extracurricular activity, whether it's performing arts or sports. I know for us, it just makes sense to say, well, if you're going to go all online, that means you don't want to be around students, but they still want to hold on to their sports. There's no need to penalize anybody to not be able to participate in their extracurricular activity because the parents want to be there, have their students be online the whole time. So again, to clarify to all of our coaches who are out there tuning in or athletic directors, to reassure them, because it's been going out there, that if they choose the online model, they cannot play a sport, they can. So we don't want to penalize any student for any choice that we have a lot of flexibility that our students can still do what they need to do because again, it's a pandemic that we're going through.
Thank you for that clarification because I know, again, the other Apex is non-NCAA compliant, as it's been said. So the clarification that Apex at the high school level, a student would be able to participate in a sport. Thank you.
Oh, Dr. Camarino, you're leaving already? You're not going to give us a couple, couple times for questions?
I'm, you know, body language wise, I'm ready for questions, but I'm also in my state of wiping down, ready for Dr. Kale to take over next.
Just two questions. Thank you. Again, a lot to unpack here, but first question is, what are we doing for our long-term English learners and our recent arrivals? Again, that at this point become sort of the most vulnerable here with either of these models. And then related to that, what I've been hearing from high school students is just the difficulties in self-motivation. Right? So I'm just picturing like Juan Benitez waking up in the morning, logging in and being like, okay, in the next 88 minutes, what am I going to do? All right, if all I got to do is check in, I go back to bed, check in, say I'm still here and working on something. So sort of what are, what are, what is the thinking, Dr. Camarino, with a high school student right now that's been technically off for months to all of a sudden be excited and motivated about potentially a year where they're still going to be virtually?
I appreciate the question. I think the one thing that we've talked about already and we're setting up with our administrators and teams is that we have what we call expectation assemblies every time students' school starts. We're going to have expectation assemblies virtually for our students to understand that whether you're coming to school virtually or you're going to be at school in person, you are going to be prepared to come in and have these norms that you are going to be, you know, in a place where it's not your bed, you're not waking, it's not a check-in piece, it's you get yourself, your cameras on, you're at school, whether it's at home, wherever you can find a place that is the most, you know, I guess you could say, professional to be able to show, make sure that there aren't things that are inappropriate behind you, that you're up and you're ready to go, you're dressed appropriately, ready to go to school. So all those things, as we've called the expectation assemblies, will be laid out for all of our students to ensure that this is still school, even though it's virtual. And the key piece that you've brought up is, we, our students need routines. We don't want our students on the days that they're not in person to just be able to check in from bed and turn off the computer and go back to sleep. They need routines to be able to make sure that they're going to bed at a certain time. They're not sleeping in on the days that they're not quote-unquote "in-person." Those routines are really essential and important for our students to be engaged, to ensure, and more importantly, that, you know, I've just said kind of briefly, these are their grades that are going to count. They're competing with the rest of the nation that in some aspects are going to be back at school and have to compete with having to take AP tests or being able to move on to the next level of their ELL courses or, you know, English support courses. All these things are determining factor for them to be successful. And so all hands on deck, all those expectations are still going to be there. And I'm excited because our teachers have been very excited by the number of emails and phone calls and texts that I've been receiving to really start and ready to go, to get our students going, to support them in every way possible.
And then the long-term English learners and recent arrivals, Dr. Camarino?
Tracking that data, obviously too, that's part of our quarterly meetings that we have all the time. We're going to have to modify how we do our quarterly meetings because at the end, again, in the high school level, at the end of each quarter, we present data, we talk about. So right now, it's going to be the SEL piece, as we all know, it's the trauma-informed, we've just come back from, you know, COVID or we're in this pandemic. We've also had some, you know, some civil issues that we have had, not just here, but globally. And so we want to address those pieces too. So I don't want to be insensitive to saying we're going to look at data, data, data. We've got to make sure our students are feeling good and are in a really good state of mind. So our quarterly meeting is going to look a lot differently this first quarter of how we're going to look at it, but definitely addressing the fact that we can't leave behind, that we need to move our students forward and addressing their needs and ensuring that they're, you know, advancing as far, especially on their trajectory of being English proficient.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions?
Yeah, a couple of quick questions. Because you touched on it. Can you talk about how AP classes and electives work within those models?
Yeah, again, the Apex courses are going to be limited, right? So we're going to have to ask our teachers within each pathway how we're going to address some of those if you're going to go online. But as far as AP courses, as you know, during the pandemic, the College Board is still gearing up and we were in close communication and partnership with the College Board. They're going to have some online support videos and courses for the students too, to get the support in those AP classes to ensure that they're going to be able to move forward on those, and prepare them for the AP test.
Okay. And I know we've talked about dual enrollment. So we know some of our students in the higher achieving pathways, PACE, Quest, some of those kids coming into their senior year might only need a class or two in terms of credits to graduate. And we've talked about dual enrollment as an option at the middle school level. We haven't talked about it much at the high school level, but encouraging potentially those students who won't be, if they choose a virtual option, they don't get those more creative, isn't the right word, differentiated courses, Japanese, AP Calc, AP History. Do we have a plan or something set in place to talk to parents about doing almost a max dual enrollment type of system? Like they only need to take English and math with us and can they fill the rest of their schedule with dual enrollment? And how might something like that work or look like?
So our schools have been, our counselors have been working and administrators on the dual enrollment aspect. Our classes, if my daughter took a dual enrollment class this summer, they were full fast, quickly. Our students knew about it, they jumped on the opportunity to do that. Our fall classes are almost full as of two months ago. Our basic classes that our students usually take for AP courses for dual enrollment at City College are almost full then too. So that information has gone out. So again, I didn't share all that, but by pathway, definitely, the communication has gone out for dual enrollment of our students, for our students. Again, just making sure we're also being sensitive to the fact that if they're taking a dual enrollment class, they won't need that AP course. So that balance of making sure that our AP teachers feel that we're not trying not to support them, but the realities of helping our students be able to dual enroll at this time now, which since most of our dual enrollment classes for City College are online, to take advantage of that, right? We wanted them to take advantage of it. But still, again, by pathway, supporting those AP courses and those AP teachers with students who are going to be in those classes too.
Thank you.
Two more, real quick. Our ethnic studies Saturday program, how are we moving forward with that?
Yeah, Robert Tagorda has, you know, is the person who's connected us with those courses there. I'm, I know that there's been dialogue and ensuring that we have those courses on our campus. So to be, to be continued, I guess, to give you the update as to which courses and which campuses are going to have those classes on Saturdays.
And then this is a broad question, I think, for everyone and maybe some of what Christie will present will address this. I know that there will be professional development and training planned for the summer. Obviously, this is a lot with a lot of moving parts. Will there be ongoing training or professional development as, as we move forward for our teachers and staff?
Definitely.
And I assume we'll prioritize Sato and CAMHS as they have earlier start dates than our other high schools to get that training?
Yeah, they've made it known that, you know, we have two really hard-working staffs there that they have not let us, not let us forget that they need this information sooner than later, for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Dr. Kale, I think this is, I took the varnish off all this wood. So you're, thank you.
I'm going to stand too, Dr. Williams. Go ahead, Dr. Kale.
Okay.
Stretch around a little bit.
Sure. So my Level Office colleagues touched on some of the things I'm going to talk about and I want to make sure that Dr. Simon has enough time to talk about our special education services that we'll be providing. So I'm going to move kind of quickly, but I am going to share some slides that, let me get us on the right one, that were given to me by my colleague, Mr. Chris Brown, who couldn't be here tonight. So a couple of things, it's been mentioned already, but we have this new, newly deployed application. You've heard a little bit about it. So it's the instructional program of choice, we've been talking about it, and this is an application where parents go online and they make their selection. I want to just give a shout out to Mark Powers for putting this together in a short amount of time, getting it out to our families. So some things that, that we know, the families are being asked to indicate their preference, preference for an instructional model, and they have until August 14th to make that selection. On the screen in front of you, for those of you who don't have kids in the system, this is what a user would see. So our families would go in and there's a description there for them of the various models. And then there's also links to more detailed information. So information that was just shared by our colleagues. So it's all in the system so parents don't have to go any other place to find it, it's right there for them. One, another thing that I think is important for us to be thinking about is that we're going to be working both centrally and through our sites to reach out to families who are unable to complete the survey for whatever reason. So that means we're going to be doing things like mailing out via US mail and making those phone calls because we know not every parent, it really is going to be using the computer. And then after multiple attempts, or if a parent just decides they're not ready to answer, the system will default to in-person instruction when students finally do return. So we've been experiencing some, some minor glitches as we often do when we roll out new technology, but we're working on it. And so my understanding is as of later this evening, we're, we're up and running, but we, we just continue to work our way through it. So with that said, I'm going to switch gears on you a little bit and take you into the learning management system work.
Can I ask a quick question before we move on?
You can, sure.
So for families who have potentially already made a selection, do they have the option to change that selection before the 14th?
Thank you for asking that question. They do, they can change it as many times as they like.
So if they hear this and change their mind and then change their mind?
Absolutely, they can just log right back in and make a change.
Thank you.
You just created a nightmare for all the Level Offices because they're going to use it in their application.
It's okay, we can see the data live, so we can see, we can see the data as parents are making selections. So we have some idea of what they're telling us so far.
Sorry, everyone, no head starts until the 14th.
All right. So in thinking about the learning management system, I want to just say that Curriculum Office has been working closely with the Research Office to do the research on this. And I want to give a shout out to Kevin Shilato from Research and Amy Pendray from OCIPD for really putting in a lot of work. This is something that we know students and parents and teachers really expressed a need for. And while it's going to be a heavy lift, we know it's going to be good for us, not only for online instruction, but also a system that can be used during in-person instruction as well. So just to, you know how much I love data, but these are the results from, we brought together a group of teachers. So 37 teachers were brought together from grades K through 12, and they were asked to evaluate, they were selected by TALB or their principals to come and be a part of this group, and they asked, they were asked to evaluate two different learning management systems. And so you can see the results there. So on the left side, you see the orange bar, that represents the number of teachers who scored the learning management system A5. And then on the right-hand side, it's the average score. So you can see that one of the two vendors came out ahead. And so what we found is that Canvas emerged as a frontrunner. And so Canvas is going to be our recommended learning management system, which you'll hear, you'll see again in the business items when we come by that a little bit later. So we do get some questions about why not just stick with Google? Everybody was comfortable with it, they got used to it. And I think we know that there's a lot of limitations with Google. It helped us, it was great, it got us through what we needed to get done. However, we know we've got to do a lot better than that. So when we, when we look at what Google offers, on the left-hand side of your screen, you see a Google dashboard. So when a student logs into Google, that's what they see. On the right-hand side, you see what Canvas has to offer. So while Google just can connect you to your particular classrooms, Canvas can connect you to all of your tools in one place. So everything that the students need will be all in one place. So any third-party applications, any communications, dashboards, information about their grades, all in one place. All right, on this next slide, on the left-hand side, what you see is Google Classroom is organized by topics. So it's really text-heavy, which is challenging for younger students. Younger students have a hard time navigating that. On the right-hand side, you see Canvas for primary grades. And what you're seeing here is it's organized with images and it's customizable by the teacher. So two very distinctly different looks, especially for younger learners. Now, one thing I want to point out too is that parents had no view of Google. So they couldn't get into classrooms, they'd have to log in as a student. That's not the case at all with Canvas. The parents will see pretty much what the students see. Now, obviously, they can't access the assignments like they could when they logged in as their student in Google, but they have a view of everything. And not only do they have a view of everything, but there are very particular resources that can be placed there by the teacher for the parent and pushed out centrally by the school site. So all kinds of messages and other things can be there for parents. So it really works as a good communication tool. All right, this slide shows you the Google Classroom stream again on the left, and on the right-hand side, you see an upper elementary example. So this one's been organized by content. Again, it's customizable by the teacher. So students don't have to wade through that stream, but it's instead kind of organized. So the look and feel is totally different. What I would like to point out is that the teachers are given templates. So teachers can look through various templates, they don't have to design this from scratch. They can take templates that are there and then alter those templates. So there's, while it may look daunting, and it's really user easy, user-friendly for our teachers. All right. And in this last one, these are both some shots from Canvas. On the left-hand side, this is what it looks like at the secondary level. So it starts to look a little bit more mature. We know a lot of our local universities are using Canvas as well, so this is kind of getting the feel of, for older students. So it's organized, it can be organized by unit, chapter, et cetera. The teacher has complete flexibility on how they want to do that. Something that's also really exciting is Canvas allows us to create a course and then push it out. So one teacher can create an entire course, and that course can be shared with other teachers. So one of the things we know is teachers are doing great things, and to be able to share that across the system is really exciting. On the right-hand side, you see an example, if a teacher wanted to, let's say this is a dual immersion class, they could organize it by the week and customize it that way. So it's super flexible in all the various ways that it allows for it to be organized. So some other things to consider is issues like accessibility and access. So it includes a lot of these kinds of features. So what you see up on the screen there is what we call the immersive reader. And when, when a student or a parent hovers over text, it will read the screen aloud to them, and it can also change the language. So it can automatically translate for the student or the parent right there, which we think is going to be very helpful for some of our parents. And then again, lots of other accessibility options. So you see there the ability to change the text size, increase spacing, translation, including a picture dictionary. Or on the far right, it talks about themes of color. So for example, maybe a student needs visual supports, and changing the screen color helps them visually. So those are all, those are all there for the students and built in. And then finally, in this area of accessibility, there's what's called the accessibility checker. And this is a really neat tool. So when a teacher puts up a page, the system has the ability to check it, and it gives the teacher feedback about what the teacher could do a little differently to make it more accessible to students. So that's something that's really helpful, lets them know if their document needs attention. Now, something that we know you must have in an online environment are apps. So Canvas does have a student, a parent, and a teacher app that perform different functions for them. So they're available on Apple or on Android, and most of the features of the learning management system are accessible by cellphone and through these apps. So starting with our students, I have a couple of high schoolers at home, so I know they're on their phones constantly. So they can do things like check their grades. It creates to-do lists for them, which for organizational ability for kids is really helpful. It allows them to have communication with classmates, so they can do group communications if maybe they're put on a group project. It allows them to easily communicate with their group. And then things like looking at assignment details. So there's a myriad of things that students can do on their app. On the parent app, what's really great is that parents can have all of their students in one place. So I know a frustration for parents who had kids in different places, navigating different classrooms, navigating different websites, navigating all these different places, now they will only have to go to one spot. So they'll be able to check on all of their students from different schools in one place. They can monitor due dates for assignments, they can look at grades and progress, they can communicate directly with the teachers through the app, and they can set up their own alerts in the system. So really helpful app for parents.
Dr. Kael?
Yes.
Let me make sure that I heard this.
Yes.
So I can go to Lexia, to ST Math, to ReadWords, to Typing.org, to Dropbox, to the camera, all in one place?
That is the idea, yes. So we're working on all the various third-party apps that have to be integrated, and that is the hard, behind-the-scenes work that is, that has to get done.
So I think that was the second biggest pot of frustration and questions that I got from parents.
Yes.
Just having to navigate all over the place to access stuff, so.
Yeah, and I'm going fast, there's so much more that we could be showing you. We just wanted to give you kind of a flavor of everything, but.
That's a big one. Thank you, Dr. Kael. That's a big one.
Sure. So teachers, they are going to be able to manage all their classes, and they can actually give feedback to students on assignments right there on their phone in the app. They can look to see who's turned in assignments, who hasn't. They can remind individual students or whole groups of students about assignments. They can just give feedback on assignments and progress. So there's just a great deal that teachers are going to be able to do with this. So the continuing work, so I hope, hopefully, the little, the little bit that we gave you, gave you this idea that the learning management system really does provide a framework for a coherent ed tech program. So it gives you, as Dr. Benitez says, an easy way to leverage new technology to support students because you can integrate it right into the system. So some of the continuing work that still needs to be done. So the Research Office and TISBY are partnering on the technical aspects of the implementation. We need to integrate it with synergy and make sure that it integrates well with applications. In OCIPD, we are looking at selecting key tools. So while we know that our teachers accessed probably hundreds of different third-party applications during online learning, and that was great, it was about experimentation. We learned a lot about which applications were really useful, which ones not so much, and duplication of efforts. So what OCIPD is trying to do right now is get, is get recommendations from teachers, from the curriculum staff, around which applications do we want to make sure get integrated right away and are there for teachers, so that we can then start to provide training and support around those applications. So that's, going back to the comment about ongoing training, training around those individual third-party applications would be examples of some ongoing training that we could be providing for our teachers in this area. We are planning teacher training, which I'll touch on in just a minute, and we are sending a frequently asked questions, an FAQ out tonight. So that is going to be going out to all of our teachers tonight to just let them know, these are the things, you know, we do hear the questions, and we can't always answer them all as fast as we'd like. So we're going to get this FAQ out tonight. And then tomorrow, they're all going to get information for how they can log in and start to play around in the system. And I'll give you some more information on that as well. We're asking all of our schools to identify a staff member who's going to serve as a site LMS lead. And this is a person we're going to give additional training to, so that there's at least one other person on campus who feels like they have a little bit of knowledge. Remember, this is new to all of us, so we don't really have a quote expert, although the system itself provides 24/7 resources for teachers should they need it. And then I do want to mention that our Office of Equity and Access is planning parent training and support, and so that is going to be coming along. So all these things are happening simultaneously. All right. So I'm going to switch gears on you just a tad and take you into the training, and then I'll be done. So we know that the LMS is going to provide a more integrated user experience, and we think it's going to help create a lot more consistency across our classrooms. So in addition to the tools I described, we've been working to develop teacher training and support, and it goes beyond the LMS. So the timeline that you see here in front of you, and I apologize, it's a little bit small, really, those paragraphs you see or those lists represent the four weeks that we have between now and the opening of school, right? So we've got four weeks to get everybody ready. And just to put this in context, we are providing five days of training for our teachers, every single teacher in the district. And this is my 31st year, I'm not sure we've ever done anything quite on this magnitude. So just understand that we're getting it organized and the training done as quickly as we can, but not everything is under our control. So some things that we're working on is right now, this week, we are sending out information around self-paced courses that teachers will be able to take. So any teachers, and that includes CAMs and Sato, who unfortunately, August 24th through 28th is when we're planning all the training for, is too late for them. But there's going to be self-guided, self-paced training that they can engage in, and then our staff will provide additional support for them, even though they're not going to be able to be at that August 24th through 28th training. We're training up central office staff, including the curriculum staff, making sure that they really understand what's happening. Then we're going to work and train our administrators, make sure they have some idea of what's going on. And then we get into the week of August 17th, and that's where we train the trainers. So we are asking for a representative from each school, and many of them will become trainers to help deliver the training to our own teachers. We know it's important for the trainers to kind of speak the Long Beach language, and so that's why we're kind of opting with this model. Okay. All right, I am almost finished. So we've mapped out the content of the training. As I mentioned, it's not just, it's not five days of the learning management system. So there are other things that we're going to be addressing in our training. So that training has been mapped out, and I'd like to give a little acknowledgement to a couple of folks. So I'd like to acknowledge Pamela Seki, who has been tirelessly working at home to keep the machine of OCIPD moving ahead while the rest of us are pivoting to try to make all of these plans for getting ready to open school. So thank you to Pamela. And I'd like to acknowledge Angie Gonzalez, Nadar Twal, and Carrie Wiley, who are all leaders in the department. And they have been working as liaisons with the Level Offices to make sure that the training that's provided at elementary and at middle and at high school is in alignment with the models that you heard my colleagues talk about earlier. So I do want to say one other thing, and I'm going to read this because it's a list, and I will never remember it off the top of my head. But we've got mostly teachers who, instead of enjoying time off, they have been working really hard this summer to create quality training. And that is in the areas of English Language Arts, math, history, science, PE, CTE, world language, visual performing arts, library services, special education, DI, AVID, linked learning, GATE, and virtual learning. So again, many, many people, lots of moving parts, and I just want to, I can't express my appreciation for how hard people have been working this summer. So I want to round it out with letting you know what the common themes are for training. So we, first and foremost, we're working on building relationships and community in virtual learning environments. So we know we've got kindergartners, sixth graders and ninth graders, first time in school or first time in middle school or high school. And so we've got to start with building those relationships in that community, things like norms, procedures, routines. We're going to be working with students around their wellbeing. So we're calling that kind of Unit Zero. So getting started with things like sense of belonging, valuing diversity, respectful communication in an online community, those kinds of things. Next, we'll be sharing strategies for engaging students. We have a lot of great examples of this, and it's so much more than just zooming with your kids. There's so many strategies that will be shared with teachers. Addressing those essential learning standards, and then identifying resources for special programs, which was touched on a little bit earlier. And then finally, meeting the needs of special populations. And when, when I come back and when we all come back in a couple of weeks, we'll have more to share with you around how we're going to be supporting English learners, our gifted and talented students, and where we're going with our work in social and emotional learning support. But I'm going to turn things over now to my colleague, Dr. Erin Simon. She is going to be talking a little bit about how we are currently working to support our special education students, unless you have questions for me.
Super quick, Dr. Kael, because I know that we're trying to move fast. Will this also be the tool that we'll utilize for attendance?
That's an excellent question. Not at first, but our hopes would be down, down the road. So attendance would be taken and continue to take in synergy, but it does have the capability later on for us to do that, but we can't start out the gate like that this year.
Okay. And then just two quick for me. So for, we've had teachers who have been using this over the summer and probably have staff feel really confident. Do they have access fairly immediately to be able to start to tinker around with what they want to do? Or do they have to wait?
So we're, we're sending the link out tomorrow, and it's to what's called the sandbox, which gives each teacher the ability to go in and play around. What's great about the system is whatever you create in the sandbox, then when you have your account, actually transfers over. So, and it fully integrates with Google. So everything teachers have set up in Google, they can just slide right over into Canvas. It might be a little bit more challenging for those trying to do it on their own without the live training.
Right.
But there's, Canvas has been around for a while, and they have a lot of great training resources, so.
And I saw that there were portals for teachers, students, and parents. Is there a counseling component potentially in the future, or how will we?
I could see our counselors using the system. I don't know that there's a separate counseling component. Do any of my colleagues know differently? Not that I'm aware of, but it's something we can certainly look into.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Jay, I have a quick question for you. A parent texted me and wanted to know if a student would lose their place if they're in the PACE program if they do 100% online?
No, sir, they would not. Again, everything's going to be done by, by Pathway. But I just wanted to make sure that, I do love wiping things down, it's one of my things that I like to do, but also before Dr. Simon comes up and we queue up her slide deck, is getting information, Dr. Benitez, to answer your, to answer your question about Ethnic Studies. We are meeting with Cal State Long Beach this week, and information will go out to our parents and students next week about the offerings at Ethnic Studies. And the classes that we've offered at our high schools will basically stay the same, but they will be virtual. So information to our parents and students next week.
Wow, thank you, Jay. Are you delivering dinner for all of us tonight?
No, and I'm just cleaning, and Dr. Simon, I'm here to be your intro hype person. Ladies and gentlemen, Dr. Simon.
I think we all need a hype person right now. So thank you, Dr. Camarino. So to Madam President, Board Members, I'm the last one to present today. Thank you guys for bearing with us, but we believe there's a lot of information, right, that you were seeking, and also that our student, staff, and our parents, and our community in general, right, were seeking as well. So we truly hope that this answered a lot of their questions, a lot of your questions, but also knowing that there are going to be more questions asked by the people I just mentioned. So the purpose of this presentation is to inform you, staff, parents, guardians, and the community in general of the supports and structures that will be used, that are currently being considered, and that will be further discussed alongside curriculum leaders and teachers for students with disabilities during distance learning. So our instructional priorities, I know social, emotional learning has been talked about throughout the day. We've had conversations about this just all through the year, especially amid school closure, during our ESY, our Senate School Year, during our SCL program, there are a lot of things that are embedded into that. But specifically, for our students with disabilities, there's going to be instructional priorities for pre-K through transition. When I mention transition, that refers to our Adult Community Transition Program, we call it ACT, which educates our students with disabilities, 18 years of age, up to 22 years of age. And that program is housed at Tucker, and also several, several satellite offices within our buildings, within our districts, and our school sites, Cal State, Long Beach. Cal State Long Beach, LBCC. Teacher responsiveness to student need by flexibly embedding breaks throughout instructional time to allow for social-emotional learning and relationship-building-centered resources. Mindfulness and movement, which includes breathing techniques and stretching with movement. This will be embedded into the instructional day as well. I mean, we've done some movement here today just based on the length of the meeting and some breathing techniques and things of that nature. So we know that if we need that, right, our students are going to need that as well.
Take us home, Dr. Simon.
And then our digital tools to support students with using accessibility resources, such as text-to-speech and voice typing, and specialized programs that allow for creating visuals and also supports and symbols. So just moving into some level-specific instructional models. I know Mr. Moscovitz outlined some work around CDC and Head Start and some schedules that are being used at this time. And so with Buffums, let me explain Buffum. Buffum is our special education preschool. So with CDC and Head Start running, Buffum has not been running since school closure, right, since March 13. So there are conversations about, right, how do we engage and bring those students back, whether it's going to be virtually? And if it is a virtual model, and I want to remind staff and our labor partners that this is just a sample schedule that we're working off of. We're going to have deeper conversations with our Buffum teachers in regards to that schedule. We know that they know students quite well, if not very well, and we want to utilize and tap into their expertise when building an instructional schedule, bell schedule for our students. So these next two slides that I'm going to show, they're going to show a sample schedule, virtual and hybrid. And this first slide includes synchronous and asynchronous learning with an AM and PM schedule. And that's going to allow for some flexibility for our teachers, and it's based on really the current model that they have. Even when they had in-person learning, they had two schedules in order to fit transportation needs. To our next slide, that goes into instructional models as well, that goes to the hybrid, and you know, hybrid includes online and in-person. And again, this is just a sample, depending on where we land as far as our instruction. So this slide takes into consideration our school bus constraints. So with COVID-19, school buses can only hold a limited amount of students. A school bus that, you know, held 12 to 15 students, now with COVID, with transportation, will only be able to hold four students. So knowing that, and also knowing that there are limited amount of buses that can transport students, we have to be flexible in how we design our bell schedule for hybrid. The schedule also takes into consideration the limited amount of students that are allowed per preschool class at Buffum as recommended by our public health officials. The current number right now is no more than eight students per class. But also know that a final schedule will be created with our teachers that aligns with our early education partners, and also devised based on the transportation needs as well. Going into just more instructional models, I want to talk about our functional special-day class students and monitored severe classes, also in our success classes, which educates our students with autism who may have significant behavioral problems as well, and also our specialized health classes. So we've heard some things about just some instructional models taking place for our students who fall within this category. We want to make sure that the schedules are very flexible. So within somewhat of this sample schedule, as you can see, although there's instructional time, that instructional time may be 15 minutes on. It also includes some movement breaks, some times for students to do some asynchronous work. And then it also includes some time for small group instruction, office hours for our staff members, student instructional support, and also IEP support for our students and families as well. Let me just mention during extended school year this past summer, students were engaged through live synchronous instruction for an hour and a half effectively, and pre-K in elementary around an hour to hour and a half hours. That said, this sample model is a reasonable goal, I believe, for us to work towards. But then again, our special ed department is currently working with its current leaders, our curriculum leaders and teachers to devise an alternative schedule that would be conducive for such students during distance learning. So next to some instructional models regarding our Adult Community Transition Program. So with our Adult Community Transition Program, remember, these are students who are 18, 22 years of age. This schedule is a Monday through Thursday schedule from 8:00 to 11:30, which includes synchronous and asynchronous learning. So with this schedule, each week, the teacher will meet individually with each student on their caseload, and also offer up times to meet with and engage parents and guardians. Dr. Benitez, I know that was a point that she mentioned today. How are we fully engaging our parents and guardians? So within our models as well, there's a lot of engagement that is taking place. And then there's something that we call Transition Elective Fridays within the ACT program, which will offer a menu of engaging, fun activities. And from this, students would select two classes from the menu of options, which may include Intro to Art, Cooking, Laundry, Intro to Grocery Shopping. So just so you know, with our ACT students, their job was to go out, be out in the community, work. And the goal for that was to be as independent as possible. So to learn how to cook, to learn how to grocery shop, and to learn how to do retail and fold clothes and things of that nature at our local stores in the community. And so with COVID and not being able to do that, we have to find other ways to get them that community-based instruction so that they are still able to live as independently as possible.
Dr. Simon, can I ask you?
Yes, you can.
Let me get to the mic, sorry. So that last piece that you touched on, the communication and parent engagement piece. So out of all the parents and families that have reached out to me, and many of them have emailed us as well, our families and parents with students with disabilities, I think the biggest sentiment, and all of us probably have heard this, is the communication piece, right? That they have expressed a feeling of isolation, of abandonment, of, you know, helplessness, right? So that's, I'm going to get emotional here. That's the group of students and parents that I quite frankly carry that, and I'm sure all of us do that, it's a pit in my stomach, right, of all of our students. When I speak of most vulnerable, we have more than 10,000 students on IEPs in our district.
Yes, sir.
And I'm wondering, those can be our biggest allies, too, at this point. What are we doing, what are our plans in terms of not just providing support for parents, but for our teachers on that communication piece, right? Because there's not just lost learning there, there is a sense of disenfranchisement. And so I'm hoping, again, not that we're covering everything tonight, but that's our all-means-all mantra right there. And when we talk about instruction, when we talk about equity, there's another piece here. Board Member Kerr is working on this. We need funding, right? We need additional funding from our federal government for our most vulnerable students, and I think the public needs to hear that, right? That we can do as much as we can on our end, but unless we get additional funding, those $200 billion, Board Member Kerr, you know, there's opportunities to, again, cooperate with our community partners, with community groups, with outside. Board Member Meyer and I today, you were in that meeting, went through sort of, okay, what are we doing for our special students with disabilities, right? What's that costing us? How can we do more? But I think the piece, again, to me, that I can't, you know, I can't walk away tonight with the feeling of communication is important, but communication with support, right? And so I guess my ask of folks here tonight is, what do we need right now to be able to provide that essential support, not just to teachers, not just to parents, but to rebuild and reimagine that bridge, since so many parents that have students with disabilities at home, I think are feeling hopeless right now with that. And it's not a question for you, Dr. Simon, but as you're showing me this, I'm thinking about the families in my part of town that, you know, quite frankly, they have expressed a sense of hopelessness to me. Not just to you, Dr. Simon, thank you.
And I'll just piggyback on that, because that went to one of the points I was talking about. And I think this builds on the work that we've done with groups like the CAC, that right now, we are in emergency mode of getting the system right, and we're pushing out a lot of information. And I really look forward to in the next, once we're past this really critical moment, to inviting our parents in to be partners in this work. Because we know we won't be able to do this on our own, and right now, our responsibility is to get this piece of it right. But as we get past this, looking as to bring families in to support, not just because they need us to support them, but because we need them and their support in this work. And so, again, that's just, again, we're talking to the room, but I look forward to being past this really emergency situation and to get into a rhythm to really robustly ask parents to partner with us to make all of this work.
Well, you both said something very poignant about just the parental engagement and the support and work around that. And you're right, I think right now gives us a great opportunity just to reimagine education, even as far as our engagement pieces with our most vulnerable students. So there are going to be some things that we're definitely going to embed and have embedded within our system. For example, we're going to have informational sessions with their parents in their home languages. I'm going to talk about that a little bit later. There are going to be check-ins built in with our schedules and supports and conversations. I mean, our parents may get to the point where they're tired of hearing from us and tired of receiving communication and tired of the check-ins just because we are building that, and it is on our mind in regards to the support that we know that our parents are going to need, especially with all the changes that are happening with LMS and things of that nature. So just know that, Dr. Benitez and Mrs. Kerr, this is something that we're definitely taking into consideration and building up, so much that it it keeps me up at night, just figuring out how we can do that and do that in a safe way. I'm big on going out and doing home visits. I know that, you know, the CDC and if Dr. Davis is watching right now from the Long Beach Health Department, she's probably saying, Erin, slow down, whoa, whoa. Let's have a conversation about that, but still.
Let's figure that out, Dr. Davis, if you're watching and listening tonight.
But that's something that, right, some staff would enjoy doing, and that's a part of that engagement piece as well, as far as building relationships and building trust with our families, especially the parents of our most vulnerable. I mean, I can't say that enough. Building those relationships is essential for us to really do the work and do the work well. So I hear you both on that point. So thank you very much for asking that question, and also for just, right, being vulnerable and stating what those needs are. So thank you so much. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for what you said. It matters a lot. This is a portion of our parent community who actually feels a lot of isolation all the time, and just more during a global pandemic. So I think that that's really important to highlight right now, and also to really lift up our special education teachers and our related service professionals who extend themselves as family to these families and truly extend themselves as family. In many cases, our educators of this particular group of students that we're talking about know the children better than many family members. And so I just can't, it's late, but I can't miss an opportunity to say thank you for your recognition of this group, and also to say that we need to continue to support our teachers in the ways that we have to encourage their outreach. In some cases, our teachers called families to the point that families said, could you please not call us so much? We've got a lot going on. And so our teachers of this group are our greatest allies in terms of knowing what is needed and how we can best support them.
So moving into our level-specific instructional resources, and if we start with K through 12, such resources will include our functional academics curriculum for students with significant needs, again, our SEC, our MS, our success, our specialized healthcare students, that is standards-aligned and includes differentiated digital curriculum, support communication, and access to meaningful learning. And then the increased interventions, right? We know that to mitigate learning loss or just to build off of, right, some learning that maybe did not happen for the majority of our students who are in special ed, there are going to be increased interventions and also embedded curriculum enhancements to support that learning loss. And then looking at the instructional resources for ACT, and that's going to include the same thing as far as the specialized, or the functional academics curriculum that prioritizes high-quality indicators. And then the program-developed job training, which will be embedded into the instructional model for community-based instruction, which we believe is essential because it teaches students to function as independently as possible in as many community environments as possible to enhance their quality of life. And that's the true beauty of the program. And again, with COVID, that has changed some things, but again, with being innovative and creative, we're going to try to embed those as much as possible into our online curriculum to bring that to life. There's also going to be support for learning loss and new literacy and math intervention support courses that are scheduled at the secondary level with our core content support, something that we're super excited about for our high schools to have that embedded into their instructional models. And then just more support models when we're thinking about implementing a variety of flexible instructional support models just in response to students' needs. And this is what some of that could include, and that is co-teaching in core classes, collaboration and consultation between core teachers and specialists, which we think is very important. Checking in with core teachers and aligning supports and instruction, supported small group instruction that we know worked very well, especially in ESY. And then various co-teaching models to all for increased small group instruction. And then also looking at, in that instructional model, scheduled check-ins with families and students, like Dr. Brown mentioned. We checked in so much with many of our families that they began to say, thank you for thinking of me, but maybe call me next month, or in the next two months, we're good right now. And then also flexible support options for virtual office hours, and then individualized support. I think that needs to be needed. Many of our students are going to need more individualized support. For IEP services, we've had many families who have asked this question as well, especially in regard to related services with maybe assistive technology, our speech and language, what that would look like. And right now, just based on COVID, we can't do some of those things in a physical and in-person setting. So that will be done virtually until it's safe for students to return to school. And then there was some discussion or some calls from our parents around, if I choose online, if I choose hybrid, then what would that service look like? So we felt that it was a need for us to discuss what that would look like. So for those who chose the online option, those services would be provided online. For the hybrid option, then the services could be provided in person or online. And then for staff, our staff will avoid pulling students during synchronous learning time to the extent possible. That's also a conversation. We don't like to pull our students to receive services while they're getting instruction, because we know that instruction is so near and dear and something that they need. So as far as our special ed and related services, as identified in the IEP during distance learning, maybe provided via distance-based learning approaches to meet the IEP goals. Then again, our assessments are going to be conducted virtually to the extent possible in a distance learning. There was a hold on that among school closure, but we are willing and eager to get that out beginning September 1st to begin to meet the needs of our parents. And our online assessments are And our online assessments are being even explored more carefully just because of validity. We want to make sure that we're not over-identifying students into special ed. So that is a problem or a challenge with having just virtual assessments. And then in-person assessments with PPE, I want to make that known, with proper PPE, the appropriate PPE, will commence when allowable by C D E and our public health officials. So our IEPs will include a distance learning plan to address how services will be delivered during school closure, and this is person in Bill 98. The accommodations modifications are being followed to the extent possible in a distance learning. And we want to make sure that IEPs, right, so our IEPs may be modified just to ensure that education can continue without undue risk to the student. That's important as well. And then other information that I know parents have been asking and even emailing, right, some of our board members as well, and this information is not related to IEP services, but I believe it's vital that we discuss it. So face coverings. We know that there are some students who may not be able to tolerate a mask, right? They can't mask. So we know that our students with intellectual and developmental disabilities, those who also have mental health conditions or other sensory sensitivities, may have challenges to that. So face shield may suffice. But parents are always going to be asked to consult with their healthcare provider, right, to discuss what would be the best option because we always want to keep not just the student safe, but also staff safe as well when they're able to return back to the classroom. Our students who are deaf or hard of hearing may wear a clear mask, specifically if they rely on lip reading to communicate, right, so they can't wear the mask that we're wearing today. And also those who provide services for them will be provided with a clear mask as well just to ensure that they're able to communicate and work with them. And as I alluded to momentarily, the informational session for parents of students with disabilities will be scheduled. We're looking at the week of August 24th, but we're trying to aim sooner to that. And that's not to be at odds or compete with some of the other, right, sessions that are happening for our parents and our students, but we want to get that out as quickly as possible just because we know there are so many questions that our parents have around that as well. And again, these sessions will be in the parent's home language. I think it's fair to say as well that with special ed, I know Dr. Rachel Heenan, our Director of Special Education, who is also our Selpa Director, is working with Selpas, constantly in contact with C D E to get more information and more guidance around similar things that we're doing. We know for many school districts, it has been difficult. And so in a way, we have been very creative and innovative in regards to our approaches because we don't like to say no to parents, right? We have this motto in the Office of School Support Services that we try to work our way out of BS. So we try to provide our families, which as much as possible, just because we know that they need a little bit more. So when you talk about equity, right, who needs more in this situation? We know that our vulnerable groups are going to need a lot more in regards to their instructional support, in regards to those check-ins, and also in regards to S E L, right, that's embedded throughout the day. And although all of our students are going to get that, we have to be more flexible and more intentional about how we provide that specifically for our students with disabilities.
And as I've said, Dr. Simon, thank you, equity requires resources.
Yes.
So I know that you all can't say it, but I can. Schools and communities first, $12 billion for us to be innovative and creative, right? There is funding, there are resources that we need to advocate for to be able to be responsive, Dr. Simon. So I appreciate that, but at the same time, I know that there's huge need and that as responsive as we can and want to be, that we need resources and partnerships and to be able to leverage that so that we can strengthen the alliance, Dr. Brown, that we have with, between our teachers and our parents and families and students. Thank you.
I just had a quick question. I know we have an amazing adaptive technology team. And so as we're looking at the equity piece in this virtual world, are we looking at how we disperse or lend out adaptive technology? Are we looking at touchscreens for those students who require that to do their work? I assume that we are, but if you could just speak to that for a moment.
I would say quickly, I mean, all the things that you just stated are things that, right, we discuss, you know, working with, you know, our business office, of course, to see, you know, how we can order some things or just where things are available for us. I know that with a lot of technology, just right now, to just to be frank and clear, there's a huge backlog on that. So if you think of iPads and iPhones or MacBook Pros, they're backlog five months to six months. So we're looking at other technology that would be suitable for many of our students, especially our pre-K students at Buffalo, even for a Chromebook, right? A Chromebook may not necessarily fit their needs, right, just based on other needs that they may have. But absolutely, we're looking into every option regarding that.
And we need funds to do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
That's it, all right.
Before we move on, should we take a little break?
No, let's go forward.
No, just go. Okay, we'll just keep going. If you need to stand up and stretch, stand up and stretch.
The night is young, Madam President, the night is young.
All right, okay. Dr. Baker.
So I'm actually going to hold my staff report for the next meeting. It's not time-sensitive. I was going to talk about the organizational chart, and so we're going to move to business items.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, business items, personnel.
Yes, Madam Chair, I have the personnel report prepared by our Assistant Superintendent of HR, Mr. David Day, approved by our Superintendent, Dr. Jill Baker. I will do the classified report first and then the certificated. There were 14 appointments, three leaves of absence, three resignations, five retirements. On the certificated portion, there were 35 appointments, 74 in-service changes, two leaves of absence, one resignation, four retirements, and one amendment, and move approval.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes 5-0. Instruction?
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, I know we've had a ton of discussion, but I do want to give a huge shout-out to the Molina Foundation. We are, we have en route to us 24 pallets of books.
75,000 books, remember?
Right, yeah. So half are on their way from Tennessee, the other half are coming soon, but these, this is a huge grant from the Molina Foundation. The books will be distributed to our Title I schools. They will be for students for their at-home libraries. So as always, we want to thank the Molina Foundation for reaching out to us and giving us this opportunity for our students. And there's a lot going on. Also in the instruction report, oh, here it is, right here, we're approving, so the work of the district goes on. Dr. Cale talked about how Pamela Seki is still doing some of that work, and we have a ton of courses that have been written. But there is one specific that is a revised mathematics course. It's an Algebra A, B, and C, D course for students in our special ed classes, and it's a two-year algebra course that's been updated to not only meet the standards, but it was updated to meet the U C requirement. So now it is a part of the A through G opportunity for our students, for our students with disabilities. So thanks to staff for doing that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Passes 5-0. Finance report A.
I move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes 5-0.
I voted aye, sorry. I forgot to say aye, but I voted aye.
Okay, I took it for granted. Finance report B.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair, I recuse myself from participation in Finance Report B on the consent calendar. I have a potential financial interest under Government Code 1091 and 87100. My husband works for a subcontractor who's done work for the payees.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes four with one recusal. Purchasing and Contracts Report A.
Move approval.
Second.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair, I recuse myself from participation in Purchasing and Contract Report B on the consent calendar. I have a potential financial interest under Government Code 1091 and 87100. My husband works for a subcontractor who has done work for the awardees.
All in favor? Aye.
No discussion?
Oh, is there further discussion?
No.
I didn't think so. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes four with one recusal. Okay, superintendent items.
Thank you. President Craighead and members of the Board, I have the pleasure of making recommendations for the following assignments this evening. At the high school level, Jenny Salazar, who's a current teacher on special assignment, to Assistant Principal at Lakewood High School. Non-level assignments. Raquel Welch Kitchen from Assistant Principal Lakewood to Assistant Director in our Leadership Development and Equity Leadership Office. Sharita Clemmons, Administrative Assistant in the Elementary Office to Administrative Assistant Elementary Office 50% and Equity Access Office 50%. Donari Aga, Administrative Assistant in Equity Access Office to Administrative Assistant in the Elementary Office. And Carmen Hernandez, Administrative Assistant in the Office of Curriculum Instruction Professional Development to Administrative Assistant in the Equity Access Office, on the dates listed.
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes 5-0. Unfinished business we have, and then new business, school naming policy.
Thank you.
Oh, it's an action item also.
It's information.
Is it information first and then potential action?
Sure. I'd provide some context for you. Great. So at the July 20th board meeting, Board Member Kerr made a request that the School Advisory Committee be reconvening to look at school names in response to community discussion. And so the recommendation tonight is that staff reconvene in the fall of 2020 to review the names that have been nominated for schools and to engage in the established process for making recommendations to the Board of Education. And I can provide some additional context as you do discussion if you'd like.
Okay. Madam of approval?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, Madam President, so I fully support reconvening the committee, and I support us looking at renaming some of our schools. And I just want to share a few thoughts because names and symbols are important for us. And if we're going to make considerations into renaming schools, I want to encourage as many people in our community to participate in that process and to take ownership over what we're going to name schools. Because after all, our schools are our community, schools. But I also want to express that, you know, when communities feel vested in these processes, the renaming of schools is something important and symbolic, but in and of itself, it doesn't dismantle racism, it doesn't eliminate structural inequalities. I support it fully, but with the understanding that if we really want to tackle homophobia and sexism and racism, that renaming of a school is insufficient, right? As powerfully symbolic as it is. And so that systemic change and structural change comes with engagement and comes with acknowledging that we have schools named after folks that were racist, it's simple as that. Were sexist, it's as simple as that. But just by simply removing a name, it doesn't dismantle the reasons that we have schools named after folks because in their day, in their time, we were not using the same lens with them. So I encourage as many folks to participate, engage with this committee if we decide to reconvene it today, but with the understanding that we acknowledge as a system that this is a step, one way to dismantle racism, to eliminate structural inequities, but that much more is needed, right? So the listening part is important, the acknowledging part is important, the convening part is important, but the concrete actionable steps that we take institutionally are necessary in that. So I fully support this, but want to make sure, especially for our communities that are very active in renaming and already have thoughts in mind, that this is more than just about, and not to trivialize it, renaming the school.
Right. And thank you, Dr. Baker, for placing it on the agenda. I also want to make sure that we're looking, when we did this in 2015, the world was a different place in 2020 for a lot of reasons. And so as we're looking at reconvening this committee, I don't know what the mechanism would be, but to look at this list and decide if this is an adequate enough representation and what would those additional steps of engagement be? Because we know part of the reason this specific group of folks was convened was to come up with a policy. Their first task was to come up with a policy that follows, which was a really important step for us to formalize and be able to point to why we do what we do and how we're going to do it. So as we look at what this process will look like, I would like us to be open to additional steps in that with new technologies that are afforded to us to ensure that we are including groups that have relevance in 2020 that may not have been as prominent in 2015 and 2016, but that we open the process up to more than just folks who got together in one room to really allow for that community engagement piece, whether they're town halls, virtual town halls, but including in this reconvening that we look at a series of steps that would really bring in the community buy-in to have some hard conversations and to begin the work of dismantling in the way that Dr. Benitez was referring. So again, fully support it and understanding that I see this, I was on the board when this was passed, but I see this differently. I see it through a different lens today that requires much more intentional and intensive work about the why, not just the idea that we take care of something, we take it off, it's less of a reminder of the reason. So I would hope that as we reconvene this, we really examine the opportunities for engagement and a really robust community process.
I really appreciate that, Board Member Kerr, because the process in and of itself can be one that we use, that we model as a space, right? Not just as a process for renaming, but look, quite frankly, communities have been marginalized, communities that have been oppressed should partake in decision-makings that are impacting those communities, all right? So I love that the way you articulated that the process can actually be a vehicle for formal spaces where marginalized, oppressed communities can be engaged.
Which I think fits into.
Let me see if I can get a word in here. Jesus Christ. As we look at this process of naming any of our institutions, our schools, I think it should be tied into our bigger equity policy as we look at equity and how that, the school, the school naming fits into the overall structure of the equity policy that we will develop. I think that will be an important part of looking at this strategically as a process.
I have a clarification, if I may. Looking at recommendations of names, it's recommended that the Board accept the roster of school name nominations presented in the order of committee preference. So are they saying we need to go down the list if we rename schools and stick with this list?
No. Good question, John. So there are two exhibits to the item tonight. So tonight's conversation is only around the recommendation to reconvene an advisory committee. What's attached behind are two important documents. The first is Exhibit A, that's the actual policy with a couple of things I'd like to highlight. This, what's reflected behind Exhibit A are the names. The first is Exhibit A, that's the actual policy with a couple of things I'd like to highlight. This, what's reflected behind Exhibit A are the names that were put to the board in that order on January 19, 2016. So they're existing names. Two of those names were used in the renaming process over the last several years, and eight still remain that were the committee's original recommendations in that order. So tonight, it's not about, we're not recommending names, we're just bringing forward the policy. And just as a reminder, that there are several aspects of the policy that's very important for the public to know.
Sure.
Since 2016, we've had a number of names that have been recommended. We keep an active file. Whenever, when anybody writes to the superintendent and wants to make a name recommendation, there's an active file in the superintendent's office. And then you'll notice that any decisions about school names, the policy that's in place states that any school renaming agenda item will be discussed as information before any action is taken. That was very important to the committee at the time. I had the pleasure of leading that committee because they wanted there to be the version of 2016, enough public opportunities to engage and to listen before some decision was made. And then you'll see that there was a stated two-year term for advisory committee meetings. And last, I just want to point out, on page two of the policy, the Board of Education has the final responsibility for naming schools. And so tonight is not a decision about naming schools. Tonight is about bringing the advisory committee back. Exhibit B describes from 2016, the names that were recommended to the Board of Education at that time, eight of which still remain as active recommendations.
Thank you.
Also, I would like to include other cities. We don't just serve the city of Long Beach, but we serve the city of Lakewood, Avalon, and Signal Hill. And even though we only have one school in Signal Hill, one school in Avalon, we have eight schools in the city of Lakewood. So I would like us to include the city of Lakewood because chances are they will have a school or two on their list to be renamed.
Yes. And to the points that have been raised by so many of you, as much as we'd like to be working on this right now, as a component of an equity agenda in our district acknowledging what names mean, this cannot be a priority in front of our student needs. And so the language is specific about fall 2020 and not during the month of September because our team, as you've heard tonight, you heard about the depth of what people have been working on for months in a really, as fast as they could tell it tonight. And so this is a priority as connected to an equity agenda, but it can't be before we make sure that our children are well in the schools and that our teachers and principals have things going for the year. So I just want to say that.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, passes five zero. Equity policy.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity. I'm honored to have the chance this year to lead this work. And so just some seed planting for what's to come, for further conversation at the August board workshop and the idea of bringing a proposal of a tiered process around equity engagement that includes, to your comments, Dr. Benitez's number of youth, community members, and folks who have lived experience, either equitable experiences or experiences that we wish would have been more equitable, to really include the voice of the lived experience, to also honor the district committees that we already have in place and the experiences of the parents and other constituents that are a part of that group. And then with the greater idea being of developing an equity leadership team. And of course, these will be proposals for your discussion and recommendation, but the focus that I think we are all wanting is to ensure that we have equity in our equity work. And that our goal is to offer more voice to those who have either been quiet or have not been asked than to purely lift up the voices that we hear a lot from. And so that's like a sneak preview or infomercial of more to come around this conversation. One of the things that Dr. Baker has asked is that there be an update of this work at each board meeting similar to the way that the superintendent's search took place. So this is a core issue, this is a core value, and this is something that is not a one-time or four- or five-time opportunity for discussion. It's something that needs to be regularly updated as the work moves forward.
Dr. Brown, I've been asked how somebody can join.
I think we need to determine that process together, and that's really what this item is about, is this will be about your recommendation for an equity leadership team. The piece that I'm adding in that I think has been echoed this evening is that we also want to ensure that our community, our constituents, are informing the work that is ultimately considered and led by that leadership team. So to me, that means talking to students who haven't had the best experience, not just talking to students that are a part of our ASB, students who have not fared well in our system so that we can gather more input, parents who have had similar experiences, so that the work around our leadership team comes from an informed place of those who have lived the experiences that we need to learn more from and be prepared to do better with.
So pleased to hear that approach, Dr. Brown. I had an opportunity to have a conversation with Dr. Baker last week about two community forums that in concert with eight other organizations, I was able to help develop. I know many of our executive staff were participants in, we're listening sessions, as you described. And one of the things I committed to Dr. Baker to do is share the, all the comments raw over so that they could be used, considered. We had everything from great ideas to questions to concerns that were raised. We had close to 1,000 people participate in two listening forums at the last one. We had about 250 people, and we anchored it around lifting up, first and foremost, black voices, but through this racial equity lens. So I'm happy to share that, all of those comments raw, you know, just. And anything that we can do, again, to uplift those voices that historically, traditionally have not been heard or that we could do a better job of hearing. I'm very happy with that approach, Dr. Brown.
I just want to also thank you for your patience with this process, all five of you. It is compelling enough that we could have done something really quickly in response to everything that's going on, but the patience that you've brought to this allows us to be really thoughtful, to engage the right people, as Dr. Brown's talking about, and to take our time with something that matters for the long-term health of our district and our students. So thank you for that patience.
I think this echoes some of my previous comments too, is we're learning a lot about how much people want to be heard. And so I appreciate you bringing this as a standing item to us because what it says to the public is that we are willing at any time to engage with you on this topic. Come talk to us, reach out to us on a regular basis. So even if there wasn't, there weren't a lot of things done in between that we continue to ask for engagement in that process, I think is really important. And I think the work that Dr. Benitez did to support those forums helps us start to look at models for ways of engagement. I think all of us are forever changed in terms of how we communicate with each other by necessity. And so the idea of, again, of gathering folks into a room isn't always going to be the way that we do this, that there are much more intentional ways that we can meet with smaller groups and larger groups so that we have ample time to hear voices in this work and as we build this equity piece together.
You know, I would like to reiterate that even though we are taking steps to formalize what we perceive as an equity policy, this district has really been doing that for a long time. And when we, when we held the town hall that brought in close to 750 people, those were some of the things that we were talking about back then. And it has been that kind of a process for as long as I've been in this district. So, you know, this is not something where we're just starting up. We have been on this journey for quite some time. We're just adding to it and formalizing it. And that needs to be understood.
Yeah. Thank you for acknowledging so much of the work that has gone on.
Okay. Resolution 080520-A, approving assignment of delinquent tax receivable to the California Statewide Delinquent Tax Finance Authority for fiscal years ending June 30, 2020, 2021, and 2022, and authorizing execution and delivery of related documents and actions.
Move approval?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, passes five zero. Vote to select a vice president of the board. Ms. Kerr?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. Tonight, I'm resigning as vice president for the 2021 school year. I am not resigning my position as a board member. As we focus on excellence and equity, and we work diligently to engage in our community during these really critical times, I nominate Dr. Benitez to serve as vice president for the upcoming school year. I'd like a second.
I'll second that. All in favor?
No discussion? No discussion?
Oh, discussion, sorry.
I respectfully decline the nomination for vice president.
Okay. Are there any other nominations for vice president?
Well, let's see. We're going to have a seating of new board members coming up in.
In December.
December. So we're really talking about a short period of time. I'm going to nominate Dr. Williams as vice president because his term will expire then. That will give the new board an opportunity to go whatever direction they want.
Do you accept the nomination?
John, I really appreciate that you did this to me the last time. I'm nominated out. I'm going to nominate John Meyer as vice president. If you'll accept the nomination.
I'll accept the nomination if I have the support of my colleagues.
All right.
Okay. Do we have a second on that nomination? I'll second that nomination.
Can I have a point of clarification, Madam Chair?
Brent? So do we need to change bylaws because we're not going to have a full term to do a reorg meeting in December? I mean, we went through this. I've been bringing this point up for a year now about a July board reorg versus a December board reorg. Any legal understanding?
I can tell you what your charter says. What your charter says is that you are to organize on the fir-, I'm sorry, on the third Monday of every July and that you select a president and a vice president whose term shall be for one year. The charter doesn't anticipate someone who would only be able to serve for, we don't even have six months left, right? I was an English major, not a math major, but you know, you have about five months left. So the charter doesn't anticipate that anyone would serve for less than one year. The charter doesn't anticipate other things, though. The charter didn't anticipate that someone would resign today, right? Which is why you're having an organization meeting outside of the third Monday of July. So I can tell you what the charter says, and now you, the board, will have to figure out what to do with that. If the vote proceeds and if, and if you're elected, then yeah, I mean, automatically, of course, his term would end. And then I think that the board would again have to vote solely on vice president. I'd recommend that the board would not vote on president again in December unless, of course, somebody resigns. You're acting outside of your charter, but I don't think that you're acting illegally outside of the charter. That's as clear an answer as I can give, given the way that the charter is written, Dr. Benitez.
Yeah, I just didn't want to move forward without getting clarity around if we need to do this again, as my colleague suggested, in December, when new board members come in, are we violating anything by doing a board reorg in December with new board members?
I think that the charter probably assumes that there would always be a president and a vice president. And here, I'm having to fill in gaps, right? Because the charter doesn't write for what you would do. But if you no longer have a vice president, it would make sense to me, just as I'm trying to fill in gaps that the citizens didn't consider when they initially voted on that charter, it would make sense to me that you would vote in December to fill that vacancy.
Makes sense.
It sounds like a lawyerly advice to say, why don't we go without a vice president then until December?
I'm not suggesting that. That's entirely up to the board.
I think what he's saying is that we will have to choose another vice president once your term is up on the board.
Yes, of course.
Okay. Okay. Any further discussion? And the, it's Mr. Meyer being nominated for vice president, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, abstentions?
I abstain.
Okay, that is four in favor, one abstention. Mr. Meyer is the new vice president. Report of board members. Let's start with you, Ms. Kerr.
Sure, I have lots of comments, some of which I had hoped to make during the discussion of reopening. So I'll abbreviate them, but there are some points I'd like to make, so I know it's late. I just wanted to pull back the lens on the work we've done here tonight. We have heard complex plans that aren't even half or a third or a quarter of the work that's being done behind the scenes. And the reality is, we're in this situation because of a complete failure at the federal level to respond and contain a global pandemic. The current administration has been hostile to public schools from the beginning and is using every opportunity to undermine the system. We're heading into a school year, and our federal government has not chosen to support or fund public schools at the level necessary to support safety for our students and staff. Every school district across this country is asking the same questions that we ask tonight and fighting for funding to support their students and families. I have the great opportunity and honor to be one of our representatives for the California School Boards Association and the Council for Great City Schools. And since the closing, I've participated in webinars, conversations with legislators, information sessions, legislative sessions, and general phone calls with school board members across this country. Large and diverse districts like ours, like Boston, Orange County, Florida, Minneapolis, Portland, Houston, Philadelphia, Indianapolis, Louisville. Some districts are not only dealing with this pandemic, but are the epicenters of social uprising at this time. And what I've learned is that the school districts are asking the same questions throughout the country. Digital divide, technology, school safety, reopening plans, it's all the same, and it's a pivotal moment in our education system. It has felt both reassuring and disheartening that the very questions and concerns of the students and parents raised here tonight are being brought up throughout the country because of a total lack of leadership at the federal level. I have a list of questions here that are questions that are identical to that were asked, but that was from Houston independent school districts, frequently asked questions in Minneapolis. And what I heard is we need to do better, and we will be better on communication. The second thing I wanted to say is I want to thank those who've reached out with their thoughts and concerns over the last several weeks. I have read every single email till about 12:45 today, when our meetings began, and I've tried to respond to all. And what I heard in these emails are your stories, the stories of who you are, how you do your job, who you care for, the needs you have both personally and professionally. You've asked to be respected and listened to, to be trusted, to use your vast professional knowledge and training, to be trusted as parents that you know what is best for your students. You've raised concerns about ventilation, technology, sanitation, screen time schedules, childcare, learning loss, special education services, bathrooms, your own health, the health of your colleagues. You're asking us to use data, research, health recommendations, and science in making our decisions. I also have heard that many of you have made sacrifices to stay healthy, that you worry about contracting the virus and taking it home with you where you care for your children or your parents, that you live in multi-generational households, of which some of your members are medically fragile or have conditions that make them susceptible to illness, such as diabetes and heart conditions. Some of you are recovering from surgery or have partners who have had transplants. Some of you are experiencing high-risk pregnancies. Some of you have newborns. Some of you have newborns. Some of you have lost loved ones due to COVID and others during these last months and were unable to be with them. You are single parents with young children and no workable childcare options. You're cancer survivors. You struggle with anxiety during these trying times. You are scared, frustrated, angry, really angry, nervous and wanting clear, timely, and accurate information on what is happening in order to make decisions for your families. I have hundreds of emails, all that tell a unique story. So I will say again, what I have said in my responses is that I hear you and I'm listening. But I do have to say that I also heard a lot of otherizing, separating out people, many of whom you've known for years, and questioning their regard for children, health, safety, and education, even going so far as to use quote marks when speaking about them, questioning the sincerity and the skill of the people who have been working continuously since this crisis began, who also have never done their jobs under these circumstances. There were references- Yeah, I can't say that one because it was hard to read, and so I can't read it again. "We've been told we're marching children to their death, putting the nail in your coffin, and I have been sent images of coffin and other things to my non-work-related accounts." It's really hard for all of us right now. So I just want to make a clarification. The central office includes those who've been working on the budget, a technology department building platforms and handling data needs, a finance department that has been paying the bills and making sure employees are paid, an HR department who are working to support and train employees, and so many more that I haven't mentioned. Hundreds of employees that are doing the work that allows our district to function, again, in the middle of a pandemic. So just a bit of reminder who they are, who our executive staff are, the people sitting in this room who have spent hours telling us what's next or what the possibility of next is, which is only a fraction of the hours they've spent here. They live in Long Beach. They're alumni of our schools. They are parents of both current students and alumni. They have students with disabilities. They've been recades and college aides, classroom teachers, reading specialists, elementary teachers, math teachers, principals, counselors, vice principal, and coaches. They've worked in schools in every corner of this district. They are partners. They are the children of parents, both living and deceased parents. They're immigrants. They speak multiple languages. They like to ride bikes with their kids. They love to read. They are cancer survivors. They are reading books on equity and science fiction. And collectively, and I think I lowballed this, they've worked for the district for over 140 years. And they too are living and working in this global pandemic with concerns about their health, those they're caring for, all 70,000 students, their families, and the 10,000 employees in this district. And I don't say that because we want accolades and that we need to give them accolades for their work. I say this to rehumanize them to the conversations that I'm seeing happening in our community. We're living in a worldwide pandemic that is exponentially worse than our country due to a complete failure at the national level to contain it. The current president and administration have spent the last three and a half years belittling, mocking, and undermining all who don't agree with them. And they've normalized the idea that if you don't agree with someone, you must be against them. And this discourse has trickled down to the very local level in my city, and it's incredibly troubling and disheartening. I have tried to be consistent and thoughtful in my response, although I know some don't believe that. These are complicated and unprecedented times that call on us all to work together in support of our students and the families we serve. One of the great strengths of our district and the greater Long Beach community and the cities we serve is our deep connection to one another that we heard so much about tonight and the care and concern that we have for each other. I have not been perfect in this process. None of us have. And I promise that I will do better and that we will do better as a district to work for an equitable education for all students. Thank you.
Thank you. That was very well said. I- I'm glad that it was said. I agree with the sentiment. I agree with all of that. This has been tough on everybody. Dr. Benitez?
Yes, thank you. So I also want to acknowledge all the work that went into, not just the presentations today, but all the work that staff, executive staff, teachers, I mean, everyone in the district has been doing for months now in a much more urgent way, in a much more thoughtful way, and in a much more critical way. And I agree 100% with Board Member Kerr. And I'm going to be even more specific. Even when I disagree with my colleagues, even when they disagree with me, even when I think we can do better, I do not think it's ever appropriate to disrespect any of our staff. And I've seen some stuff just the last 24 hours directed at Dr. Baker and Dr. Brown, and it's uncalled for, all right? We can disagree. We can acknowledge that we can do better. And we can even be critical in a respectful, professional way. So thank you, Board Member Kerr. I 100% concur. And social media has run amok, really. So I don't condone that, and I want to say a little bit something about that. I appreciate all of the public comments. And I appreciate receiving those hundreds of emails as well. And I have read every single one of them, and I apologize because I quite frankly couldn't respond to everyone. And I also don't think that folks should get called out because I know that staff has also been receiving hundreds of emails, and I've seen some of those copies. And just because we are not physically able to respond to everything doesn't mean that we're not reading and being thoughtful of things. So I am encouraging everyone to continue emailing us, continue calling, continue submitting public comments if you're not able to physically attend our meetings for a lot of reasons. I appreciate that our board is going to have that discussion at the next board meeting and that for now, we will continue to read and get forwarded your emails and that you also have the option, if you are able to, to come, and we are listening. Even to those faint honks that we heard from cars today, we heard you. Thank you for coming out. And we know that for obvious physical distancing reasons that it's better for you to stay in your cars. You know, we would have appreciated you seeing you, but we also understand the context of the moment. Wanted to acknowledge those folks that did stand outside of our building and were very professional and came in. And I've always experienced a sense of professionalism, but I don't tolerate nor do I condone being disrespectful to anyone in the district. And again, even when I am critical and I disagree and I disagree with my colleagues, I try to be professional. And so I respectfully declined the nomination tonight, although I appreciate it greatly, Board Member Kerr. And I'm not going to do it because I'm questioning my colleagues' motives, but because of the context of our board reorg at our last meeting, I have personal reasons for declining the nomination, although it was greatly appreciated. On that note, I think we need to do a lot of building because these times have been divisive. So I'm going to encourage my friends, folks that I network with, folks that say and convey that they appreciate and support me, to help me right now, help our district move forward. It is not healthy for anyone, nor is it appropriate to pit either parents against teachers or teachers against parents or teachers against our administration, or vice versa. This is a critical time. We have three weeks left before the start of the school year, and there's racial divide and racial tension in our community. There's a class divide and class tension in our community. There are all kinds of divides. But for the sake of our students, for the sake of the well-being of our communities, I am encouraging folks to work together. Not- that doesn't mean agree. That doesn't mean agree. But to bring each other in, to build, to establish in the cases that there wasn't trust, to reestablish in the cases where trust was lost, and to reaffirm our commitment collectively to advancing the broader good. And that doesn't mean that it's always perfect. It doesn't mean that it's always clean. But I am reaffirming my commitment to making sure that whatever networks, whatever support, whatever I can do using my voice, that I am committed to building at this point because we cannot afford, our students cannot afford for us not to do that. So my respectful decline of the nomination is not at all a reflection that I'm not committed to working with my colleagues or with our staff or with our teachers or with our instructional aides, but also with our very divided communities. Lot of black-brown tension out there. Lot of stuff that I'm seeing, not just in social media, but that I'm hearing about. So I want to say to folks, when I speak of uplifting and anchoring black voices, that is not mutually exclusive of uplifting all voices, but particularly those voices that we've been talking about today, the most vulnerable voices, our communities of color, our students of color. Just because we anchor and center black voices, that doesn't mean that that's at the exclusion of other voices. But I firmly believe that by lifting up particularly right now black voices, that then that builds momentum. It builds solidarity. It builds strength. It builds commitment. It builds trust to lift up all voices, all voices. So I believe in the mantra, "All means all." I think there's a space to be critical, but to remain respectful and professional. So I'm going to keep on encouraging folks to listen, encouraging folks to engage, to participate. And I'm here, and I know my colleagues are here listening. So, si se puede. Thank you, President.
Thank you, Dr. Benitez. Mr. Meyer?
Well, thank you. It's a task to follow the eloquence of Dr. Benitez. That was very well stated, Dr. Benitez. I'd like to say I'm just wowed with our staff. If the pandemic is the Luftwaffe, you're RAF. You really are. And like Winston Churchill said, "Never before in the course of human history have so few done so much for so many." And I really feel that way about the staff, our teachers, the support staff, and our community. You make me very, very proud. And there are going to be some glitches down the road. We all know that. But I am overwhelmed with the careful, thoughtful planning that you folks have put together. It's just awesome. Thank you very much for all you do.
Thank you. I'll just finish up by saying I've been reading all the email also. And like you, Dr. Benitez, I haven't been able to get back to everybody. I've been trying to respond as I read them. It's overwhelming, the number of emails, but we are reading them. We are listening. One of the biggest issues that is reoccurring is around flexibility with the teachers. And I just want to remind people that that is an issue that's being- Excuse me, that's being discussed in negotiations. It's being discussed in negotiations. It's being worked on. And just to keep that in mind. Superintendent's report?
Thank you. So I'll be brief, but I do want to reiterate several things that were shared tonight, just for the public. So actually, I'm just going to take off right where you left off, President Craig Hyde. So we are actively in negotiations with TALP. And to the point of listening, as a board and superintendent team, you designate staff to negotiate on- We designate staff to negotiate on our behalf. We have an awesome team who is actively working at the table with the awesome TALP team. We are in receipt of a bargaining survey that was completed by TALP. That voice has been heard along with the emails and the messages. And I appreciate the humanizing of this time because it's important that all of us go back to our humanselves to interact with one another. We want nothing more than to open school in a way that meets the needs of our students and keeps our students and our staff safe, and that's what we're working towards. You heard tonight about instructional program selection, our technology problems. Please, I just want to reiterate the extension of that deadline to August 14th in the model selection. Folks can call level offices. They can call their principals to ask for more detail. Thirdly, on that note, we are working on a district handbook, I think Brian talked about it in his presentation, that pulls together many of the things that are out and have been put out, but not in one document, such as our COVID response protocols, our instructional program descriptions, health and safety information, special education information, and how to contact schools and level offices, or where to call for questions. I got some great ideas tonight, as I'm sure our team did, on other ways to distribute that information, dropping off printed copies of it in places where people might not be accessing it electronically and a number of other things that I wrote down. And then lastly, tonight was a board workshop in a board meeting. There's so much going on for us right now, so much planning, that we don't know how else to do it, but we could have a board workshop every week, all day, one day. So thank you for staying probably later than we've ever stayed, until 10:30 tonight, to engage with our team in a workshop held on an evening so that you could get as much information and answer as many questions as you can. But we will be back together for a- during the day board workshop on August 18th and August 19th, followed by an evening meeting on August 19th. So just want to let the public know that that's coming. And that's my report.
Do we have any announcements?
Yes, President. We have a census, and folks don't want our hardest communities to be counted. We originally had an October 31st deadline, and folks have pushed that forward to September 30th now. Whatever, is it September 30 or 31 days? Whatever the last day in September is. So in Long Beach, we are extremely low in our count. We're still in 63%, I think, or somewhere around there. So I want to encourage our community partners, our community members. If you've already done the census, please, 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 please. We talked about resources tonight. We talked about the need for funding tonight. Without an accurate census count, we are tying one hand behind our backs for the next 10 years because the communities that would most benefit from the resources, from the funding, from the policies, are our communities that are hardest to count. Poor people, renters, households where English is not the first language, children zero to five, students, communities of color, immigrant communities, senior communities, our disabled communities. All of these communities that are most impacted by the funding are the ones right now that we haven't accurately nor completely counted. So get on your Twitter, get on your Instagram, get on your social media, pick up the phone, text someone, remind them how important it is because right now it's a lot harder to do face-to-face contact and outreach, and we are going to pay the price for 10 years. So our deadline has been pushed up. September 30th is the last day. And so I am highly encouraging in this announcement, Madam President, for us to continue to get the word out on how important the census is for our most vulnerable communities. My2020census.gov. Phone, email, I'm sorry, you can do it online by phone or in hard copy.
Thank you. Are there any other announcements?
I would just add to that. I know we've had conversations about knocking on doors to some of our hardest-to-reach families and students and people we haven't heard from. And I know we've been a great partner with the city in the census work, so maybe there's an opportunity there for knocking on doors to see if they need any technology or if they need what they choose, that we have some census info just in case.
Any other announcements? I'd like to leave on a positive note, so I'm going to read a short quote by John Lewis, a celebrates champion who recently passed away. "Too many of us still believe our differences define us instead of the divine spark that runs through all of human creation." Darn it, I messed up at the end. Anyhow, thank you all for sticking with us. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you.